We're going to get started here.
Good morning, thank you for coming. Hold on.
This conference will now be recorded. Unmuted.
Thank you for coming, listening and/or watching. Lander County Commissioners meeting Town Board of Battle Mountain and Austin Board of County Highway Commissioners, March 21st, 2022, at the courthouse. Let's have the pledge of allegiance. JR, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence, please. Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12:00 to 1:15:00 p.m. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Public comments or non-agenda items only. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any non-agendized item at the board meeting, if any, and discussion of those comments at the discretion of the board or public comment may be limited to three minutes per person, again, at the discretion of the board. Reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comments based upon time, place and manner, but public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. Commissioners' approval of the March 21st, 2022 Agenda Notice.
So moved.
We do have a correction to that.
We have two corrections.
I can't read.
We have some corrections.
On the district attorney's budget.
Number thirty? Number thirty?
Yes, sorry, I don't have the number one. It's only an increase of nine thousand.
Number?
Number thirty.
And then on Austin Justice Court, should be about thirty-three, I think.
Thirty-three?
I believe so.
Yep.
And thirty-three is what?
There's only an increase of five thousand seven hundred and twenty.
Five thousand seven twenty?
Is that it?
Yep.
I'll make a motion based on those changes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous. Overview and discussion of FY 2022, 2023 revenue projections and all other matters properly related thereto.
So behind your Blake and Sullivan for the record, behind your agendas, there is a letter from me that has the revenue overview. The tax rates didn't change, and then the assessed valuation for the preliminary revenue projections that were released in February. This is not including net proceeds. It went from six hundred and seventy-eight point two million to seven hundred and seven point three, which is a four point two percent increase. So that's really good. Only had about a one point four last year, so. And then the property tax revenue won't come out until the 25th, but I'm anticipating about thirteen million, and then I adjusted that down by ten percent. And then the preliminary projections for the C-tax and the motor vehicle are pretty much the same as last year. C-tax is at five million and motor vehicle fuel tax is one point four, and that again is also adjusted down ten percent. I added a little note in here. I wanted to make you guys aware that the interest rates, we've taken a pretty big hit on those this year, and I believe it's going to go into next. So Juicy did, she projected that revenue a lot lower than what we normally do. Interest rates are not very good right now, and we're seeing a big hit. I think we're only getting about half of what we should get. So like our general fund normally gets about one point two million in interest revenue. We're only getting about six million. Or, yeah, six, or six hundred thousand, yes, sorry. So it's about half of what it usually is.
Okay. Let's get a public comment. If anybody has a public comment. Okay, that's what I thought. Is that all you have, Blake?
Yep.
Procedures overview, possible discussion regarding presentation of FY 2022, 2023 budgets. This meeting is the first public hearing on the FY 2022, 2023 budgets. The Board of County Commissioners is required to hold budget hearings in accordance to NRS 354.569. County officials, the county offices, departments and boards will present, discuss their FY 2022, 2023 budget proposals with the Board of Commissioners during the budget workshop. The budget workshop includes presentation, review, discussion of revenues, expenditures and transfers to and from county funds and specific funding requests included but not limited to additions or deletions to personnel, equipment, supplies, services used or received. The Board of County Commissioners may take action for approval of the proposed budget, but all budgets are subject to final approval and action at the time that the final budgets are submitted. Backup materials for each department request, including amounts requested, anticipated future budget increases, decreases from existing fiscal year budgets, capital and equipment expenditures, and additional full part-time personnel positions are combined in this packet, which is available from the clerk's office, 50 State Route 305, Battle Mountain, Nevada, 89820. Phone number is 775-635-5738, and is also available at the meeting herein. Topics for discussion and action from March 21st, 2022, grant requests, CCP projects, buildings and equipment, airport capital improvement, departmental information and requests, capital outlay requests by department, grant requests. Number four, discussions and possible action regarding submitted grant requests for general fund grant requests, and A will be Agapi hospice and palliative care. Steve?
Good morning, Steve.
Good morning.
Arthur, you need to read the.
And Agapi is asking for twelve thousand seven hundred dollars. Good morning, Steve.
Good morning, sir. I'd like to thank you for considering this grant application, but also for past support from the county. It's greatly appreciated. And I'm here today to review our grant request for twelve thousand seven hundred dollars. Basic overview. This request is to cover some of our general expenditures, office rent, telephone and liability insurance. At the current time, just a little bit of background, you'll notice in the application that we continue to wait for certification from Medicare. And until we get that certification, we are unable to bill. So we completely depend on fundraising activities, whether it's through grant, grants received from the county, from various mining corporations, businesses, and/or from our own fundraising activities. So I would be pleased to answer any questions you may have.
I just have the one on the Medicare because that's so unfortunate. I'm sure that COVID, you know, certainly played a part of that, of why it's so long, because two years is a long time. How far will they let you back bill?
They won't let us back bill. Basically, what's going on is we're in, we've completed all the paperwork, but they're waiting until we care for five patients simultaneously to come out and do a final audit. In our history to date is we've never cared for more than two patients at one single time. So we've asked them to, we were negotiating with them, and we're saying, hey, could you change that expectation to three patients simultaneously? And we're discussing back and forth about whether or not they'll honor that request. As you mentioned, Patsy, during the COVID, their offices shut down. And so we were over a year waiting for dialogue with them, and, you know, it's just recently opened up again. But we're nonprofit, and so any money that we generate either through grants or fundraising goes to pay for patient care, oxygen, medication, those kinds of things. So we're beholding to the county and to other grants at the moment, and we hope the day will come when Medicare will recognize us, at which time we'll begin to be able to bill, and our revenue flow will be a little bit more manageable or easier to anticipate.
I'm sure. Have you been able to bill any other insurance?
We haven't billed any insurance because we're labeled nonprofit. Now, if they come to us, and Lois, you may be able to answer that, have we billed any other insurance?
No, by law, we can't bill any insurance until we have that final review. And it has to be two agencies, so Quality Control as well as the state of Nevada. So we're trying.
Think that pretty well leads up to the county again. Because we so appreciate you being there, and I know that it's going to be nothing more but more requests as you go on.
Yeah.
So it's such a critical thing to have, so.
I think it's a great service for the county. I mean, we have to, on grants, we have to prove that there's substantial benefit to the community. I don't think there's any doubt on this, Steve.
Right.
On just a little bit, you know, it's upsetting to hear that you have to have five people simultaneously to qualify, even in a rural area like this.
Yeah, well, that's what we've appealed to, Mr. Clark, is that they should consider our rural location, and would they change their expectations to three patients? And thus far, they have maintained their view that they're not going to come. All the paperwork is done. All we need is for them to come out and do a site review, and they won't come out until we're able to report five patients at one time.
Mr. Chair, do you want us to make a motion on each one as we go along?
Oh, yeah.
Or do the first?
Is that how we should do it, Ted?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Well, let me, let me, you can make a motion for each one since they're designated A through H, or you can do them all at the end, but it would, it'd be.
Probably be easier taking one at a time, in case we have to change, right?
That's why we designated it with A through H.
I'd rather bill one of these.
Okay, I will make a motion that we approve the twelve thousand seven hundred for the grant for the Agapi hospice and palliative care, as it does provide a substantial benefit to the inhabitants of our county.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
And most of the passage of medicine?
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To our start, and thank your staff.
Thank you.
We so appreciate you.
Lander Economic Development Authority Board, LIDA. And LIDA wants twenty-four thousand dollars.
Morning Commissioners. Caitlin McConville for the record. So there's an increase to this from last year's grant request of one thousand five hundred dollars, and what we did was add a line item within the grant for minutes. LIDA was really behind on their minutes, so these funds would allow us to continue to pay Paige Brown to do our transcribing.
Lincoln, is that, she says an increase of one thousand five hundred? I show on my paperwork is an increase of two thousand dollars. We approved twenty-two thousand last year, and it's twenty-four this year?
Yeah, so LIDA put in for twenty-two five last year, but you guys only approved the twenty-two. So it is a little bit more than.
So it is an increase of two thousand, correct? Okay.
Before we started paying someone, who actually did it? Did Becky do that?
Well, the planning coordinator does them, but this is just to get them caught up because they're so far behind. So this would just be a little one-time extra grant for them to get caught up because LIDA doesn't have that in their budget to pay someone to do minutes.
Why are we behind?
Well, the previous planning coordinator, I don't really have a reason why they're so far behind, but LIDA was behind till 2018, I believe. So I've taken on the twenty-twenty-two minutes since I've taken this position. And moving forward, I will keep them caught up, but I don't have a reason exactly why they were behind.
So the additional two thousand will bring us up to current?
Yes.
And then you will be taking the minutes from now on?
Yes.
Got it, thank you.
Do we have an idea how long it will take to bring them up to?
I sent an email to Paige last week asking her, actually, it was a couple of weeks ago, and I believe she only has twelve minutes left for LIDA. So I'm hoping within a couple of months we'll be caught up, a month or two.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve Lander Economic Development Authority for the grant request of twenty-four thousand as it shows best interest of Lander County.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
We pass it down and sleep.
Thank you.
Letter C, under General Grant Request, Lander County Conservation District. The first request is for six thousand dollars.
Morning, guys.
Good morning. Hold on.
Chairman, Arthur, you can open up.
All three, C, D, and E? That's what I was thinking about doing. I'd like to hear one at a time first. We're going to open up C, D, and E. We're going to go through each one.
Okay. For the record, I'm Paul Temera. I'm a board member for Lander County Conservation District.
I'm Anamina Grodova, the district secretary. Suzanne Lemare, of course.
So we are coming to you with three different grant requests. Our first one is a six thousand dollar grant request for operating expenses. This will pay a lot of our office fees or office bills, as well as be applied towards some cost share programs for spraying of noxious weeds and pest control.
So Paul, I see you still have some balances, of course.
Yes.
But I imagine you already have those spoken for, is that correct?
The balances you're referring to, Patsy, is that for this operating grant, or?
So you're referring to the sheet, Patsy?
Yeah.
So if you see there, I noted that I included their expenses from FY '21. So typically in the past, the Conservation District has waited till the very end of the fiscal year.
That's what I said, they're pretty well-committed funds.
Yeah, they should be earmarked.
Because you don't end up with.
We shouldn't have anything left over by the end of the year.
That's what I thought, thank you.
Not with inflation.
Paul, part of that six thousand dollar grant, that is used for some weed abatement?
Yeah, so we have a cost share program.
So which line item in the budget am I looking at is specifically for that? Is it? I don't see cost shares.
So the sage grouse one and the weed control both have some cost share that they use that money for.
That it falls under that six thousand dollar budget?
No.
Okay, that's what I was asking. This is, the six thousand is pretty much just for.
For operating.
Yeah, we do have fifteen hundred dollars earmarked under our operating grant towards the cost share.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any more discussion questions?
Do you want to take a motion on each one?
No, we'll just go to the next one.
Okay, all right.
Okay, the next one is F or D for the Lander County Conservation District for twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, this twenty thousand dollar request is for chemical. The county has in the past given us this twenty thousand dollars to be applied towards purchase of chemical and application on any of our weed spraying projects. Last year, we did some weed spraying in cooperation with NDF. Did some spraying in Indian Creek and Hilltop Canyon. It's also used over in Ferris Creek or weed spraying project over there. And some weed spraying projects with Pauline and Chowsby down towards Austin last year.
Is this for White Top?
Mostly, yes. Mm-hmm. Uphill Top Canyon and Indian Creek, if they encounter napweed, they've also been treating for that.
White Top, the new issue.
Yeah.
And we, at the last Conservation District meeting, they had discussed putting a portfolio together for the commission on likes of being before and after, so we can see what they're actually doing with the money and the benefit that it is providing to Lander County. So it's, which was a great idea.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we need to come before the commissioners and present that portfolio and show you some of our projects, like you're saying, the before and after on some of these weed projects, the wildlife projects, with an explanation of how it's going to benefit the wildlife. Most of these projects are tied up with cattle as well, and so we need to come before you and be able to tie it all together with the wildlife aspect as well.
Okay, and the last request from the Lander County Conservation District is for one hundred, one hundred thousand dollars.
So this is an increase of fifty over last year?
Yes, uh-huh. So we have always in the past asked for the fifty thousand towards wildlife. Last year, we changed the wording from sage grouse fund to wildlife habitat. We'd like to keep that wording intact. That way, we can address the issues other than sage and habitat. Last year was the first year that we were unable to fund a project. We'd have, in the past, spent the full fifty thousand, but we never had another project come before us that we weren't able to fund. So last year, or a couple of months ago, we were unable to fund a project that is going to be done on federal ground with Endow. And so with conversation at an earlier meeting, we've decided to ask for the additional fifty thousand to increase it to one hundred thousand dollars in the hopes that we are able to fund any projects that come before us in the upcoming year.
We've been staying ahead on the sage grouse, and, you know, if we stay ahead long enough and the sage grouse goes to the side, then it's going to be the pygmy rabbit. So I think that these programs are a benefit, I really do.
And there again, Brian mentioned the portfolio. We'd like to be able to come together and put together a presentation with some pictures of some of the projects that we've done in the past and be able to show the benefit that they provide.
I'll entertain a motion.
And do we want to do just as a total or just line by line?
However you want to do.
You can do C, D, E, make a motion that includes C, D, E, and also include that motion that you find that is beneficial to the inhabitants of Lander County.
I'll make a motion that we approve items C, D, and E to the Lander County Conservation District in the total amount of a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, being that this money is spent in the best interest of Lander County inhabitants.
Substantial benefit.
Substantial benefit, yes.
Seconded.
I'll second it.
Okay, first and the second is? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Beat those weeds down.
We'll work on it.
Less weeds, less crickets. Okay, Nevada Outdoor Schools, we've already had, oh, man, way to go, girl.
Morning, Melanie.
Nevada Outdoor Schools is asking for only four thousand five hundred and eighty dollars.
Only, I love the way you put that, all right, thanks.
That's nice.
For the record, Melanie Urquia with Nevada Outdoor School. And yeah, I was just here to see you a couple of weeks ago, give you guys an update of what our plans are and what the successes we've had with our organization. You'll see on our budget that we are supported by several other funding sources. I'm still searching out some unsecured funding, but this is for school year '22, '23, so next school year. Last year, you awarded us a grant of five thousand. We're still working on that grant. We've spent around twenty-two hundred of that so far, but a bulk of it will be spent in the next couple of months with our field trip season coming up and our watershed field trip. Most of it is for supplies and transportation, because we are traveling over either from Elko or Winnebago. So as you know, gas prices are up. And then a bit to help support our facilities. We have about thirty-eight thousand that we spend in facilities for rent and utilities for Elko and Winnebago, so a little portion of that, like people need to have a safe and productive place to work out of. And then a little bit of administrative and overhead. I do my best to try to secure at least ten percent in that category from every grant I write, and that helps to support things like our lights, or excuse me, not our lights, but our liability insurance and our accountant required by law and banking fees and that sort of thing to help us do the rest of the operations. Do you guys have any questions at all about any of those?
Pretty cool.
Okay. We really appreciate your guys' support. I think it's important for Lander County, we just continue to grow. So as long as we can get some support from you guys. My next grant request will be to the actual school district, which we haven't got funding from them yet. So that'll be my next grant request in this community. So it really does help to show that you guys are supporting us already and have for some time. It helps sell my case for the school district and other organizations.
Well, we appreciate you being on our last agenda and giving us the update and the whole program, so thank you. I will make a motion that we approve the four thousand five hundred and eighty dollars to Nevada Outdoor Schools as it does provide a substantial benefit to the inhabitants of Lander County. Thank you.
I'll second.
All in, any discussion? Patsy made the motion. Kathy seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously. Thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you, guys.
And the next, Town of Kingston. G, we're going to open up G and H Town of Kingston for sixty-five hundred dollars and Town of Kingston Water Utility, two eighty-six ninety-five.
Morning. Shannon Thiss for the record?
Hold on a second.
You probably shouldn't open up both of those. One's the Town of Kingston, and one's a district.
Two different things in the town?
One's a district. It's not.
We're just going to, we're just going to open up G Town Kingston, a Town of Kingston for sixty-five hundred. We'll talk about that.
The Town of Kingston would like to put in a commercial kitchen at the community hall. The community hall is antiquated, and it does have a kitchen, but it's not close to a commercial kitchen. The eventual thing is maybe we could take over for the senior meals. It could also be rented out. It's also the intent of the town board to, if we do get the grant to do this, is talk to this person that we've got this bid from to do the whole community hall and maybe upgrade the whole community hall, electrical roof, or not the roof, the ceiling, drywall, the whole thing. But for right now, this is just for a commercial kitchen. And we got Mr. Cabin's name from Eureka County. They were the ones that, I guess he did some work for them, so I reached out to try to talk to people on who they had used for architectural work, and that's where we got his name from. I had contacted, my intent was try to get somebody to give us a bid or an estimate without having to pay for it, but I couldn't get anybody to do that work for me. So this is a programming grant. It's just to get started, to find out what we need to go for the actual design and construction grant.
Questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I will make a motion that we approve the sixty-five hundred for the Town of Kingston for them to do the program grant, as I do believe it is a substantial benefit to the inhabitants of our county. And to have a commercial kitchen there in the south would be really exciting. And I know Shannon worked very hard for us to get this bid, so this will delay it another year, but I think it's important that we go ahead with it.
Second.
Patsy made the motion. Kathy seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously. We're going to go to H, Town of Kingston Water Utility for two hundred eighty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars.
I always have the distinction of having the most expensive grants out there.
I was going to say, this is quite an increase.
It is.
Yeah, that's pretty happy.
We did a hydrology report, you uh were generous enough to give us the money to do a hydrology report last year. We just got the hydrology report this year, and the area in where we have the water right, that's already been filed, is a good place. The hydrology, I I have copies of the reports, I didn't have time to get them to you, so I can drop them off to you um before this is over. But um he's saying that the place where we actually have the water right that we filed four years ago as um a future growth thing, is a good spot to drill. It is privately owned, Town of Kingston would have to um acquire the property, but that, we've already talked to the owner, and that's a possibility with no problems there. So um we're looking to put a test well in, and I realize that the money has gone up substantially. Last time I asked you for test well money, it was a hundred and eighty thousand. But my engineer has told me that everything has skyrocketed, and so that's why the price has gone up so far.
How many people reside in Kingston?
Hundred and twenty-six according to the demographics.
And how many come on the weekends?
Yeah, uh you'd probably add another hundred.
Another hundred?
Well, somewhere in there, if you counted families, yeah.
Wow.
They're not always there all at the same time.
Wow.
Um right now, we have two wells that are eighty-five feet and under the c- uh influence of the creek. And the the maximum we can pump is two hundred and forty gallons per minute. So by putting in another ta- or another well, we'll also have capacity to pump more in case of fire, uh things like that. And for future growth, Kingston has seen a lot of um growth as far as people visiting, and now money or uh land is starting to change hands and people want to build. And so with that, we're going to need more water, and with the drought, we're worried about about the creek. And we'd like to get a deep well in an aquifer.
I think the bottom line is we we actually have to do this, we, I mean, it's it's not just a future envision, it's something that um we could be caught. Very off guard without the money, with without the uh water. And so I know Kingston has to put this forth, so I think it's up to us to decide whether we can actually fund that for them. Because they have to do it, and if they go another way, if they um, you know, try some some CDBG grants or something like that. We all know the conditions that they put on that type of thing, and they most certainly, when they put conditions, the first thing they look at is money. And you have to raise your rate, so sometimes it's double and triple. And unfortunately, when they give you the grants, not all of them are grants, you do have to pay back some of it.
I I I will say though, that i- if we do get the test well, then the infrastructure to put the test well into play. I was going to go to the state revolving fund for that money, because that will probably be in the millions, I'm thinking. I haven't gotten an estimate on that, so we will pursue those those two.
Something that has to be done, is what we're saying, yeah.
You're right, the the regulations that are required for those are difficult, and they they actually can cost you money to be able to comply with a lot of stuff that you have to have. Before you can get the money, so but that that we will be going there, actually.
And of course, um no- nothing is for sure, especially with wells, as we know. So we're hoping that where they have identified so far will be a good well, and that would be good for all of us if it can.
It depends on if the water's there, which the hydrologist has, you know, in his report says that he is, that's where he says to drill. And also water quality will be, you have to do water quality testing before you can put it into play.
Um I just wanted to ask a question, last year, you guys had said that you didn't want to go over a hundred thousand on each fund for the grants. But you did state last year that you did not want to include the sage grouse in that total, because you said that was more important issue, and that that needed to be separate. So without that included, we're at seventy-three thousand seven eighty right now approved. Um I don't know if you guys want to include the sage grouse in that or, but last year, you had said you didn't, so.
As long as we can cover the checks. It's a pretty serious situation with water.
And that is our concern, because Kings- the the water report has said that Kingston Creek is diminishing. Um you know, every year it changes, but it's, we had a really good year in seventeen eighteen, or and now it's, we're back to drought situation. They're talking sixty-eight percent of flow for this year in the future.
The thing about water laws changing, that's real possible too.
Oh, absolutely.
If you just take your time on water projects, you could lose what you think you have.
Shannon, just putting it the idea out there, if we weren't to fund the full amount, are there other avenues you could go to get the remainder of the money, or?
Um once, not this amount, is that what you're saying? Um I would have to, yeah, I I I could go to SRF.
Which is what?
It's the state revolving fund, and they they fund, um it used to be what you might call AB one ninety-eight, we did a four million dollar project with them before. You guys paid off our loan for that, what that was with USDA, USDA is another one, but it would probably be a loan and not, they don't actually do grants anymore. It's loans or uh principal forgiveness.
And then how many people do you have on the system?
Working on the system?
Or paying on the system?
Oh, paying on the system, I have a hundred and uh forty-eight uh meters.
Hundred and forty-eight metered?
Yeah.
As of, are there some that aren't metered?
I have a lot of vacant lots that are not metered, but they do pay an SOF fee as a standby fee to hook into the uh main line.
So do we still have the hundred thousand max, or we can make an exception to that?
Well, I it's completely up to you guys, if you, I mean, it's not.
Did we?
We we had just discussed it last.
Yeah, I remember.
Right.
When we sent out, when I sent out the grant packets for this year's budget requests, there were grant guidelines in there. Um just based on, you know, pr- past practice of what you guys had said you wanted, but. They're just guidelines.
Yeah, and well, uh under this, Ted, this is a water water issue, it's not like they're coming, you know, this is something that they need, it's a water issue. That that is that different than a grant? Is it had to, or is that a different responsibility for the county, or is it all just?
This is a district, there's no responsibility to the county, but the district falls within the county, so the county has an overreaching responsibility to all the inhabitants of Lander County. Where it is, it's only a separate legal entity.
So would it still fall under the, under the our grants portion of it?
Absolutely, absolutely, but the but the policy is is up to you guys how much, I'm just saying that.
We just have to see if it's in the best interest, I mean, I'm looking at is if there was a catastrophic fire there.
Right.
Do they have the water to be able to?
Exactly.
I mean, if you s- if we start looking at the consequences, it's, yeah, I don't know, it's just a lot of money, but on the.
I I will also point out, they they may be a district, Shannon and and Kingston do a great job with managing their own thing, but if the if the district was abolished, it would fall back to Lander County. So we want to leave them with a good system, and when they're maintaining it really well, supporting them, I think is a good idea, because if not, then we end up with the with the big problem, and they give it back to us.
Right, and they are inhabitants of our county.
That's right.
I I guess the concern was, the grant's the easiest way to give them the money right now, so. With that, I will make a motion that we approve the two hundred and eighty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars as a grant to the Town of Kingston Water Utility. Because it certainly is a substantial benefit to the inhabitants of our county.
I'll second.
Kathy's made the motion, Kathy seconded. Anybody have any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously.
Thanks, Shannon.
I would like to thank the board, and I would also like to say that you guys have supported this water for, you've given us, uh paid off our loan, we have new tanks. We have a lot of stuff in the ground that's new because of Lander County, wouldn't have happened without you, and I appreciate it.
It might take it for the gun then.
Thank you.
Battle Mountain Town Grant Request, Frontier Community Action Agency and WIC for twenty-five thousand dollars. Come on down.
Morning, guys.
Good morning.
So it shows that you've only spent ninety-five hundred of the twenty-five thousand we've given you last year, is that correct?
No, they they've spent fifteen thousand four hundred and ten dollars and ten cents, they have nine thousand five eighty-nine ninety remaining.
Oh, got you, yes, you're right, thank you.
The spreadsheet, anyway, um it just showed what you guys have put in for. And I I will tell you, on Frontier Community Action Agency for that spreadsheet, I cut it off, I still had about two or three months to add, but they ask for so many small things that it's pretty repetitive, the same thing every month.
You've actually used more than?
No, they they have used that fifteen thousand, I put the right amount, I just cut off the itemized.
And we're looking to spend it out too, unfortunately.
On the average, how many people do you have come for food when the food truck comes?
When the food truck comes, on average?
One sixty.
Sixty?
A hundred and sixty.
One hundred, one hundred and, that's, yeah, an average month. But that is not our program, we just kind of house that that program, and they use the the court, uh courthouse parking lot. And then they give us extra food for the food pantry.
That's why you help out.
Yes.
Okay, how many people do you have dependent on WIC, how many babies?
That's not, well, with WIC, I'm not sure.
The food pantry, uh.
Yeah, so.
Is what we're talking about, they handle the food pantry.
Right.
So the the question is, how many people do you provide food for and prove food?
Well, women and children is WIC, right?
So, yes, it is, and that is a um, it's privatized through the state, and we house that program also.
Okay.
Um when I was doing WIC, I had probably about sixty families.
Sixty.
And I'm not sure what it is now, I haven't talked to the WIC director lately, but um it just kind of is going up.
Well, I'm just curious, because.
Mhm.
Years ago, six years ago, seven years ago, people came to us because the program shut down, they ran out of money. And we had over fifty kids that wouldn't have had lunches during uh Christmas break, and I was just wondering where that where that number is now. People that are dependent upon the county for for resources like that, and it seems like it's pretty steady between fifty and sixty.
So for our food pantry, we have around seventy-seven people that come a month for the weekly food rations. We did lose the backpack program a couple of years ago, and that was the one that was going for the kids.
Um I guess, then I'm confused, because I'm looking at your numbers here, and your numbers are saying um sixty-eight families at least once a month for the emergency food pantry. And another hundred and eighty-five families for the monthly mobile food pantry, right? So that's actually more, and then it says art that they are, their service is about a hundred and seventy-five people um for families through the month. So besides the food, all the emergency gas and and rent and um, and I did have a question on one of them, um. And let's see, I think that was for the legal, yeah, it says eviction prevention, rental assistance, uh a thousand dollars. So I guess my question is, um rental assistance, eviction prevention, is that, do you go through an attorney for that?
No.
No.
It's just a rental assistant.
Yeah, so it's just trying to um make sure that people don't get evicted, so uh we help them out. Um you know, we make sure that they have a way to pay the rent next month. But you know, in light of like emergency family stuff, they need help this month.
Okay, because it said eviction prevention, it sounded like, no, legally, they can't do that, and we're going to have an attorney write a letter and say, you can't.
I didn't say that.
Yeah, it isn't, it's just, it's just money giving.
Said that, yeah, so.
Thank you, that's that's what I asked for.
We just try to keep them in their home and not homeless, so so we help them out, just kind of like making the the month go.
Just a clarification.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Kathy.
Any more discussion, public comment, anybody? Entertaining motion?
I propose we uh donate twenty-five thousand to the uh Frontier Community Action Agency and WIC for twenty-five thousand.
I'll second the motion. Oh, yes.
And I'll add in there, the, for the better of the community.
Substantial benefit.
Substantial benefit, right.
And I'll second that motion, thank you guys for what you do.
Thank you so much.
Made the motion, Brian seconded, anybody else, all in favor?
Aye.
Pass unanimously. Battle Mountain Chamber of Commerce for thirty-four thousand dollars.
Do you want me to go down there, do you want me to sit here? Okay, so this is um the grant uh I put in for, um the reason, one of the reasons why there's eighteen thousand.
You can't talk if you abstain.
No, you can't go down there.
She's going to present it.
Yeah, go present it to us, Kathy.
Oh, that's on my question, do you want me to go down there so I can present it, that was my question.
So the record. Sorry.
No worries.
The one you want is the one down there.
So, all right, so um I just recently um.
Arthur, could you make a record that that Kathy is not seen as a county commissioner, she is presenting this, this item, and that she's going to abstain from all discussion and voting?
The Chamber of Commerce.
Yes.
Kathy Ancho is not a commissioner right now, she stepped out of her care to make a presentation for the uh Battle Mountain Chamber of Commerce, of which she is the executive director.
And she will be abstaining from both the discussion and the vote.
And she will abstain from the vote and the decision.
All right, newly to this job, so this is the first grant application I have put in for them. There is an eighteen thousand plus um remaining balance in this, and that biggest amount comes from the crab feed. Um we were unable to do that event, which is our biggest fundraiser, because of the cost of crab was so ridiculous, um we were not able to. It was between fifty-five dollars and sixty dollars um a pound, and it wasn't a guarantee, if you paid that money, that you would even get your crab. So we, yeah, and so we were, we kind of had to, we put that on hold, um we uh so. Uh the the uh extra expense for this year is that we were going to add on the Fourth of July and the um Christmas events to take care of those as well. And so that's the extra, why the um it's higher this year. And so we also have gone in and been trying to do different type of community events for the business owners, um some educational things. Um to do a broader base for all of the businesses, so um very new to to this. And um so when putting in a grant, a lot of it I copied from last year, just because I was under short um short term frame, but that's the gist of it.
Kathy, there's, it's a, so what you're asking for, it's an eight thousand dollar increase over what they asked for last year, am I correct in saying that?
Yes, and that's for the Christmas and the Fourth of July events.
I want to point out, though, that we did decrease the rec center budget to make up that difference, so we decreased one budget to add it into a grant.
Oh, that that was, that was a change we made mid-year?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, okay.
So yes, that's um, and this uh, the Chamber of Commerce is um huge to the community, to the businesses. Um and it's been a great learning experience so far, and working with um new businesses um that are coming in, I'm reaching out to them, getting some more board members. We actually just got a couple more on Friday, which was exciting, so yeah, moving along.
How is, how is the membership doing?
It's do, there um was one, one, between one thirty-five and one forty, um uh the last time I checked, I just received two new ones. We had a little snafu with the um program that's being used, so it was hard for them to pay their um renewals online. So I re, um and it was kind of funny, some of the older businesses said, well, unless you send out an invoice, actual invoice from the chamber, we're not going to renew. So I went out and just a couple of weeks ago, sent out eighty-five renewals and actually got the, we're starting to get those to come back in, because they wanted something tangible um in their hands, and so it's moving along.
And then members of the chamber, do they pay a monthly fee?
No, they, it's annual.
It's annual. It's annual. What do you make annually off the hundred and forty-five members?
Um, it varies between seventy-five for nonprofit home to a hundred, it can go up to two twenty-five on the larger, um, businesses, the mines. We're doing something different with the mines, trying to, this is still going in front of the boards, um, trying to do different programs with them for funding as well. Um, so.
So I don't, what are you, because I don't see the mines on our.
They have, they're not listed on here because they haven't paid in, anything this year. They have not. And they, we couldn't put it because of the, um, one of their bigger, bigger contributions too is they help with the crab feed and things like that. We couldn't give them, uh, put out any grant applications because we had no idea what we were doing yet. And we didn't have our retreat until last month, um, because of everything being in there. We had tried to do an Italian dinner, um, and people wanted the crab feed. They didn't want the Italian dinner. So we kinda had to scramble around a little bit. So it's just trying to put on, you know, learn what the community wants a little bit. And I'm new at it. So if that's, that would be my shortcoming as a new employee, um, definitely not the chambers because they've worked very hard to get where they're at.
So there's no money in the bank?
Um, yes, they, they do have some money in the bank.
How much?
Um, their exact balance, uh, I think they have in some savings. I think it's probably a hundred. They may have like a hundred thousand dollars plus in there. And that is for bigger projects. And that was new to me as well to try to find, figure that part out. And they, um, earmarked that for trying, if they're going to build these, uh, bigger projects. And like that's still all very new to me.
Do you show that on any of the spreadsheets or what?
This, no, and if it's not, that's my fault because I.
There is a profit and loss that she did attach.
And it's in there?
Um, it's at the back behind the grant application. It shows that the, the new member income was about four thousand and the renewal income was sixteen thousand. But their total income, uh, was eighty-two thousand five ninety-nine and their total expenses was sixty-one thousand six oh two.
Yeah, so what do they ask?
A lot, a lot of that too is chamber money, our chamber bucks. Um, and so like, just bear with me on this part, our chambers, some of that money is chamber, belongs to the mines and the businesses who have bought chamber money that's still sitting out there. Yes, that they hold the check, they're holding on to those or the chamber checks that they give out to their employees. So, yeah.
Eighty thousand chamber bucks.
Yeah, eighty, yeah, there's eighty thousand dollars in chamber. So.
So, back to Arthur's question, how much money do you actually have cash in the bank?
There, it's, it's a hundred thousand plus. I couldn't tell you right off because I didn't bring that.
Wait, do you have that in your paperwork, Lakin?
No, I don't believe so.
Because they just got the, they just got the, um, through with their audit and had to do some cleaning up on actually what was the, um, chamber buck part, what was the, uh, actual like saving, their, their savings account part.
And then that cash reserve that you have sitting there, you say you use it for big projects?
They use not, and they, they can. And they also use it for pay, like wages, um, that have to do with me because nothing in, in any of the other stuff, um, covers my wage. Or any other employee that they get, um, it doesn't co- cover wages.
So if you were to have a, a large event, what, the crab feed would be an example of a large event?
That, yeah.
And you would use that money for, to fund something like that?
Well, the, um, the money that the county has given before looks like, from what I look back at it, it looks like they break about even. They asked for like seventeen-ish thousand dollars and it cost about seventeen, eighteen, so it's kind of a wash in there. Um, I think that, um, uh, on that, I have to say on that part, as far as their savings. Um, from talking to other chambers and asking other chambers how that works, they say that, um, they set those, they can set those, that, that fund, those funds aside for, um, doing bigger projects. Now what that, this chamber has, they're, they're all, almost all board, new board members. I'm new. And so we're just kinda in that little bit of a growing of understanding how all of this works. And I don't wanna mislead you or guide you. This is just the best of my.
I guess where I'm leading with it Kathy is that if you have that amount of money, why, why are we asking for a grant of thirty-four thousand dollars?
Because, so it's because this, the eighteen thousand that they still have in there and say they don't use seventeen thousand of that for the crab feed because they didn't have it. That just goes away. It's not a, it doesn't roll over. It's, they start over new in July. Yeah.
So, okay, that makes sense.
So like for like the office expenses, yeah, yes. And the office expenses, um, is basically what is the county covers. I asked for, I've gone and asked for reimbursement for like their, um, computer programs, um, paper, those kind of things. Their, uh, H and R block, the telephone, that stuff.
Well, Kathy, since you're so new, it's kinda hard to, to put you on, on the spot. You know, we don't, we don't wanna do that and say.
No, 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 and I'm okay with that. And at least I have this right here, so I, um, and it's totally, it's fine. I can give you the best answers I can give you.
Well, if, I guess, because what we're saying is if we reduce that, if we reduce that sum, if we reduce it to, you know, like twenty, twenty-five, can you make it okay, I guess? And you don't know. I mean, if you knew, so it's like.
And I don't know. The increase of, I know was for, um, the coverage of the, the Christmas and the, um, Fourth of July. That was just increased to handle those events and to do those, those things. So, because it would've stayed the same, uh, we wouldn't have asked for anything different had it not been for those events. And my wa- the, my wage, um, comes out of there. So after however many years, um, that, that's how, that's gonna get, get dwindled down from that, just from that alone.
No, that's what your fundraisers are for.
Yeah, but no, you can't, well, and you can't also like with the mines and stuff, they don't want those, that money, that stuff used for, um, wages either.
No, of course not. But fortunately, um, you have a lot of other fundraisers to handle the things that we cannot cover.
Well, they're, they got rid of, so you know, they have gotten rid of some of them and turned them over to some of the community, uh, the nonprofits. Uh, like their business in brushes. And this, that's why this is different than that is because they had their retreat after I, I had to put the grant in. So like their business in brushes, um, they have put out, uh, for the nonprofits to utilize. And, um, the, because they did those several times. So what the things that they're looking at keeping are like their installment dinners, their, um, uh.
Okay, well, since you're so new, don't forget that the, uh, Convention and Tourism Authority also will help you with several of these things.
Well, they do the advertising. Well, the advert, that part I understand. They do the advertising and I work, I'm working with her as well.
And, and for more. So I mean, you have other ways of promoting these bigger items too.
Oh, no, and I understand that.
And I know the mine has always been generous and especially generous with the COVID nineteen.
Yeah.
They were, so.
There's no doubt. I think it provides an important service to our, our businesses at times, so.
Discussion over. Call for a motion?
You're the Battle Mountain Commissioners up here. These are your districts. Come on.
I'm just deciding, I'm just trying to decide. It's just, if I, it's thirty-four thousand is justified, you know, with as much as they have in the bank. But I guess if they, we give it and they don't use it, it always comes back, correct? Was that the statement that was made?
If it doesn't go over.
All right. With that, I'll make a motion that we approve the Battle Mountain Chamber of Commerce and a grant, uh, for the amount of thirty-four thousand dollars as it provides a substantial benefit to the residents of Landor County.
Brian made the motion. JR seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Brian. Passed unanimously.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thanks, guys.
Good work, Bill. Okay, next under Battle Mountain Town Grant Request is K, Battle Mountain Race, Raceway for twenty-five thousand.
Hello?
How you doing?
Doing okay.
Who'd you bring with you?
Oh, she's joining me.
I'm the partner in crime.
Uh, this is Rebecca Col- Rebecca Colleen with the Battle Mountain Race Track and Tammy Low.
Do we have a spreadsheet for what they, their expenses have been?
We, we did not give them a grant last year.
Okay. And twenty-five thousand you're asking for?
Yes, sir. So we're, uh, here asking for money. Um, being nonprofit, we have not been able to keep. For, we have two thousand dollars in the bank. Last year we started with six thousand. So, um, we need, uh, to get up and running. We're hoping to bring in some cash flow with our first race, April eighth and ninth, um, to keep us afloat. Um, I've had to delay paying things because I need to make sure we have money for concessions. So, um, there was a meeting, Tammy and Santi had a meeting, uh, with Bert. And he encouraged us to fill out another, a grant form request.
So what, I mean, the money that you make from your concessions, your entry fees, your race, uh, your drivers' fees, what, I mean, what does that money go to? I mean, what are you using that money for?
So all the money that is collected in the back gates from the drivers and the pit crews, those go back to the drivers. Um, the problem is, is we don't bring in as much as the payouts are. Uh, they, we increased our payouts last year because there were complaints from drivers, um, not receiving what they should. As the other tracks are, uh, sponsored by, Winnebago track's sponsored by Model T. They get twenty-five thousand every year. Um, and I'm not sure who sponsors Elko. But in order to keep our drivers coming, the big IMCA class, the other classes are paid out out of the bag. So the first, second, third, fourth, fifth are all paid a percentage of the total bag. Um, but it was the MC, IMCA drivers that needed a little bit more. It costs more to run a car, so, uh, we obliged to bring, keep our drivers coming.
Bert, did you have some, sorry? Yeah, so we can't use grant money for prize money. Everybody, I think you guys are aware of. Right.
Right.
But the other thing is, when I did meet with Tammy and Santi, is what I was hoping to see in, in some of their backup is the, because these are, these nonprofits are supposed to be self-sufficient. Right. Um, is, is a five-year plan and showing them stepping down to self-sufficiency. Um, and from what I just gathered, and I'm not sure if it's correct or not, but you said that you guys started out with six thousand and you have two thousand left. So does it only cost you guys four thousand a year to operate? Because these are, that's the kind of information that I was looking for and never got back because we never ended up circling back and, and hearing back.
Based on the current payout, yes. So we weren't asking for money for the payouts. We cover that. But we need to pay, um, about eleven hundred every month for race weekend insurance. Our concessions run about six hundred a month. Um, our front gate, so we basically live off of our front gate and our concessions cash. And then that supplements what we haven't, what we don't earn in the back gate for the payouts.
So Rebecca, um, last year though you actually, didn't we do some improvements on the concession stand? Is that up to date?
So there's.
Still a county, county facility, so we can still do maintenance and things like that on buildings and, and things of that because the county still owns that. They have the lease on the.
Okay, but in the backup information, it sounded.
Things like the improvements we've made.
Yeah, but it sounded like our grant went to do some of the concession upgrades.
In previous years, not last year, but, um, with other grants that we received, they had to paint the concession floor for food establishment.
Okay, you, you should, that's what I was asking. You use your grant money to do that?
I believe so. I wasn't a part of the track then.
New people again.
Exactly.
Okay.
And I know that you weren't a part of it when, uh, it was a handful of years ago. They had received a grant, am I, then tell me if I'm wrong, like seventy-eight thousand, seventy-three thousand dollars? Did they get a big, huge grant a handful of years ago?
So.
That may, you may be thinking of the, the motocross track, um.
I think it was, I think it was.
I'm, I'm not familiar with the one you're speaking of.
Equipment. I think it was something to buy equipment, I think.
They also, they, that was a part of it. They also raised, received a substantial amount of money.
So since, um, we changed our policy to where they, the grant recipients have to turn in their reimbursement request with all their backup of what we're paying. We have not, um, given the raceway a grant since we've changed that. So before, a check was just handed over and we don't really know what it was used. I mean, we don't have any way of saying, yes, that's what it was used for.
So that seventy thousand dollars, if it's only costing them that much a season, then where's the rest of that, where did all the rest of that grant go towards?
Wasn't there something of buying some equipment because they were using ours? We, we said the county, the county could help you and some of the grading and stuff. But I thought there was something about a vehicle that.
It was aside from that money.
So I went back through, after I submitted the request form, I went back through our paperwork and there is a check stub for seventy-eight thousand. And it literally, it just says equipment on it. It just says equipment on it. There was apparently another like thirty thousand. Prior to that. So when I came on, there was that.
I know it wasn't when you were, when you were in there. I, that they had received because I, um.
There was still a chunk of that though.
Yes, because I, at that time, the sorority was out there helping and part of that, at that time I had questioned. I wasn't on the board at the time. So why payout, because part of that time payouts were being used out of that money and that was a complaint prior. And that has nothing to do with you guys. So that's where an issue got brought up, um, I think last year when we went to, um, do this is where is all that money? And was it all used for payout? Because I know that they didn't buy any equipment with it because I could, had questioned it.
Right. So we did change our payout schedule to accommodate what we bring in, is what we're paying out. And so that's why only our front gate and our concessions is strictly what we live off of. It's a, so, uh, so the goal was to use this for our, our insurance, monthly insurance, um.
Have you, uh, Rebecca, have you thought of raising, uh, increasing like concession fees, uh, entry door fees? I mean, with every business is, with the things that we're struck with in an economy, it's, it's sad to say, but it's the end user that pays. But it's like the cost of doing business, I think that's what our county manager was alluding to, is like, how do we become somewhat self-sufficient? And to see a plan, and that's the thing, the problem I'm having now, I, I, I see nothing of like what the plan is, what, what we're doing with taxpayers' dollars. It's just, so it's hard for me to make a decision to say, yeah, let's give these guys twenty-five thousand dollars because it's in the best interest of Landor County without actually having the data here to see.
Well, I believe that that would give us enough time to sustain and build the savings. Um, uh, yeah, I didn't type up a plan. It was literally half a day.
And I understand that you have, you're doing this after all of this stuff took place, so you don't, and I respect that, so I'm not trying to put you on the spot. However, that was one of the, um, issues before was they had been given that money. They also were given, um, some equipment, old equipment, plus the county was helping do some of the work for them. And that was one of my biggest complaints was why did they get that money and why was it being used for payouts? And now we're, you come, not you, the organization comes back this many years later and we're still no better off. And we, when we were given, that, that organization was given that amount of money.
When I came on.
I mean, we're spending taxpayers' dollars and we have to be, we're accountable for it.
But that's not, I mean, I feel, I feel bad for you being in the hot seat, but it isn't you. So just please take that.
Okay, but that's, yeah, that is history. Um, so we have to look at what's today. And I know the concern I have with, when you're, you're looking at your contract, your announcer, um, uh, you do have announcer and advertising. So I'm hoping you're going to, again, Convention and Tourism for your advertising because we don't wanna spend that when that's what you, you bring them in, that's what the dollars are for. But I do have a problem with the concession supplies.
Mm-hmm.
It's five thousand dollars. Well, if you buy supplies for five thousand, surely you're gonna sell them for more than five thousand. So why are we paying for that? So, um, I'm, I'm okay with some, but I would like to bring that back down to maybe twenty thousand.
Anything is welcome. I mean.
Because well, you know, the announcer, I don't know how much the announcer is, is separate from the advertising because you didn't tell me, but, um.
Is that, that's part of the thing, right? We didn't, we discussed this over the last couple of years where these grant forms are filled out. They're supposed to provide us of like a, a future picture of how they become sustainable, right? And if we don't have that, then it falls out of the scope of us lending or giving money to just based on that disqualification because we didn't get it. We don't have it here to see.
And, and true, you can also put conditions on any grant that you give.
I can email that today.
The, the racetrack has been a hot item for the last, for, for many years and, and then becoming self-sustainable. And, and it's not a shot against these guys at all.
No, not at all.
No.
But the, the reason, and that was one of the reasons why we had met previously and, and the expectation of meeting again a few times before they sat down in front of you guys and have a good structured plan and, uh, and some sort of self-dependent, you know, where they come self-efficient here at some point. Um, and the only thing that I can gather so far is if, if, maybe that you guys can expand on the, on how you made it with only the four thousand. Did you guys have less events this last year or did you have the normal events that you typically have? I'm only bringing this up because I want the commission to have a full picture of, of everything that's happening, um, because that's what I'm. Um because that's what I'm seeing, it's, your guys' cost to run for a year is four thousand, from, from what you've said today.
So.
Well, with the COVID, I don't think you had your full events, I, I looked at the numbers and there weren't.
Always the beginning of the year, it's cold, a lot of people don't come out, um.
No, no, but I mean, them event, I, is what I'm saying, is if you guys had twelve events every year and you've had them, or have, did you guys have your same twelve events you normally have, or did you have four? I mean, what's, what's the picture, um comparatively speaking, to previous years?
We only have about six race weekends a year. So um and then we added one in October, because previous board, um.
In the past, yes, we did have more races, but these past three years, we've gotten together with Elko, Winnebago, and Mudlock, and we made it. So each track has a weekend, so we're not scheduled over somebody else, stepping on somebody else's toes. So now we are down to one weekend a month. Where in the past, it was two we, weekends a month, and sometimes three, depending on.
And you guys see that being the same trend in the future as well, so, so what you operated off of last year would be similar to your upcoming years of operation?
Correct, exactly.
Okay, that, that's all I was trying to.
I would just like people to focus on substantial benefit, because every time we have a race, we benefit substantially. We have rooms, we sell fu, fuel, and we sell food. So I know it seems like a bottomless pit to the commission, that we give money to the racetrack. But the return is what we get when we have races.
No, I agree with you, Art, I, I don't, I don't know if it's necessarily, the problem I have is the past controversy of money not really knowing how it's being spent. Because that's the thing, is we're lending taxpayers' dollars, and it has to be accounted for, it has to be.
I agree, it has to be accounted for.
I'm not arguing the benefit at all, because it's a, it's a service that a lot of people enjoy going to, it brings people into our community. Uh my question, though, uh to both of you is, do, do you guys be, do you guys do any fundraising for money? Do you go to the mines for money, or is it just?
We have not, in, in like last year, we did not, but hopefully this year, we are, we have letters or emails out to them to ask and response or.
Because I just know a lot of these organizations, they do that, they run internal uh, uh like uh fundraisers, you know, raffles, uh mines are, you know, so it's just.
Half a cow.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
We're trying to get.
Here's my question, how long, Tammy, have you and your buddy been doing this?
I, I got thrown in.
Maybe or last year, and this is going into my third season.
This, this is where I see the problem, is when you have constant change, visions change, okay? Two new people, different vision, different place we're going, and if you keep changing that, you're not going to have a plan. So having a plan for the future is difficult for the racetrack, that's, that's what I'm saying.
This has been the first change, though, in what, five, six, six, seven years? I don't know how long Barb was on it, but I replaced Barb's mic. Um we are also entertaining a bingo to bring in some cash. Um yes, and we sent letters out to the different mines, we don't know the outcome on that yet, and to the businesses locally.
Excuse me, can you tell me what the contract is with your announcer, do you know how much that is?
So currently, um we were using Jace out of Winnebago, and he's no longer announcing. We haven't asked him, um last year didn't end well. Um and so there's this group, um Danny and Pedro from Elko. Um and they're promising us the moon and stars, but Elko's not.
How much, how much is it going to cost?
Seven thousand dollars, so they want to, they're representing Winnebago right now.
They want seven thousand for?
For the year.
For four races?
Six, yeah. So. This was just a wish list, that part was, but we have backup, if this is not, we do have a backup.
That's okay, it is, it is what it is.
Right, yeah, that's what Elko was saying too.
I agree with Art, I mean, you know, they are race fans and they are race fans, and, and they're dedicated, and we bring people in, so um. But I still would like to, to cut that, at least from the concession supplies, so.
Well, yeah, I was, I was going to say, how about, how would you guys be, a lesser amount? And just make sure that we put the contingency that you guys make sure you follow the guys.
All of our grants are that way now, so we're okay.
Well, and they will have to, they'll treat, be treated like any other grant recipients, they will have to uh front the money, or give us the invoice, and we will pay it.
Right.
And so we have to see all the documentation, so every invoice I pay.
The accountability is there now, so we're okay with that.
Right, and I would say, since they, it shows the past, they, they were able to operate off four thousand dollars, I would say, I would throw it out there that instead of the twenty-five thousand, maybe this year, we give them a ten thousand dollar, should be adequate to, to run.
You know, between their insurance and, and the contract, I'd like to go a little bit more.
Because of what?
The insurance and the contract.
Well, they operated last year, passed out for four thousand dollars.
We didn't have this announcer, though, this is a different.
Got you.
This is a new name.
I'd like to go a little bit higher.
Also, if you went four, ten, you're six there, so what, 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 what number are you thinking?
If you do everything except for the concessions and the announcing contract, it'd be twelve thousand seven hundred.
That's without the announcer.
Without the seven thousand and without the concession supplies, fifty-three hundred.
How about eighteen?
Not too much, I mean, it's like, yeah, they can fundraise, they can, there's, we get a lot of people to come and ask for that, they're out busting their butts fundraising, and it's just, I, I just, I'm not in favor of that. I mean, you can make whatever motion you want, but I'm in favor of some, but not that much.
Okay, go for it.
I'll make a motion that we uh approve the Battle Mountain uh Race Car Association for a grant in the amount of twelve thousand seven hundred, you said it was?
Yes.
Uh because it shows substantial benefit to the inhabitants of Lander County.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, it was twelve-seven?
Yeah, twelve thousand seven hundred.
Okay.
And make sure, please, guys, that you bring us, like, next year if you come, that you have, like, this is our plan, this is what we're doing, it just makes it a lot easier for us up here, so. I would appreciate that, so.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we're gonna do two more grants, three more grants, and then we're gonna take a break. So Battle Mountain Junior Rodeo Association, come on up. Uh-oh, here comes the tough one again.
Good morning again, for the record, Suzanne Lamere. So I am representing the association this morning, but I'm not currently um involved quite as much as I used to be. The members this morning had other obligations. Um they are asking for a five thousand dollar grant to help produce the junior rodeo. Which is held late fall, September, October, usually kind of in conjunction around the high school rodeo. The rodeo grounds get prepared about the same time, so it's pretty easy to use them all when they're ready. Um the grant last year that you gave them was spent on various uh avenues to produce the rodeo. Insurance, uh the print and copy for the day sheets, the thank yous, the programs, um I believe there's some stock, roping stock costs and stuff involved. I don't have the information that she submitted to you, in front of you, but I'm assuming so.
Um, yes.
It sounds like it, huh?
Well, one of the, the comments that they made on it, though, is that it will be used solely for awards and rodeo expenses. And awards isn't what we're supposed to be funding.
So I will, I, I did want to point out on the junior rodeo and the high school rodeo, in the past, before we kind of put a kibosh to prizes, they, they did use some, the money to purchase buckles. So I don't know if you guys want to be clear that the money shouldn't be used for the buckles, or how you want to handle that.
Okay, I don't think, should we be using it to fund awards, or?
Well, not, though, they, it's against your policy.
Right.
Uh but you, you can make an exception, but you, you may want to, if you establish a policy, you have to carry it through or change it.
Well, we can't say for the last one, we can't do payouts, and then even though it's a smaller payout, payout's a payout, regardless of it is that, you know.
So is it a payout versus an award, are they considered the same?
Yeah, because you're spending money on the award, so. It was nice, too, the photo that they sent us of all the youngsters, and that was pretty cool.
You know, it's a pretty neat little association. Um it kind of varies, I, but they are pretty steady, about forty-five to sixty kids.
Yeah, I was going to say, they're.
And they're all under the age of twelve.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah, and it's just a one-day, kind of an in-and-out event for the little kids to try to, to build the program and keep the, the heritage going.
You could put a condition on the grant that it will not be used for payout.
Well, we would have to, because we've just, uh there was a similar question that we just brought up, as far as paying out awards per these two drivers. You can't not do it for one and do it for somebody else, I mean, you have to be consistent, that's the question.
On their breakdown, Brian, if you look at that, the breakdown, they said they're paying for, um they're using money to purchase the insurance policy. Uh rodeo, uh awards, printing of programs and posters and materials needed.
Well, it's got, yeah, sixty-five hundred dollars.
So if you take the insurance, which is two hundred, and the printing, which is a hundred and fifty, and the miscellaneous, which is two hundred. Um you know, we're, we're, we're a thousand dollars, you know, for.
But the stock is.
We're gonna have the stock in.
The stock is the expense, the big expense as well.
Exactly, from what I understood, that was like the.
Yeah, I'm like, I don't know.
So if they approved the five thousand, would you go and use it for other things besides?
I think they could probably make that work, um and do their fundraising to cover the awards, yeah, and then.
Just be a condition.
And I, and I would imagine, it's like every grant, if they don't use it, it's, it rolls back in, right? So I'm assuming they make it work, or they don't.
Mm-hmm.
We make it work, or we don't.
Then it's just said that they can't use it for.
Well, I'm definitely in favor of helping them, anything to do with outdoor recreation or youngsters, or I think it's important, so.
I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I'll attempt to see how I can say this, so I'll make a motion that we um do Battle Mountain Rodeo Association for five thousand dollars. And because of which, because it will provide a substantial benefit to the inhabitants of the county.
Let me make sure they, they.
Oh, and they can't, and it cannot be used.
And we know now.
Yeah, well, yeah, but we have to put it on the record that it cannot be used for prizes or payouts, so.
Second, I'll say. Okay, Kathy made the motion, Brian seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Battle Mountain Town Grant Request, and Battle Mountain High School Rodeo Club, ten thousand dollars, is that all?
Hi, for the record, my name's Jessica Lancaster, I'm the new director for High School Rodeo, uh Battle Mountain High School Rodeo Club, so. My partner in crime here, too.
We're transitioning.
We're transitioning right now, so I appreciate you guys considering the ten thousand grant application that we put in this year. I did put in, um what we'd be using it for, uh the same as last year, our insurance, five hundred, office, um supplies, four hundred, our stock contractor. The majority of it goes for seventy-five hundred for a stock contractor, that does fluctuate, especially price of fuel now, and that might fluctuate this year. But that was last year's uh bid that we accepted, and then miscellaneous, miscellaneous, our uh judges that we hire for our cutting and our reining cow horse. And the rooms required for them, as well as our secretary and our help.
Um there's the Rowdy Rose on the, it's the last sign on the next one, the forty-nine hundred, that was the buckles for them.
That was on which one?
For the high school rodeo, it's um, they're at the very bottom on your guys' uh breakdown of what the grant was spent. On the next page is there what the buckles cost.
I don't have it.
Those one, Brian, that I gave you.
Oh, right here.
Gotcha.
Oh, Rowdy Rose, forty-nine hundred.
That was the buckles, the buckles, the primary, yep.
So we have to make sure that.
I mean, we could go ahead, yeah, that's not a.
That was just an easy bookkeeping piece on my part.
Good, even have projections.
What's that?
Even have what the projections.
No, exactly, it's nice, I mean, it makes it a lot easier, so.
Yeah. Any questions? No, I don't have a question.
I was, I was, if there's no question, I make a motion that we approve the Battle Mountain High School Rodeo Club, uh for a grant of ten thousand dollars that did. Uh provide a substantial benefit to the inhabitants of Lander County, and just please note that money can't be used for payouts, or that money can't.
Brian made a motion, would you second?
I'll second.
Kathy seconded, any more discussion?
I'd like to just comment and thank the county for the improvements that they have uh put into the rodeo grounds over the last year.
It's amazing.
It is fantastic down there, there's a set of permanent stalls down there, um the county. Yeah, and so we're looking and trying to, to bring more events in there that um can be utilized overnight, but it just, it makes the whole place look so much nicer and much more um. User-friendly for when we bring them, bring all those kids in, and every one of them being a place to put their horses. And they're nice, and they're safe, and we are, we're making that place look really nice, and we appreciate it.
Well, I've heard that from traveling through people who have taken their help horses out to walking around and stuff like that, they, how impressed they are. With, um they don't know what it looked like before, but they're like, these are very nice rodeo grounds, so yes, um thank you to everybody who's put in all that work, because.
And Donnie and his crew have always been extremely helpful, so.
Very nice.
Yeah, we appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Battle Mountain Town Grant Request, the last one, and.
Did we do, did you do the all in favors, because she, um Kathy.
I don't know the all in favor.
So there we.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Pass unanimously. And miscellaneous grants, eight thousand dollars take away, like.
Uh normally, we'd only budgeted five thousand, last year you guys asked to increase it to eight, so I just left it at eight this year. It's just for anyone that comes, hopefully not, but that comes in the middle of the, the year and needs some money, uh it's just a little extra that we have.
We've done a pretty good job of making sure people understand the grant procedure and.
Yeah, we have in the past, uh had a few that have came for smaller ones.
We're just lucky that we have the money to accommodate needs of three hundred thousand dollars in Kingston for water. I mean, what do you do, as long as you got the money, get it done. Hey, we're gonna take a break, ten minutes.
Do you guys want to vote on that eight thousand?
I'll make a motion that we approve the miscellaneous, these grants for eight thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
This conference will now be recorded, unmuted.
We have somebody from Austin here?
Commissioner, this is Miranda Tremaine, representing the Austin Chamber of Commerce, can you hear her?
We on the line?
Can you hear me? Can you hear her? Hello? Hello?
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Barely.
Can you hear me now?
Can you turn that up?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, this is Miranda Tremaine, representing the Austin Chamber of Commerce. The chamber is very fortunate to have a great support, support system from Lander County. The chamber has added three new events to our event calendar, one being a past event, the Gridley Days. The Austin Nevada Ch, uh Poker Run, and the Zombie Crawl. All the events the chamber puts on will bring tourism to the town of Austin, and will benefit the businesses in southern Lander County. Uh Austin Chamber decreased the amount of grant monies this year from last year.
Did you say you decreased it?
We decreased it, yes.
I saw it the same.
The same?
Yeah, you, you guys received nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty last year, and that's what you're asking for again this year?
I'm pretty sure we received twenty-two thousand.
It says last year was twenty-two one thirty?
Yes.
No, it was only nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty.
This whole year, twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one, was twenty-two thousand one hundred and thirty, but twenty-one to twenty-two was nineteen two fifty.
Yeah, the current year we're in, you uh received last year at budget time nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty.
Okay.
And that's what you're asking for again this year.
Okay, the same.
Any more questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we um grant Austin Chamber of Commerce nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars each time.
I'll second the motion.
I'll have to finish my little thing, that, because it will provide a substantial benefit to the inhabitants of the county.
I will second that.
Kathy made the motion, Patty seconded, any more comments? In favor?
Thank you, commissioners.
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously, will go to Austin Historical Society. Uh Austin Town Grants for seven thousand sixty dollars. Passed unanimously, will go to Austin Historical Society, uh, Austin Town Grants for seven thousand sixty dollars. No phone call.
No, I'm here to, this year again.
And I can hear you when you talk.
I've learned how to project. Okay, so I, de-homing for the record, I'm here for the Austin Historical Society, you'll see that we have a substantial decrease this year in our request. Um, I didn't have any major projects like we've been doing in the past, we've re, we put in a new furnace, which has saved us a lot of money. We've redone the fence at the castle, we've redone the fence at, at the, one of our annexes over there, and, and so far this year, things are looking good, we don't have any major projects, so we're just asking for help with our office expenses and stuff. And then I just talked with Ted, and we're going to start working on doing the same kind of program out in Austin that you guys are doing with the museum here, so hopefully this will be the last year I have to come ask you for money.
Nice. And that will be going on the agenda in the future.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Austin Chamber of Commerce, or excuse me, the Austin Historical Society, sorry, it's still on my mind, for seven thousand sixty dollars, because it is a substantial benefit to the inhabitants of the county and a beautiful museum. The, even the new, the new sign that lights up at night.
Yeah, that was a travel commission grant.
Patsy made a motion, Kathy seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Austin Town Grants Request, Austin Medical Clinic, twenty-five thousand six hundred dollars.
Now, always before, we have only funded the rent, right?
Yes.
So is this Bert, is this part of our agreement too?
I will address that if you want.
Are we looking at anything for extra on this, because the request is so much more.
Um, she, I think she wanted to kind of address that, Bert and I did have a meeting with them about this grant request, so.
So for the record, my name is Stephanie White, and I am the Senior Practice Manager for Elko Carlin and the Austin Clinic for Nevada Health Centers.
Good morning.
Thank you for letting me be here. So yes, historically, I, our grant's request has been around six thousand dollars. Our grants come requested from our foundation, which is kind of a separate entity from Nevada Health Centers, our clinics. They have some new employees who were gung ho apparently to ask for more money than, than was maybe our ideas in the, so when it was presented, I was not aware that this is what they were asking for, when we go back and look at it, we would only be asking for the rent for thirty-six hundred, utilities for twenty-seven hundred, which is sixty-three hundred. Not for the additional stuff. We would also ask that you might consider helping to pay for the phone services. They have become quite expensive with long distance and internet down there. And like, um, Lakin and Bert were saying, we've been having some meetings, we're trying to come up with some additional ideas of how to service the community, because we have a hard time staffing or getting a doctor down there, so we're trying to perhaps do some more telemedicine and additional services such as that in place of a physical doctor there as much as he has been.
So normally they ask for around six thousand, but thirty-six hundred's for the rent, and they usually ask for, um, like something they need at the clinic. I think currently this year, they asked for the rent and a defibrillator.
Correct.
Before, um, I think was a, some kind of fridge or, or something for the.
A portal of fridge for vaccines.
Yeah.
To be able to transport them from Carlin to Austin. But at this time, I feel like we have adequate equipment and supplies at the clinic. It would just be helpful, it's, it's expensive for us to staff the clinic, and we have a hard time staffing the clinic, so all we're really requesting is for help with the rent and utilities and possibly the phone if you are so.
So what's the total you were asking for now?
I'm sorry, say that again.
What's the total?
It would be twelve thousand three hundred for those three things. The, the main concern we had was the physician assistance stipend and the employee travel. Also on the patient assistance, we did make them aware that our senior center has been, um, providing a lot of help for that, so they weren't aware of that, so, um, they, I don't think they were wanting to request that anymore.
Or, or the service, the next off service.
No.
So just the rent.
So that'd be twelve thousand three hundred.
Utilities and the phone if, if you would be willing.
What's the biggest hurdle you guys have in Austin, is it actually having a doctor on staff there?
Correct. So Michael Blythet has been servicing there, comes from Carlin, so it's two and a half hours both ways. Um, it's just tr- travel more than anything, but he just had a new baby as well, so he's not wanting to, to go as often, so we're trying. But we're, we're short three physicians in Elko ourselves, so it's just hard to staff physicians in the rural community. So we're looking at other services, I've been talking with Patsy and my sub-Bert and Brandy, and we're trying to come up with some other solutions to maybe do some telemedicine, or wanting to do a town hall with the community down there.
Are we any closer to having Dr. Wilkort go down south?
That's, that's what we're working with them on.
Okay.
We don't wanna steal patients from each other, we wanna make sure that it, we kinda intertwine, but it's gonna take a little more planning, and, and there's, there's some other hurdles with multiple departments crossing, um, that we're trying to get through right now.
Okay.
I got a couple of things, first of all, let me, let me just qualify this here. Where the rural health centers are, most of the counties do provide all of that area for them, and with utilities and with everything, so. Uh, we were never asked to do that, so we were just trying to supplement the rent, because at one time, when we first moved into that building, uh, we were only paying a dollar a month, a dollar a year, and Convention of Tourism got audited and said, they own it and they have to do a reasonable rent.
Is that correct, Ted?
Yeah.
No, no, I was gonna say.
When they were auditing.
It's not, it's not uncorrect either. Yeah? It, it's just, what, that's what auditors do, where they go by their rules that sometimes don't necessarily coincide with the end of rest.
That may be, that may be a way to look at it then to actually.
It's a recommendation from the auditors.
Yeah, 'cause we have to look at that, so that's why we started covering that, because it is up to us. Way before we had that building, they actually met at the sheriff's office, and that was really inconvenient with, with the small little room of what we were doing, so I'm, I'm in favor of looking into what we can do on the rent, but one thing I did.
So that would say six thousand dollars? Inter-local agreement is, is what you do.
It's thirty-six hundred, Convention of Tourism charges them thirty-six hundred a year, right?
Correct.
You can do an inter-local agreement between, uh, the, uh, the FER and REC Board and, and whomever, or in Landor County, really.
I think that's what we should look into, but in the interim, one thing I wanted to ask, Bert, we definitely need an X-ray machine there. Now, is that something that we should do on our clinic side and do, or can we add it into the grant? Do you have any idea how much an X-ray machine might cost?
The one that we purchased last, I believe, was around twelve thousand.
Okay.
In Wind, I believe that was in Windover, but the other part of, eh, the challenge is actually having staff to run the machine, because we've run into that in Elko as well. You have to have a certified radiology technician, you can't just have an MA or the doctor or other staff run the machine. So that could be a challenge where we have a hard time having.
They might have to bring one down with this, so we'll look at it when we do our clinic then.
Yes, um, the challenge is, is getting cert, you know, staff to actually operate it, like you said, it's not, not the issue of who owns it, it's a matter of, you know, or if we bought one would be no problem, but it'd be getting qualified people.
Okay. Yeah, and, and I do, I have a real problem paying for the, for the PA, not that I don't want him there, and by the way, he's wonderful, everybody absolutely loves him. But that's what a federally qualified health center does, that's what you get grants for, is to pay for that, so I, I think we should take care of all the housing. Absolutely, so whatever that comes to.
The three that they're asking for comes to twelve thousand three hundred. That was for the rent, the utilities, and the phone relay switch services.
The final figure's twelve thousand three hundred.
Yeah, correct.
I'll call for a motion.
I don't have the full total.
Twelve thousand three hundred.
Twelve thousand three hundred is the total?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what it whittled down to.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the Austin Medical Clinic, uh, which is Nevada Rural Health Center's grant amount for twelve thousand three hundred, because it is a substantial benefit to all of our folks in Landor County, thank you.
That's all, Tom, Tom, Ted, I'll second that motion.
Kathy made the motion, Brian seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your time, thank you for having me.
Very much, we're gonna go to, uh, continue the CCP project number five, discuss the possible action regarding the CCP Fund oh-five-five, engineering fees in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
We did increase this by a hundred thousand, um, just because we have a great engineer now.
So I think, I just, I think it's probably prudent that we just, we let everybody know that we, I mean, we are putting a lot of money towards these projects to earmark money, so we have it dedicated to where it's not just sitting out there and running labs, so the state can't necessarily sweep it up, so just make sure that we consider that. And it is, these are, these will be like ideas and themes and things that we would like to see in the future, so.
Yes, and I would like to point out on this that this is, uh, there's great engineers all over the country, but, um, it's not just because we have a great engineer, it's because we have a lot of projects that we may not see through, but we want to have, if you don't have a plan, you can't proceed forward with grants. So a lot of this additional funds that we're putting in here are because in order to, to give somebody a grant, you have to have some cost estimates, you have to have some of the, the engineering, some of the things that have to go into place before they'll even look at you for a grant. So we added money to this so we can look at some of these projects to hopefully get some of that money back in grant funding.
Just tie it in with quarter group and break the back.
Correct. So, so that's why you guys are gonna see a, a big jump there, it's not just, um, because we think we have great engineers.
Better from the last.
You wanna vote it?
Well, do you, you wanna do these?
You wanna, you wanna do one by one, or you wanna do them all at once?
You can't, well, it's what you wanna do, but if you wanna do them all at once, you need to read them all in. Just do them all at once, then go through and do our worksheets, and then we can add it as a.
Okay, okay, I'll read them all in, and we'll just go through it then. Uh, engineering fees in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, flood levy project rollover and reduced in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, Water and Sewer District Two Extended Project Rollover and Reduced in the Amount of Three Million Dollars. D Old Eight A Connector Road to Hilltop Partial Rollover Add One Point Five Million for Three Million Dollars. Battle Mountain West Side Water and Sewer Pavings Sidewalks is four-year project, partial rollover is eight hundred and fifty thousand five hundred in the amount of nine million seven hundred and fifty thousand five hundred dollars. F Safe Routes to School Phase Three Rollover in the Amount of Three Million Seven Hundred and Eighty Thousand. Uh, G Mag Chloride Battle Mountain in the Amount of One Hundred Thousand Dollars. H Austin Airport Waterline Rollover in the Amount of One Million Five Hundred and Eighty Seven Six Hundred Thousand. I Mag Chloride Austin in the Amount of One Hundred Thousand, Library County Run, uh, Rollover and Reduced in the Amount of One Million Dollars. K The I-80 Sound Wall Rollover in the Amount of Three Hundred Thousand. L Brine Program for Fifty Thousand Dollars. M Twenty Twenty Two Preventive Maintenance One Million Seven Hundred Thousand. N Battle Mountain Fire Hall, Firehouse for Six Million Eight Hundred Fifty One Thousand Two Hundred and Fifty Dollars. O California Trail Site Twenty Five Thousand Dollars. Emergency Line in the Amount of, Emergency Project Line in the Amount of Two Hundred and Fifty Thousand. Okay, we're on the engineering fees for Two Hundred and Fifty Thousand. You wanna make a motion, or you just wanna?
We're gonna go through them all, and we'll make a.
Yeah, we're.
One motion for everything?
So I think, there's all the questions that have been asked on the Two Hundred Fifty Five Year.
Okay.
So what's we then?
Okay. Flood Levy Project Rollover and Reduced in the Amount of Two Hundred Fifty Thousand Dollars. No discussion?
So this would be rollover and reduced in the amount of Two Hundred and Fifty Thousand Dollars.
So the flood levy is what we are, we're doing the twenty-year study on, we're a year and a half into it, um, to see what the true flows are.
Yes. Right, that's what we've been.
So, so I think there was, I don't know what the reduction was, but I think there was a pretty substantial reduction.
Mm-hmm, yeah, it was a large.
Because of that.
Do we, do we have any questions or comments on all of these under CCP projects?
I do have some.
Yes, I do, yeah.
Okay. Which one, Kathy?
On the library. So the reduction, what is the reduction on the costs for the library?
Well, I believe we put two million in there last year, and we, we reduced that down to, to one million.
We reduced it a million.
Um, I think that that's more than enough for us to, the only thing that we may have to tackle is the E-rate, which is, some of that's gonna be government funded, and that's a whole other, whole other separate issue.
Okay.
With the government funding on the E-rate, but the, um, from what we're seeing, it's gonna cost to get the library up and operating and get some of these publishers on, on board, it's gonna be less than a million dollars.
None, that doesn't have anything to do with wages, that's just the library itself, right?
Yes, correct, wages are a separate budget.
Alright, then I'm good.
Uh, what, so items G and I, what, what are, what's the Mag Chloride for Battle Mountain Austin, the amount of one thousand dollars, what's that? I hear Mag Chloride, I think, yeah.
It's the same thing we've been doing, we've been doing it for the last two or three years now, Brian.
Yeah. Just on some of these rural roads?
Yes, yeah, yeah, we're just, uh, Mag Chloride, like, maybe the first twelve miles, and you know, then it's opening up our plate operators, getting more done during the summertime month, months, you know, lessons are.
And no complaints from people that run down those when the veins and the water gets on them?
Nope. Nope, surprisingly not.
Well, that's good.
So.
Donnie, while you're up there, my question is on the brine program, and I see that's, your explanation is you actually put that on the roads before to help with the ice?
Yes, that's what the state does, you see them do that.
Have we done that before?
Nope, this is brand new.
Okay, so this is just new?
Yep.
And I think.
And this should cover both Battle Mountain and Austin.
Didn't you say it was just a one-time cost to get it up and going?
Right, it's a, um, like, was it twenty-four thousand to get it up and going, then it's a five thousand per year to refill the tank, if we need to refill it. I'm sure there's some times we won't use it all, you know?
Is that what you did, put down, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it, is that the stuff that you put down first?
Yes.
And it works wonderfully, because California, yeah, not that I'm a fan of California anything, but they, I had noticed they had done that from, of course, Thomas has to go to the, yeah, the gun shop, whatever that is, on, right inside California by Verdai, and they put that down before a storm, and it's absolutely amazing what it does, so, yeah.
Yeah, they, they've been doing it up over immigrant summer for years, so. Yep.
So apparently they don't do it on fifty?
I don't know about down there, I think they do.
Well, boy, it sure doesn't seem any better going over those two mountain ridges, let me tell ya.
The judge is shaking his head, yes, so they do.
If it's fifty thousand instead of, we got, we're missing a zero.
Yeah.
So it's five hundred thousand?
Oh, yeah, I've done it in on my paper.
No, no, it's fif- it's fifty thousand, but we're missing that third zero after the comma.
Yeah, it's fifty thousand.
That's on the brine program?
Yeah, yeah.
And that takes current prices now?
I was only gonna give you five thousand, Donnie.
Pardon me?
Current prices now?
Um, as of, I just checked on it a month ago, so.
Get it now, store it.
Yeah.
The Safe Routes to School, what is that, again?
That's the sidewalk projects.
Sidewalks, that's what I thought.
Yep.
Which, I think, that's been.
They're so nice.
Oh, yeah.
It looks so nice, it just looks very, very nice, and lots of people are very happy, so.
Yeah, really cool.
But the trouble with Mag Chloride, it will set up on you if you leave it stored too long.
It's, this is with pumps and all that.
Right.
Oh, for the Mag Chloride, yes, no, when they're doing the roads, they'll come in and bring a tank and do it, but no, for the brine program, that'll, they have their own pumps and all that, this is the system we're buying. So it circulates.
So the firehouse one, what, what are we doing with that? Is that for a brand new one, is that?
Yes, that would be a tear down of the old one in place, rebuild a new one, um, the, the six million includes a basement for storage and training.
Nice.
Um.
Is, would that site, Ron, would that site be better than the site that's right there by, is that a county lot there right by La Mer Store? On, uh, the main drag there on front?
No, that's on the by, no, that's.
No.
That's probably.
Gotcha, okay.
And I, and I believe that the fire department, Ron, can correct me if I'm wrong, but they, they have all agreed that, that the location it's currently in, they'd like to keep it.
That, Bert's correct on that, that's separately located, uh, it's not on this side, the freeway, it's over there, that's, that's the best place for it.
So where do you keep all your stuff while, at, whilst the building's torn down?
We're working on that with, uh. We're working on that with, uh, uh, Bert, the county manager. Uh, so we'll have, if things go right, which I'm sure he'll explain later, uh, we'll have a place to keep them in, inside. And it's mainly the winter time because they gotta be full of water. We don't want them to freeze. In the summertime, uh, they're not gonna freeze. You can lock stuff up.
So actually some of the, some of the things that we need to do on the budget to improve the one we have now, we may not want to do.
We wouldn't wanna do.
We're not so soon we're gonna do this.
Yes, we would not wanna do. So after we did a review of the current fire department, there's multiple add-ons and then buildings and the trusses and the roofs are running separate directions. So you can't just, um, tear out some of the inside to, to remodel it to fit new trucks and the, and the things that they need.
No, I understand that. What I'm asking, what I'm asking is how soon we're doing this because we may not wanna do any improvements on our current one.
Oh, a hundred percent correct. Yes, no, no, this would be something that, um, we would start working on immediately and, um, if everything goes well, we would.
So we'll look closer when we get to the budget on the budget plan.
Bert and I talked about that and he, we put them both on there in case you guys didn't approve the fire hall.
Got it.
But once we get to the repair and maintenance, if you guys approve the fire hall, we can move on.
We are gonna do the other, okay. Makes sense. I hope not.
And the California Trail Site.
So that is the CRMP, the Cultural Resource Management Plan that we just got signed over, the land that we got from. Purging County. Um, we have, California Trail goes through there and we have certain things that we have to do to preserve them sites. And especially if we're gonna go forward with, with ever putting a rail spur or anything else in, we have to fence them and, um, take pictures and send them off to, um, the state resource. So they can verify it, certify it every year that it's not being disturbed. So this is gonna be an ongoing deal that every year we have to go out and take pictures, do all this to.
It's a contractual obligation when the, when the land was, uh, conveyed.
Okay.
That will go down. Um, it'll probably be roughly around five thousand dollars after this initial year of getting everything set up. The sites that may be disturbed, we'll go in and fence and we'll use some of this money for that and then it'll slowly.
Do you have any, any questions?
That's all my questions, too.
Any more questions, comments, concerns? I'll entertain a motion on the CCP projects A through P.
If we make that motion, Ted, do we need a total of the project amounts or can we just approve based on discussion? And I was ready to do the review.
The total's thirty-one million nine hundred and ninety-four thousand three hundred and fifty dollars.
Alright, I'm sorry. I was looking, so thirty-one, uh, million nine hundred and ninety-four thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, that's the amount. Uh, if there's no more questions, I'll make a motion that we approve the CCP fund, uh, fund is zero five five A through P. The total amount of thirty-one million nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and three, nine, nine hundred and ninety-four thousand three hundred and fifty dollars.
One second.
All in favor?
Here you are.
Okay.
Thank you.
Buildings and Equipment, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Buildings and Equipment Repair and Maintenance Fund, O two nine.
Hello, everybody.
I'm gonna read pages two eight.
She has a question. Tom, she's looking at the time for lunch is what she's saying.
Oh, 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 just so y'all know, I was informed we're having a working lunch. Enjoy the sandwiches on Portolo.
And chips.
You wanna take a break for a couple minutes and get a sandwich?
There's another tray coming. It's not here yet, so.
Yeah, I didn't know we weren't gonna break for lunch, folks. I'm glad.
That doesn't mean we don't break for lunch till we can eat it.
We just break, eat real quick and get back to work?
Yeah.
How many people would like to take a lunch break for fifteen minutes and get back to work?
Me, 'cause that's what my dog said.
Okay, Kathy says yes. We're gonna break for fifteen minutes, folks.
It does for us.
I need it.
Okay, Buildings and Equipment, Discussion, Possible Action Regarding Buildings and Equipment Repair and Maintenance Fund, oh two nine. I'll read through all of them. A Lander Kids Club Replace Havak Five Ton and Three and a Half Ton Units for twenty-six thousand three hundred and ninety-three. B Lander Kids Club Replace Countertops for six thousand dollars. C BM Fire Hall, One Heating Unit and Swamp Cooler Replacement. It's a rollover for sixteen thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars. D Civic Center, Two Heating Units in the Amount of Thirty-two thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars. E Austin R and B Rebuild, A Six Forty-four E John Deere Loader for a hundred and twenty thousand. F Austin R and B Major Repairs for Number One O Two, nineteen ninety International Forty-eight Hundred Plow Sander Dump Truck, twenty-seven thousand dollars. G Austin R and B Major Repairs for Number Two O Four, nineteen ninety International Plow Sander Dump Truck, fifty-seven thousand dollars. Lander County to Hire the Con Crew in the Amount of Forty thousand. And that's the end of the oh two nine requests. So Lander Kids Club Replace the Havak Five Ton, Three and a Half Ton Units for twenty-six three ninety-three.
They're shot and they need to be replaced.
Now, prices, that's the price right now? Can we get it done under this price?
I believe so.
Okay, that's my only concern.
That's the quote, it's the quote, and they have to honor their quote.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Lander Kids Club Replace the Countertops, they need new countertops.
Yeah, and that just came up and I just threw it on there with a number. I'm having a couple people look at it to, I don't think it'll, it won't go over that.
And what's wrong with the existing countertops?
They're just falling apart. Not countertops counters, where you walk in at the old DMV in the treasure side. And that's the drawers and the cupboards and all, the whole nine yards. It's old Formica stuff and it's coming apart.
All part, just shredded.
Yep.
And please remind me, after we get done with this oh two nine, we're gonna go to the Justice Court in Austin.
Okay.
I have a, I have a question on the, um, back to the, um.
What, Patty?
Yeah, I have a question back on, on the air conditioning units.
Yep.
Um, we have two quotes in there.
I have, I have two quotes.
And they're both about the same price.
Well, the one kept from last year, it went up, the second, the twenty-sixth went up from last, I had these last year, but they didn't get put on. And it, it has gone up.
Okay, so how, how do we know which one we go with? I, I don't know yet.
I should've put the higher one on the agenda, but I didn't realize there was two different quotes, so you guys can approve the higher one if you wanna be safe, but there's not big, a big difference between the two.
Well, if you're just gonna new building, why do we have to repair the old, if they're repaired down?
That's a county building, we wanna keep it good and safe.
Who's, who's tearing it down, tearing down what?
No, she's talking about the lend, the HVAC.
No, 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 we're not talking about the fire. Talking about the kids' club.
Kids' club.
Oh. Okay, now we're on to.
Yeah, this is right, this is right behind the old courthouse.
Old DMV.
It's, it's the building right behind your, uh, old courthouse. That's the kids' club.
So if you want, we can change it to the twenty-seven thousand two hundred dollar quote, um, and approve it at the higher quote, just in case. It's up to you guys.
Well, my, my question was, 'cause I thought they were really close, but, um, my question was, who decides who we go with? Is that you, Anna?
Yep.
Who decides what, Patty?
Who decides? We have two quotes in here and they're really close. So do we usually use the lower one or what?
Um, just whoever is most qualified to do it. I just had to get quotes, so I have two quotes.
Okay.
We're gonna leave it up to Anna to decide which one to take.
That's what, that's what I was asking, yeah.
Excellent. I'd rather pay a little more and get better quality than I've seen now.
And then with the fire hall, are we still gonna go ahead and do that? No. Okay, so we're taking that one off?
We'll take the, the crew are out of the fire. Well, why don't we wait and see if we approve that? We could, well, we'll just adjust it.
Oh, we did? Okay.
Um, the Civic Center, Two Heating Units in the Amount of Thirty-two three one two.
Yeah, we're replacing them two at a time a year.
How many do we have? How many heating units?
How many's up there, Rita? We're on, but there's only four left, right?
Four, okay.
And we've had problems with our heating this year, just to let everybody know. So we're desperate for heat in that building.
Um, our Austin Road and Bridge, Rebuild the Six Forty-four E John Deere Loader, a hundred and twenty thousand.
What's, what's wrong with that? A hundred and twenty thousand dollar rebuild, that's pretty significant.
It's a major rebuild?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
So I do know that in, in the past is what we've done in Austin is some of the older equipment that doesn't have all the electronics because the service calls are so far. Um, like we built, rebuilt some, uh, nineteen eighty-eight blades frame up.
Right.
Yes.
Uh, so we don't have to deal with the service coming out there for the computer.
Okay, so it's less expensive to rebuild.
Yeah, so it's engine transmission, it's engine and transmission, rebuild both them on that, so.
On the con crew, um, Justice Lander County, is that, um, I know Austin uses it and it usually runs twenty-five thousand, what it used to, so I'm sure it's higher now. But it just is Lander County, so are you folks on the Battle Mountain?
No, that is, that includes Austin as well in that. Um, they went from four hundred dollars every time for a day to a thousand.
Wow.
So is this enough, is what I'm asking?
Oh, I don't, I think it will be enough, partly because we can't get them half the time.
Yeah.
During fire season, a lot of times we can't get them. So I think the forty thousand will cover us. Um.
We was just told last week on the con crew that Nevada Energy has first come, first served on the camp, con crew, so that's changed, so we're not getting them nowhere near as much.
We couldn't give them, e- even with COVID last year, we couldn't get them.
Right.
So, so my question was, we used to pay twenty-five thousand to get them. So if that's gone up, that would be forty thousand if we can get them. But that's Austin, so it says Lander County, so are you guys gonna use them? Then you need some money in here.
No, that's for, that's for both Battle Mountain and Austin.
That twenty-five thousand was both?
Yes.
Gotcha.
We've always budgeted.
I thought it was just Austin. Thank you.
You guys raised it last year to forty.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that's A through H. Are there any more questions? And I would think that the, the questions on F and G would be the same. It's better to rebuild what we have and not have to deal with all the computers and everything.
Yes, that's basically the same.
So are you guys wanting to, to include the, the fire hall heating unit and swamp cooler replace or no?
Well, let's, uh, whoever makes the motion, let's make that contingent on whether or not we approve the new fire hall. If we approve the new fire hall, then we'll erase these.
You already approved it.
You already approved it, so you have to.
Oh, we already approved the fire hall?
In the CCP side.
Oh, that's right.
But it's a rollover.
Well, then we don't need that. We don't need that.
But if it's a rollover.
Yeah.
We haven't started it though.
Couldn't we still keep it with the fire hall for a rollover?
Where can we put that?
We might wanna use it on the new one.
I think that would be encompassed into that six million, all the HVAC and everything else.
And it's a different fund.
Okay, then just delete it. Okay.
Well, that's right, the firehouse.
Are we gonna take that out, really?
Sixteen thousand.
That's something they need right now.
So if you take that sixteen, three, two, one out, how much, what's the total for number six? So whoever makes the motion can have the dollar amount in there.
Be three hundred and eight thousand seven hundred and ten dollars.
Three hundred and eight thousand?
Seven hundred and ten.
Seven ten. Gee, that's nothing compared to oh five five. Any more questions, comments, concerns? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, um, fund, uh, the Buildings and Equipment Repair Maintenance for, um, oh two nine minus the sixteen thousand three twenty-one for, um, Battle Mountain Fire Hall.
Cause it's in the best.
Well, no, cause this is our, our stuff, so we don't have to say that.
Oh, that's right, it's not grants.
We're talking with three hundred and eight thousand?
Three hundred and eight.
Yeah, it's not a grant. We're just spending money, it's not a grant.
In an, in an amount of three hundred and eight thousand seven hundred and ten dollars. Second? Oh, second. JR seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Pass you now, you're asleep.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
We're gonna get, go ahead Billy up here. Let him get going home.
Our afterhand committee to Austin Fire Department.
Sure.
No.
Number thirty-three.
It's zero, zero, one, zero, two, four in your first one.
Alright, yeah, off to this.
Oh, three, one.
Um, I just wanna note on the, uh, non-personnel operating budget sheet, the.
Did you find it? Did you find it?
Yeah, I found, I found it in the Facebook, but I don't have it on the agenda.
Item number thirty-three.
Right. Okay, now I need to go back to this. Thirty-three. Okay. Uh, Austin Justice Court, Discussion and Possible Action. And there's, uh, an increase to operations and it's not ninety-six, it's fifty-seven twenty?
Correct.
So witness fees, um, and telephone and fax were on his sheet and we caught that later after the agenda was already sent out. So those, uh, the witness fees is five hundred, the telephone and fax is three thousand, same as last year, we didn't increase those.
That's in addition to the fifty-seven twenty?
No.
Fifty-seven twenty is the.
Yeah, that's why it was wrong.
Oh, I see, okay.
And then we, on the, uh, personnel side, we did add, um, a, amount for call-in, uh, overtime and holiday work. But this would be at the straight pay since they're part-time employees and then standby, um, do the new mandates that they have.
So this is Judge Gindoff for the record. What she's talking about there is that they passed a law where we have to do all bail hearings within forty-eight hours. I've been working with the jail, we do it all virtually anyways, so what that just is, is have each one of my part-time clerks on call during the weekend. If there's someone that is held in custody and I feel the need that they have to have that bail hearing, they're gonna have a, also in the budget is a laptop for them. We're just gonna do it virtually, port it into the servers when we come back on Monday. Um, is the change in personnel for that. There's also.
You can do it on a computer?
Yeah, I do most things via Zoom because you can hold that as a record anyways. It's an audio visual record and it covers you on that. And it saves the jail having to drive guys down to Austin and gives them access to justice. I can, I've been doing it with, uh, even with the DA's office, the process, um, you know, Mr. Fordron. Zoom's in a lot. I've done it with Ted as well and, uh, the public defender really enjoys it because then he can zoom in from whatever else he's got going on.
He can do it from his car.
Yeah, he hasn't yet, but I have had attorneys from Vegas zoom in from their cars, but they stop. I make sure they're stopped on the side of the road or in a parking lot somewhere, but it allows a greater access to just, especially in Austin, we're isolated as we are.
How you like the job, though?
I really enjoy this job quite a bit, yeah. Um, but, yeah, all, all I ask for, for changes in here were stuff that statutorily happen with the exception of, uh, translators or interpreters. I use the court certified interpreters. This is the first year we've had to use them fairly regular. They're two hour minimums for the Spanish speakers at seventy bucks an hour. Um, we actually had a American Sign Language user that we had all scheduled up was pretty expensive that got resolved day of the hearing and that was a odyssey to get that forgiven from the company. But it all worked out for us. So I increased that because I think the more I use. So I increased that because I think the more I use Zoom, the more people are using it, including a lot of non-English speakers, that's their first language, and um, if there's any questions or lots of people are trying to use their kids and stuff for translators, and that just doesn't cut it, so then we have to get them, so I increased that, and the rest is just, like I said, the call time for forty-eight hours. I don't know how this year's, uh, incomes are gonna be because they changed the laws on traffic, so it's all gonna be a new experience for us.
Well, I appreciate your service, Billy, and, uh, I'll entertain a motion if there's no more questions for Judge Gindoff.
I'll make a motion, um, the amount is five thousand, seven hundred and twenty, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we, um, increase the operations of the Austin Justice Court by five thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars.
Give me a second.
One second.
Patsy made the motion, Brian seconded, any more comments, concerns, all in favor? All in, has it unanimously, drive safe, Billy.
Thank you, guys.
Now we want the fire hall from Austin. What number is that, Liz?
Twenty-five.
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 Afternoon, Roger.
Afternoon.
What can we do for you, young man?
Well, we're asking for an increase in our budget for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Um, you know, with the rising cost of, uh, of a lot of materials and things, um, you know, and the increase in traffic going through Austin now. In the past, it hasn't been an issue, but we're seeing an up, and seeing an uptick in, in, in traffic and accidents. Um, first month, you know, it's, so we're just, we're looking at doing more training, you know, because we got more chemicals coming through our town. We got electric cars, we have people who own electric cars in our town now, so we need to, you know, train on those and understand how to fight those kinda, those issues, so.
Yeah, I was, I was surprised at how many people, I mean, you can have up to two hundred people on a weekend down there in Kingston. Yeah, we gotta be prepared for that.
We got a lot of big events coming up too, you know, there's a big Fourth of July reunion, that's gonna be probably three or four days. It's gonna take a lot of our time in, in, in participation itself.
Pick the right ticket on the guns now.
Okay.
Like, and there, if it was an increase of forty-three to nine, what, so what's the total budget amount?
Um, well, their operational, seventy-four thousand, eight hundred total, and then we have, uh, we do have personnel, uh, sheets for them because of their purse.
So total overall forty-three ninety, more, right?
Yeah, just for their operational.
That's on their operational side?
Mm-hmm.
I see, so based on last year's budget, Roger, that you still have, um, almost fifty-nine percent remaining of that budget?
Correct, we're fixing to use a lot of that.
Okay, a lot of that again.
Yeah, because we, we got a lot of, of repairs we need to do to our equipment.
Okay.
So we'd be using up most of that.
Your equipment working pretty good?
It's working pretty good, yeah, it's just, you know, the wear and tear, that's what we need to address.
They ever get that dam done down there?
The what dam?
The dam? For the, the reservoir up there?
In, up in Kingston?
Yeah.
Nah, I'm not sure, I, I'm not sure if they did that or not, I know they, they have built some, some ladders and things to get to it, so, some stairways.
One of the biggest increases was their minor equipment and furniture, and it's because they, they are in need of some replacement of equipment, and I, yeah, and some uniforms and things like that.
A lot of our equipment is, sorry, Kim shot, is extremely old and way outdated, we're talking twenty, thirty years old, I mean, outer ropes and stuff, and that stuff is very expensive, and every day we're seeing it's climbing and climbing and climbing. So, um, some of the, um, quotes that I got, I mean, two days later, they're
Yeah.
increased more, so.
Any more questions?
Concerns, questions, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Austin Fire Department, uh, with a new piece of forty-three thousand, nine hundred dollars to the operation.
Brian made the motion, Kathy seconded.
So just, just for clarification, this is approving the budget as a whole, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I just, um, we missed that on the judges, let's just point that out, we might want to, uh, make sure we include that on these motions moving forward, so they know it's not just for operations, it's for the budget as a whole.
Total, okay, well, I see what you're saying, right, yes, so I'll amend my motion to state that it's for the total.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass you now, Mr. Sleep.
Okay, I'll go back and do another motion on that then, under the Austin Justice Court.
Okay.
Because we did an increase to operations, um, and I will make a motion to approve the complete budget that included the increased operations by five thousand, seven hundred and twenty.
We just went back, we just went back to item number thirty-three, Austin Justice Court to make an amendment. Patsy made the amendment, we need a second.
One second.
Patsy made the motion, Kathy made the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Austin, Austin, want your progress, appreciate you.
Good luck down there.
Thank you.
Do you need him too?
We can, yeah, because I'm with him.
Austin ambulance, sorry, twenty-six.
You wanna do Austin?
You all want to go for it?
And what number?
Well, I'm with him, he's my right, if he's leaving me, I don't care, we can wait if you want, whatever you wanna do.
No, 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 hold on, let's get you, Austin folks done, what number are we on?
Twenty-six. Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. Okay, twenty-six, Austin ambulance, discussion, possible action, there is an increase to operations, uh, by eighteen thousand, five hundred dollars.
And we did have to increase their overtime on their personnel side as well.
Did you figure out for fuel, if you can, yeah?
We, we just upgraded a little bit on the fuel, and we probably should have done a lot more, um, however, we didn't, we didn't, because we, we didn't anticipate that, I mean, this huge increase, so, um, I, I just can't even imagine in my head what it's gonna be here shortly.
We just have to make adjustments.
I know propane was going up, and I don't even know if I budgeted enough for that, you know, I was trying to be frugal a little bit, um, the biggest thing that I wanted to ask for was the, um, the maintenance contract agreement going up for the, um, service contract on our trauma hell that we bought, and I was originally asking for fifteen thousand, um, it did come in at seventeen, almost eighteen thousand dollars for that, however, we can do a two-year and then revisit it then for eleven thousand dollars, um, is what we can do, and then.
What line are we looking at?
Um, that would be for the maintenance contract agreement, the five-three-five-six-zero.
Oh, six, four, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
That was for the simulator dummy that you guys?
Yeah, the simulator that we have, and that covers everything, if anything goes wrong with it, they, we will ship it to them, they'll replace all the parts. I mean, it's got computers, it's totally high-tech, and then they'll send us a replacement while it's gone. But it has been very, um, we've used it a lot, beans with COVID, you know, we couldn't get training anywhere, and he's just a, he's our patient right there, we can practice anything on him.
Okay, we need a motion on the Austin ambulance?
You know, I'm wondering if maybe we should at least go ahead and up the gas and oil, I mean, we're over five dollars a gallon. Uh, we were at five nineteen, it went down to five oh nine, and it hasn't gone back up. So, I, I would like to see us put some more in that, how much?
We can't give any more money than requested, though.
So.
Why can't we?
If you can give less, you can give more.
Well, let's go with another, let's go with another four.
You're on the record with that one.
And we'll move that up to gas and oil at ten thousand.
And it's not department, but.
Is the price increased?
They still, I, I just want to point out, they still do have sixty-five percent of their gas and oil left for this year. They've only, yeah, they've only spent one thousand, seven hundred and twenty of their gas and oil line.
True, okay.
So, I don't know, I mean, if you guys want to increase it more than a thousand, um, we can, but.
And Kim, this is for the, for the building, for the heating, correct? This is not for actually the driving and all that, because you fill up the.
I don't, I have a county credit card, uh, or we have a credit card through EMS.
Okay.
And so I don't know where that comes out of, because I don't see a decrease on it, but, yeah, we did see a, a significant jump in propane to heat the building. We are coming into summer now, but, um, we've seen a huge jump the last month, so, um, I don't know what you want to do with that.
That's where your propane comes out of, is the gas and oil, because we code those.
And we have how much left? What percentage?
We still have sixty-five percent.
Well, I think, yeah, we have sixty-five, we should, that should cover it, I can't imagine that it would be more than that.
And, and we are increasing it a thousand.
Well, you know, it's just that people are really anxious to travel, and they, they're, they're really looking at this summer, and I know the more there's traveling, the more accidents we have.
So this one's actually, this is, we're talking about, um, gas and oil for heating on this one.
Yeah, but then you made them.
Does, does Sean budget for that?
Made the comment, you thought we had enough left on gas and oil.
Do you have a fuel card? Then that, then that's where your fuel card comes out of too, the gas and oil.
But I've used more than a thousand. We use the same cards that Lander County EMS, I mean, in Battle Mountain does.
When we get our flyer bills, we code it out of Austin EMS, gas and oil.
Oh, all right.
So, oh, we have well over half.
We have, how many more?
I wonder if your propane is coming out of here.
I'm wondering that too.
So the propane is under the utilities?
Well.
I don't code those.
Usually not, but I'm wondering if that's where they're getting coded, because that gas and oil number just doesn't seem right, if, if that's where you're taking your flyers out of too.
Yeah, I, I don't.
Seventy-three, nine, eighty is the propane?
When you increase this, were you thinking of propane, or were you thinking of gas?
I was thinking propane when I increased it a thousand, that's what I would, that's what I was talking about, because I've seen this huge jumps, our bill was eight hundred dollar, or six hundred dollars, and it went up to twelve hundred dollars the next month. So, um, and that was, I didn't, I didn't raise the temperature in my barn at all.
But is that seven, three, nine, eight, oh, is that?
I'm thinking their propane might be coming out of their utilities line and not the gas and oil, because that's where, uh, they still have fifty percent, but maybe we should increase that one.
How much did you propane increase, did you say?
About six hundred dollars.
It just depends on the month, so.
The, we got two
You got two?
Ginormous tanks, yes, and we did, last year we did find a leak, you know, but they say they check it all the time, and I make him come to me and bring me the receipt when he fills it out, so. But we have had some cold days, I mean, where I know that heater's running all the time, and we have to keep that ambulance at a certain temperature.
Okay, well, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we.
I had a question real quick, Patty.
Go ahead.
On the labor side of the, the budget, the increases and stuff, that's what we disagreed with, with our, on our union, uh, negotiating and whatnot?
Well, we haven't read that part of the agenda in, because we skipped the.
Oh, we haven't, okay, so we, I thought we were approving the budget in, in total when we make these motions, is that part of it, or not?
That's what we need to do, but we do need to read in the section that she needs to read in.
After the projects is where we start getting into operational budgets, and there's a spot in there for me to kind of go over those changes on the personnel side.
So we're really not necess, approving the entire budget, right, if we're not?
Well, once she reads it in, you will re, you will approve the entire budget as she states.
Yeah, once, once, so we skipped a step here, once Lakin lays this out, then, then it'll, it'll all come together, but.
Okay, all right, then I have no questions, sorry, Patty.
No, that's okay, that's important, um, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the Austin ambulance budget with an increase on five-three-three-six-oh, the gas and oil, and I'm gonna move that up to eight thousand. And the five-three-nine-eight-oh utilities, I'm going to move up another four thousand. So that means our total that she's asking for is, it was eighteen-five additional is now twenty-four thousand, five hundred additional to her budget.
Did you, did you increase just the utilities, or did you increase another one?
Did I increase what?
What did you do on the gas?
Gas and oil, I went up, um, to eight thousand, two thousand more, and four thousand more on utilities for a total of six thousand more.
Thank you.
All right, so all seconds.
So your total's twenty-four thousand, five hundred?
Right, that's the additional.
Patsy made the motion, Kathy seconded, any more questions, comments, concerns, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We would like to say that Lander County has been great to us, and we do appreciate that, the whole southern end of the county appreciates it, so, thank you very much. Have we done, we have to be here towards the end.
Anything else to, yep, anything else, right?
I got calls going down right now, so.
Okay.
Okay, we have, um, discussion possible action regarding buildings and equipment, fixed assets, fund oh two nine, you know what? Denise, you ready to come up, so that you don't have to sit here all day?
We should probably read in the, I mean, if we're gonna have to keep skipping around.
No, it's in the second book, okay. Okay, discussion possible action regarding buildings and equipment, fixed assets, fund oh two nine. I'll read through, A, R.
What, I'm sorry, what number are we on?
We're on, um, buildings and equipment fixed.
Number seven.
Number seven.
Oh, right here.
Okay, safety equipment in the amount of two hundred fifty-five thousand dollars, B, industrial park rollover in the amount of seven million, five hundred thousand. C, fire EMS radio upgrades, partial rollover added two sixty-seven, five hundred, in the amount of five hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. Update some, the phone system for the county building, partial rollover in the amount of a hundred thousand. E, Austin Community Center, partial rollover added two hundred thousand in the amount of five hundred thousand. Lander County Sheriff's Department, building roof replacement and haback rollover in the amount of six hundred thousand. Lander County Sheriff's Department is requesting a training facility building in the amount of three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Sheriff's Department is requesting three fully equipped vehicles, partial rollover in the amount of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I, Austin Roden Bridge is requesting a new thirty-five hundred heavy-duty duly diesel pickup rollover in the amount of fifty-seven thousand dollars, I'll buy two for that price.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a cheap price.
Is that through the state prop? Austin Roden Bridge is requesting a new pickup in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars. Austin Roden Bridge is requesting a new snowplow in the amount of fourteen thousand dollars. Austin Roden Bridge is requesting a new loader bucket for the six forty-four J loader in the amount of twenty-four thousand dollars. M, B and M Roden Bridge, Battle Mountain Roden Bridge is requesting a new plow truck rollover in the amount of seventy thousand dollars. N, Battle Mountain Roden Bridge is requesting a new Genie Telehandler forklift in the amount of a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. Battle Mountain Senior Center is requesting a new twenty-twenty-two Ford Explorer in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars. P, Golf Course is requesting a new John Deere nine zero zero nine A Terrain Cut mower in the amount of a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Civic Center is requesting a kitchen remodel rollover, new divider curtains have been included in this, okay, in the amount of eight hundred and fifty thousand, and the Town of Austin Boundary Line rollover in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. Okay, who's gonna talk about the safety equipment in the amount of two hundred fifty-five thousand, Bert, you, Johnny?
I'll step up on this one, so this is, uh, I believe most of this is going to go to the Battle Mountain Fire Department for the new trucks to outfit them with hoses and everything else that goes with it, I know Rick has already done some price checking and pretty much has a hundred thousand of it spent already. Um, is what the commission doesn't know, is that Elko County gave Lander County a fire truck last week. It is a, an additional ladder truck, they call it a squirter, it, uh, the ladder is not. It, uh, the ladder is not for removing people like the truck that we just bought. It, it's a ladder that extends out so they can attack fires from the top. Um, as opposed to rescuing people or offloading people from a building, so it's a, but they, uh. They gave that over to us, that's, it, all thanks to Rick and his hard work with Elko. Fire Department and additional training and stuff that he's trying to get done for this. Um, so that truck's also gonna need to be outfitted, but it's a, a few hundred thousand dollar truck. At a minimum, probably five to seven hundred thousand if it were bought, new.
And they just gave it to us.
And they just gave it to us.
Our appreciation for what we did for the last two years.
Well, I think there's a good relationship there. Um, you know, there's, the, this was the city of Elko that actually gave it to us, not the, not the county.
Wasn't the library.
Um, no, we, uh. Thanks, Patsy. But it, it was, it was an awful, awful kind thing of them to do and like, say this truck is in mint condition. Uh, Rick will be back here for you guys to show you, but that's part of what some of this money's gonna be used for as well.
Can we give them a plaque or something that tells them how awesome they are?
Yes, I would, I, I don't wanna overstep. I talked to Rick and he told me feel free to, to share that for him because I didn't wanna steal his, his glory on this. But he, uh, he'll be back in front of the commission. I think we should do something in, in appreciation for.
Put the agenda so it allows us to do something?
You aren't kidding. Some, I would like to do something maybe here at the courthouse where we can, you know.
Rick or Elko?
I think for both. I really think that there should be some, some notice and appreciation for both. I know Rick and Ron and the whole, whole department here. Um, uh, uh, they're doing a whole turnaround and they're. We appreciate Elko, but without the right people on, on board right here in town, it, it's hard to get much done, so. I think both of them.
And I didn't mean to interrupt Bert, but we're gonna go over on the twenty-fourth and pick that truck up, Rick and I'll bring it home. We do have fire training here on the twenty-fifth for the, uh, of those electric cars. But after that, whoever here, we're gonna take them down and demonstrate that truck for them. It is a snorkel, exactly like you said, it's got a remote control snorkel on it, a seventy-five foot ladder. It looks brand new people and they did absolutely give it to us because they're getting a brand new one and they wanted this one to go to us. So we accepted it, we did. Where we're gonna park it. We get it, just so you'll know, because of the new building, the new platform truck will be here several weeks after. The snorkel truck comes, we will put the snorkel truck in our fire hall at this point in time. But once the new platform truck gets here, we're gonna move it to the airport. Because we have airplane wrecks, which we're gonna have, we don't have to get in there, we can park the truck and remote control the water stream from there. So you'll be, we'll have enough space here to park the number of trucks that. With the new design that, that they've come up with and I haven't seen it, but, uh. Uh, it's gonna be plenty for what we do, but we also gotta consider we, we're responsible for the airport also. So that snorkel truck will be out there. Um, and the other thing that that'll do by them giving us the second snorkel truck or ladder truck, if you wanna call it that. It's gonna drop our ISO ratings, guys, should be dramatically for the insurance is something that you may wanna look into here pretty quick. It'll drop a little with one, but when you've got a backup truck toward, it should drop it substantially. And we are taking, just so you know, we are taking the fire department, uh, the chief and his crew to lunch on the twenty-fourth when we pick it up. So we're taking care of that. Do you have any questions on any one of those trucks that I can answer?
Yeah, we got a place to park it out at the airport.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We cleaned out the fire base out there, we had, uh, three trucks in there, a sixty-two, a seventy-two and an eighty. Something, so we moved the seventy-two and the sixty-two into the airplane hangar that we have. So they're still available there to us, but the fire hall's gonna be set up specifically for aircraft. And we may even put a wall line truck out there, we did new firemen. So if they ought to report to a fire in that area, they can go there and get a truck as opposed to coming all the way into town. Any more questions, concerns? I had a concern about, uh, H, the three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, or no, no, not that one. Uh, the training facility for. Three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, we sent Anna out there. We're gonna try to clean that up for the archery, uh, club here in town. And it wasn't good enough, it was just gonna be, cost too much. I, I would entertain a new building. I mean, we have the, the funds for a new building. If this is what Ron wants, three hundred and forty-five, okay, but I would entertain a new building for training. So, if anybody.
Is it honestly something you guys need right, right now?
Uh, yes, that, I asked you a question, Art, uh, we do need a facility. We have our virtual machine set up down, as you know, at the, uh, double white, at the county bridge. We've added screens and everything to that. We need a bigger facility to hold that. Uh, that, that piece of our training equipment in. We also are putting on our own CAT three academies now here in Lander County, Battle Mountain, where we bring in other people. Uh, so without looking at a new building, and the undersheriff and Sergeant Jones are here, they can talk to you more than I can a lot of it. That was the only building we could find that the county had that would be large enough to do it, but it's gonna take a lot of work to bring it up. We didn't consider asking for a new building. But I'll go one step further and we are working on putting on our own category one. Post-certified academy here in Battle Mountain two. So what that does is that brings in people from other counties to get trained here as opposed to. Send them all the way to Carson City for sixteen or seventeen weeks. We can do a lot of that here, which is saving us some money and the other counties to boot. Cat one is still in work in progress, but.
Yeah, but the other, Ron, the other counties that use it, we don't make any money off it, so we're putting our taxpayer dollars used to benefit other counties.
Well, and that could be right. The benefit we get out of that is because they are our neighbors. Like in Austin, when we don't have any deputies there and we get a critical incident going on, Eureka County sends their deputies over a lot quicker than we can. Elko supports us here also, Humboldt County. It, and I don't know if we're charging at this point, but that's something that we could look at. But, um, that's what we're doing here. Like I said, we didn't, we didn't. We didn't even propose that because we knew it was gonna cost a lot, but if you're willing, we'll take it.
What does it cost for an annual budget for sending our officers to, um, is it CAT, because I have to explain so long, is it CAT one or the street?
Uh, Robert, quick for the sheriff's office. So for, uh, category three. Um, which we're now holding here was right around thirty thousand, that incorporated. Uh, all the fees as well as lodging and food and all that, including salaries.
And how many, how many times per year, how many do we send a year?
Um, well, we got to the point because it was so hard to send someone to a CAT three, we just had to send everybody to CAT one. Because of that. So with that, our cost on average, um, that I was working out in a contract with each employee was about eighty-five thousand. Per employee.
For CAT one?
For a CAT one. That was salary and wages and attending the training and.
And how long can you hold a deputy in a jail before you, you send him?
Um, well, we used to have to send him within one year to the CAT one. Now that we do our own CAT three, that gives us leeway until they, uh, wanna transfer to the street before you have to send him to CAT one.
If you have that much cost in making a deputy to where he's certified legal to operate. Is there anything contractually that keeps him, I mean, what's to prevent him from this county paying that and then just up and moving off and they're certified?
They used to do that and we actually do a three-year contract with, with an employee. That, um, is pro- is prorated over three years, so if they leave prior to the three years, other than termination. Uh, it's prorated and they have to pay back.
You think three years is long enough when you have that kind of a cost associated?
You know, it has been because we haven't lost a lot of people and of course we hire good people.
I wouldn't think so. I mean, the sheriff's department's pretty well taken care of.
Absolutely.
That's why we changed the insurance so we could keep people. That's paying off now.
I, I mean, and, and like the sheriff said, in, in the long run, we're not gonna make. Really any money from other jurisdictions coming in, but we are saving a ton from us.
Yes.
Sending people over to Carson City.
So you guys really wanna spend three hundred fifty thousand on that old building or you wanna consider?
Well, that, that was our first op- well, our first option. I mean, we can certainly do a lot more if we had a, a, another structure that we could design. And it's still not gonna be very complicated, but we could potentially put in or talk about putting in, um. A, a couple of small quarters if we have any, people coming from, let's say, Eureka or something, and then we could charge for that as well. Which would be, um, much more cost effective for them than to go to Carson City.
We don't have any other county buildings.
We haven't, we haven't entertained that, so we would need the county's engineer to kind of give us an idea of what that would be.
Ron will reuse a horseshoe five different times on five different things if he can. I know how he is with money.
You calling me chief?
No, no, I'm, I'm calling you creative. And I appreciate you not wanting to spend millions of dollars on a building, but, well, it's a soft heart.
But is it, um, is it something like a big metal building?
That's what I'm thinking.
Big metal building, which is not nearly as expensive as if you're having a built, building like this. Is that something in a way that would be, um, feasible to do a metal building and do everything that you guys need to do in it?
Yeah, we don't, we don't need anything fancy. A metal building with insulation in the interior walls is all we need.
Well, this isn't the final budget, so they have time if they wanna make some adjustments to do so.
I'm just, I'm just looking at spending that kind of, that amount of money on a training facility. Elko, do they have one? Winemuck, do they have one? The Lander County, we need one? I just, I, I, I'm just, with as many deputies that we have, it's like, really we're gonna spend that kind of money to put in the training facility? I'm just, I'm not seeing it.
Well, I.
I'm just putting it out there.
I, I understand your concern and I would say, yeah, training facility is important because of this, we've, we've grown. And the sheriff's office, the size of it hasn't. When we did the stucco, I wanted to extend that west wall out sixty feet so that we would have training. That didn't get, get done, but. We want our people trained and.
Absolutely, but I'm just saying, it's like, why, why, I mean, it's, it was so important. I'm just looking at neighboring counties, why doesn't Elko have one? What's that?
Elko PD has it.
They do have one?
They have a training facility.
Thanks, Ron.
But it's also, I think that, like, sending your officers on, on that one too.
Just so we're clear, Elko does a category three academy, not one.
Okay, so what we're talking about putting in is, is for category one?
One and three.
One and three. And category one is what you call post, is that what?
It's a street level certification, where your street officer's category three.
Is that what somebody gets when they go to post?
Yes.
It is. So we would no longer have to send them to post, we can do it right here.
We do it ourselves.
That makes sense.
You'd say that was eighty thousand?
Yeah, exactly.
For deputies, for deputies, for deputy chief are here almost there.
So you're, so we're not required to send them to Carson City.
No, we're, we're required by statute to send them to a post-certified academy. And, um.
So we become our own post-certified academy?
Yes.
Why couldn't we charge other, why couldn't we bring other people in and charge them to provide that service? Especially with poster, people in Elko could come over, drive home every night, rather than being the Carson and having to stay the full time. You know, only coming home on weekends or something. I'm just putting it out there.
We, we certainly could. Where, where Carson City, um, has an advantage for, um, agencies and the rules. Is Carson City has a state property where they can house, um, incoming cad- uh, cadets. And they're not charging them right now.
What? Oh, I see.
For that housing.
For the housing, but I'm saying for like Elko, Winemuck, Eureka, well, Elko and Winemuck anyway, I mean, it could be something. I mean, if I, if I were, I would like to say, yeah, I'll drive back and forth.
Yeah, absolutely.
As opposed to going to Carson and staying for however long.
Absolutely, and in fact, we have, we've had quite a few from Humboldt over here for our category three academy and that's exactly what they do.
That makes sense. If we could make it financially pay for it, so that would be even better, but.
But also the benefit, I think, is when you have, um, law enforcement officers who stay as long as these guys have. And they will put the package together where you usually don't get them.
True.
That stay that many years, have, that, um, the amount of training they do to even put the program on. I think that's what, the blessing with these guys, that they've been here forever and have a boatload of training, so they have the ability to put those programs on.
Okay, and it makes a little bit more sense to do so.
My, my final comment on your training center would be, will be this. If you want that building out there. Okay, but if you would consider looking into. Uh, you know, Kathy said a, a steel building. I, I said the same thing. Great big pole building. And design the inside like you want, make as much space as you want and. But if you want that, I, I agree with the training center, I think it's important. I've been through training, I have seen how important training is. Uh, that's just my, my comment. Uh, we have money now, spend Lander County tax money. In Lander County, for Lander County.
The three hundred and forty-five thousand, Robert, so that brings that building up to spec of what you would need for a training facility?
Not completely. That, that amount of money would, uh, replace the roof and entire side of the building. One side of the building, uh, some electrical, some plumbing, um, and some insulation.
Okay.
So we would still have a lot of work to do.
Technical side of stuff to put in.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, and then how many square foot is that building?
It's a hundred and twenty-two by fifty or by thirty.
So a hundred and twenty-two.
By thirty.
By thirty, so thirty, roughly thirty some pounds per feet? And then if you, like, Art's proposing building a building, how big would that building need to be? Are you talking similar size structure?
I, I, I would think it'd be similar size structure. That'll get us the simulator, the full simulator in it as well as classroom and, and, um, facilities.
Well, I, I would, I would think that building, a new building would be free, I mean.
Yeah, I, you'd be better off building a, building a new building.
We'll, we'll certainly go out and, and based on what the commission's kind of pushing at. We'll certainly go out and, um, and get with Bert to get with our, with the county's engineer, so we can get a price.
I mean, we're right here next year.
I would like to see what we could do to promote it to neighboring counties.
Absolutely.
I mean, honestly, I, I think, I just think it's a, another avenue to where we could recoup some of that cost.
Just, just to be fair and be clear, I don't ever foresee us paying for the building, for, paying for itself, so to speak.
Yeah, I'm not saying.
Certain offset the cost.
Yeah, offset the cost, that's all I'm saying. I'm not saying it's gonna be a break, definitely, I mean, it's something, you know.
Considering what we pay for our own officers to go and the salary and wages and time, it, it absolutely will help.
Are we, are we clear as mud on the training facility?
We, we'll get, we'll get the county engineer to come back.
Yeah, yeah, there's a go.
One more thing is, is if we're looking at possibly doing a new fire hall, could it be incorporated into that? Into the fire hall, to where you guys have a training facility as part of that or not?
But we will look at, instead of at the airport, we can look to the, uh. Side of the sheriff's office where the justice court was originally planned to be.
Than the airport.
Yeah, it would, it would be, absolutely.
I'm taking a hundred by, a hundred by fifty would probably be a better choice for a building, you'd have more room. Thirty's pretty narrow.
Yeah, okay, we'll, we'll take a look at it and see.
Big doors, small door. Whatever you guys want, shower facility, workout room, heavy bag.
That's already included in there.
Okay, we've had plenty of discussion on, uh, the O two nine fund.
Hey, Robert, I, I have a question on F and I saw questions, Art. Um, on the, on the roof replacement and the HVAC, how, how old is our roof or HVAC on that, on that building now?
Twenty-three years.
Is it really?
We, last year, last year we budgeted, um, and you approved the six hundred thousand for the roof. However, between then and now, the HVAC in the admin section started to fail and we have some problems and they had to manufacture some parts for it. So I'm gonna try and replace that HVAC at the same time, so we can replace a roof and then replace an HVAC.
What kind of roofs on that? Is that, is that one of those rubberized roofs?
Yes.
That's pretty good, twenty-three years on one of those.
Yeah, I mean, we, um, last year we patched it, so.
We, we have equipment that's outdated, the HAVAC's outdated and you had to get a part manufactured for it.
Yes.
It was outdated when they built the building. Well, you know, that's what happened to the school district too, those, the, the, the products that they use were expired.
Yeah, so was ours.
Yeah, well, the things you learn with, uh, contractors.
And then on item P, golf course, uh, a John Deere, uh, terrain cut mower for a hundred and ten thousand dollars, that must be one hell of a bore.
Is that air conditioned?
It should have a cabinet, you know, um. James got me a price on this and he sent me pictures of the other one where it's starting to rust and stuff. He thinks it's, it's a matter of time before the, the one we presently have is gonna go, um. That's an expensive price. It's just a lawnmower, yes, yes. And it wasn't very long before we got the price that it was eighty thousand dollars.
What would it cost to refurbish the one you got?
Well, from some of the pictures and what I've saw of it, it, it's just starting to rust and it's gonna be a complete rebuild, so I'm, I'm assuming it's gonna be pretty close to the same price. But We might be able to get another year out of it. We might not, and in another year, what's the price gonna be then?
Yeah, the price would be a hundred and thirty thousand.
Yeah, I'm, I'm That's why I said, well, we'll bring it to you and let you guys decide.
Okay, and then on Q civic centers, the kitchen remodel, so eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to remodel that kitchen?
So you guys had approved the eight hundred thousand last year and then you also approved fifty thousand for new curtain dividers, but we just put them together in one project this year, but they're both rollovers.
So how do we um
Are we talking new appliances, everything in that amount there?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Oh, here comes risk.
Yeah.
That's one hell of a kitchen.
Okay, Rita Rogers, Director of the Civic Center.
That's her name.
So, um, I've been in there now for six years and years ago I was in there. We have a lot of big events that are in there and this kitchen is tiny. Um, and we just, we really need to expand it. And I've gone over everything of how to expand it. We have two bathrooms in the middle that can get out of there now. We can use that because we have the big bathroom facilities, but I want
Would it, would it expand towards the hospital that way?
It, yeah, it'll just be in the same building, but it'll just take up a piece there.
So
But we have a storage area. All of you have been there where we've had events where we set tables up for a bar. That wall right there is a storage and I wanna take part of that and turn that into the actual bar area. We'll put a hole in that wall. A deal that'll go up and down. They can serve drinks out this way. When they're done, lock her up and we don't have to worry about That with alcohol and stuff. Gives us more room in the building for these events, but it also will give us a good access to a kitchen. I mean, I, I do a sit-down for three hundred people for our basketball and I'm here to tell you, it's bad, you know, trying to go in and out.
I get it, thank you.
And then stuff, but we really need, but those divider curtains, we really need those too. Mine are rusty and I can't hardly pull them in and out. Um, yeah, we really need an overhaul of the Civic Center.
So, yeah, just for clarification, it won't be expanding the building?
No.
It, it'll just be uh removing the wall inside towards the library.
It's just internal.
Well, I'm just trying to, I mean, maybe it's just inflation that I'm seeing, man, it just, I can't believe some of these
Oh, it's terrible. It is terrible.
It's ridiculous. It's horrible.
And it might not be like that, but we wanna make the comparison because of cost. With the cost going up, our asphalt that we just finally wanted to do the civic center with, we hit that because we know what asphalt's doing right now and so, you know.
Thank you.
All right, there's all
Any more questions about all this stuff? Oh, boy. What's the total, Lincoln?
Well, I don't know if you guys are approving the training facility or not approving it or if we're gonna put a price on something. I don't know what to do.
We don't either.
Do you wanna take it off and then bring it back to, for the tentative or?
Let's leave it the way it is.
Do what that?
Let's leave it the way it is and if they come back and we wanna change one item later, we will.
That'll make it easier.
So the way it is, it's eleven million, seven hundred and two thousand.
Do you remember the first meeting I tried to read those checks and you said, what's the matter? Can't you read those checks? And I said, no, I just can't read that amount of money. Put my signature on there. You said, get used to it. Yeah. Man, eleven million plus. Okay, we need a motion on uh Building and Equipment Fixed Assets Fund O two-nine, A through R, and everybody knows the concerns that we've had. Maybe have some changes when we meet again.
All right, I'll make a motion, rent, build, and equipment fixed assets fund O two-nine.
A through R.
I through R.
Can they mount?
Can they mount? I have eleven million, nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand, thirty-one.
No, eleven million, seven hundred and two thousand.
Well, that enough.
We need a second?
Second?
Oh, awesome. Okay, JR. Kathy made the
No.
Motion? JR seconded. All in favor?
And, and I do wanna push
Something out for the community because I know that a lot of people think that this county commission's spending money hand over fist and so on and so forth, but A lot of these things, if, if like for the mower example, if it's going well this year and we can, we nurse things through, but it's nice to have it in the budget for when things go bad.
Yeah.
Yes, it's, it's not that all that money's gonna be spent and, you know, like, if we budgeted fifty million last year, we only spent ten or something roughly. Um, so these numbers here don't reflect our spending.
And they need to see that where they says rolled over, rolled over, rolled over. That means we never, we didn't spend it from last year, so
That's how you protect
Well, that's why I wanted to make sure the county understood that. It's just part of earmarking the money to where it somewhat protects that money.
Right.
Somebody coming in and saying, give it to us.
Give me your go. Okay, number eight, discussion possible action regarding fund two twenty-six, water capital request. Well, six booster pump and piping and valving rollover in the amount of two hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty. B, water treatment plant, well six, rollover in the amount of two million, five hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred dollars. C, I eighty portable main line crossing in the amount of one million, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. D, water and sewer master plan update in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars. E, public works infrastructure amount fifty thousand dollars. And That's all from the marine.
So we're doing it again, sir?
So the public works infrastructure map, I mean, is that the map that Aaron was talking about where it's everything's like uh Like based off like uh What's the word for um
All our, all the piping, all the, everything should be on there that's mapped out where you ought to be able to go look at the map, so you should have a valve here, you should have a A manhole here. It should be
About a proven valuable for me.
Yes, and we have an old one. It's, it's real old. And it don't have a lot of the updates on it and It's been several years since we've had one.
And then the I eighty potable main line crossing in the amount, so that, exactly where, where's that, where's that, where's that proposed? Is it down here going over towards the sewer plant?
Yeah, it'll be over like where this new uh forest mains going in. It'll be beside it or
So I have a question on the um The I eighty Potable main line crossing. Um, didn't we just approve some of that in fifty-five?
No, that was the I eighty sound wall.
The I eighty?
Sound wall.
Downed wall?
Sound wall.
Oh, no, no, I, I remember the sound wall separate, but mine says I eighty potable main line crossing. In my fifty-five capital improvement project.
In the fifty-five?
Yeah.
I screwed this up.
Anyway, that's how it's identified, so that's what I thought it was.
I don't see it.
I don't see it. I'm just seeing a sound wall.
This is from the airport frontage road to meal show. Is the one on here a different one?
That's a different one.
Oh, yeah, that's different.
It's just, it's called the same.
What?
Okay.
Which one are you referring to, Patsy on CCP?
Um, the one, the one that I'm looking at is the fifty-five budget. The CCP budget and it's, shoot, it's right towards the end, right before you get to O twenty-nine.
Number K?
No, she, she said it was
K is the sound wall.
But it says I eighty potable main line crossing.
Not on mine.
It says I eighty sound wall rollover in the amount of three hundred thousand.
Are you looking in backup or on the agenda?
She's looking in the backup.
I'm looking at the backup. Here. I eighty. Yeah, but I'm looking here, I eighty potable main line crossing and that was in fifty-five.
It doesn't belong there.
That's
It doesn't belong there?
From the well down to the airport, we're gonna Yes, Austin, yes, yes.
It's to run water underneath the freeway.
Yes, it even says Austin.
It took me a minute, sorry.
Maybe that's it. Maybe it's just, maybe it's in fifty-five instead of twenty-nine, maybe?
I, his backup was all together for his capital improvement project, so the CCP and the water and sewer were all together, so that's why it's in there. His justification sheet.
Okay, but I, but it wasn't approved on the, on the fifty-five.
No, no, that's what the
Thank you, 'cause I had the same thing. Got it. Okay, that was my question.
It says two two-six on the top of it.
Okay, as long as it's not, it's okay.
So is that my fault?
And where's this, this potable water main line that's gonna go down there, it's down at that
At the other exit?
At the off ramp?
Yeah.
Down there.
We already have the line there. We just need to extend it out now and cross
Right, for the sewer line?
We're doing the sewer and now we're gonna do a water line too.
Right.
So, so the purpose for the water line down there is that's the only place we have a sixteen inch or eighteen inch main. Uh, so we can shoot that across a freeway and access to where potentially our rail spur will go later. We have water on that side of the, on that side of the freeway already, but it's um in much smaller lines and can never provide the amount of water we need over there.
Any more questions? Concerns? I wanna make a motion. Oh, that's not even
Four million, forty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty.
Eight fifty?
Four million, forty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty.
I'll make a motion that we approve uh fund two twenty-six water capital request in the amount of four million, forty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Ryan made the motion. Kathy seconded. Any more questions, concerns? All in favor? Uh, passing unanimously. Number nine, discussion possible action regarding fund two thirty-six sewer capital request. New sewer lift station and eight inch forest main partial rollover added. Uh, one million, ninety-five thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars. Uh, it's rollover in the amount of two million, two hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars for the total amount. And where are you gonna put this lift station?
It's already out there. Um, the bare bones, and it's right out there by the Allen Road.
Okay.
No questions?
Any question, concerns? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve uh fund two thirty-six sewer capital request in the amount of two million, two hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars.
I'll second.
Ryan made the motion. Kathy seconded. No more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Passing unanimously. Number ten, discussion of possible action regarding fund three eight zero airport capital improvement. Austin General Engineering Service in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Austin Airport Runway nineteen special approach rollover in the amount of six-four thousand, seven hundred and forty. C, Austin Airport rehab the apron and taxiway. B, bidding and construction in the amount of one million, nine hundred and eighty thousand. D, Battle Mountain General Engineering Services in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. E, Battle Mountain Construction Taxi Lanes Design, Bidding and Construction rollover in the amount of five hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy Dollars. Battle Mountain Airport install new runway four dash two-two P A P I S And riles and replace beacon and tower design only in the amount of two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
So F. So are these airports, are these cost share? Well, some of them will be. The, the Pappy's on F is what the Pappy's are, is number of the lights when a, when a pilot is approaching a runway, there were the lights and
Oh, you have to have those.
Okay, um, and for example, like Austin, I think the last time that runway was touched was in two thousand and one. So these are, we are gonna continue pursuing grants, but we don't currently have any grants for these.
For not for any of these?
No, I believe they're, let me
We do for the rollovers.
For the rollovers, we do.
But not the special approach. That one, the FA wouldn't
The, the special approach was just found when they come, they come out and they do a, they run through your whole airport and, you know, they fly in, they check everything when, when they call in, they check your Pappy's, they check everything when they come through. That was found when they did the, the overview of the airport.
So what's a special approach?
Special approaches are if you have, if you have somebody call in and they need to, and say the wind is off or something is, is changed, then you need a special approach runway that Um, right now, we don't have approved wind data to allow people to approach on these other runways. We may have cross-section runways, but they aren't approved. So we want, we wanna make sure we continue pursuing that data to allow these special approaches.
For the two new projects, David did um give me those match amounts, so the Austin one, the one in green, uh, it'd be a hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollar match for the county And then the Battle Mountain one would be a fifteen thousand dollar match.
And this is where David and um, they have done such a great job for us. You see the grants and the matches. Um, on this upcoming agenda, there's one, I think it's like thirty-eight or forty thousand dollars that we're gonna match and, and our return is hundreds of thousands of dollars on our, just our match. So they've done a terrific job of getting us our money back.
Any more questions? Okay, we need a motion? And total. How much is it total?
Two million, eight hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars.
I don't foresee us accomplishing all this, but we need to have it, especially for the grant, right? I'll make a motion that we fund, uh, for fund three eighty airport capital improvements in the amount of two million, eight hundred and seventy thousand and seven hundred and ten dollars.
All? Kathy's been a second. Ryan made the motion. Kathy seconded. Any more questions, concerns? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll take a ten minute break.
Conference will now be recorded. Unmuted.
All right.
All right.
Okay. Number eleven. Discussion for possible action regarding capital funds O one seven, O three one, O five six and O five seven requests. Fund zero three one wildlife enhancement rollover in the amounts of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. B, fund O five six for fixed assets in the amount of one hundred thousand. C, fund O five six for emergency maintenance of two hundred and fifty thousand. D, O five seven for fixed assets in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars.
So the fund fifty-six and fifty-seven, they're just like our emergency funds. We always budget these amounts in there just to have in case.
Right. Now the, on A, that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was assigned for Burt to use on projects, correct?
Yes, for wildlife enhancement, Landor County. To date, we, I think we've spent six thousand dollars out of that and that is for uh an assessment on some property That we're working with uh, with Endow on. So that's all we've spent to date out of that, but we're starting to find More uses for it as we venture into, I'm trying to leverage this is what I'm trying to do. So we aren't just spending our money, but trying to get Endow and BLM and other people to partner And leverage this money to make more out of it.
Anybody have questions on how this money's being used?
What is the fifty-seven for the fixed assets?
That's just our reserve fund. We usually don't spend that, anything out of that money. We just budget it in case we have an emergency come up and we need to find money somewhere.
It's good to ask that question 'cause then the public wants to Information for them.
But the same thing for fifty-six too.
Yeah, we, we tend to use the emergency maintenance a little bit, but fifty-seven, not so much. We usually don't use anything out of there.
I'll entertain a motion on uh eleven? I propose funds of capital funds of Oh Seventeen, Oh Three One, Oh Fifty-Six, Oh Fifty-Seven Request.
What's the total?
Total amount.
Eight hundred thousand.
Eight hundred thousand.
Eight hundred thousand.
I'll second.
J R made the motion, Kathy seconded. Any more comments, questions, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Passing unanimously. Okay, Fiscal Officer, Discussion Possible Action, Approve, Disapprove, A Cost of Living Increase to All County Employees in a percentage to be determined upon union negotiations. B, Discussion and Possible Action, Approve, Disapprove, Up to an Eight Percent Increase on All Health Benefits.
Um, so on the cost of living on the payroll sheets, you'll see that we did four percent on there, but I'm, I'm asking that you only approve three percent. And then we did the, um, up to eight percent increase on the health benefits. That is just a rough number from Tim the Anthem came back with, but he's still in negotiation with them, so we don't really know what the increase is gonna be yet. Um, the dental was a little bit more. It was about a thirteen point four percent increase, um, but the medical was at eight. But he's still negotiating, so that's the max that we would have. But we did budget for the full eight, just in case.
Did he say what the, what the, uh, why the percent increase, what were they, what were they allocating to?
Um, well, I think the rise of insurance costs is just going up in general and then, uh, probably some large claims that we had. But he said our standing was pretty good and he thinks he can get it lower, but that's just what, we wanted to budget for the max, just in case.
I do believe, Brian, also that they're covering some additional medications that weren't covered before, that the one-time cost of some of these medications are up to a million dollars for one treatment. And with them being covered by law, we don't, don't have a choice that, they're, they're looking at increases of up to even fourteen percent.
Insurance, man.
Okay, number twelve, we'll, uh, do A, we need a motion on A and B.
So we're, so you're asking that we approve three, three percent on the cost of living?
Okay.
And then up to eight percent on that? Is there a chance that people are over eight percent?
No, that was their high that they came in and then Tim does his negotiating and then he'll give us a final.
So they wanna move that to fourteen?
No.
No. No, it's gonna come under.
It's not gonna go over eight percent. That's, that Anthem comes in at their high. They, uh, they say, okay, we, we're gonna increase your insurance by eight percent, and then Tim negotiates with them. And he, there's times where he's gotten a no increase. There's times where he's only gotten a two percent.
Right, but I thought you just said it could be as high as fourteen percent.
That was only on the dental.
On the dental.
Oh, the dental, I missed that part.
Yeah.
Okay, got it, thank you.
So is the three percent, is that what was agreed on in the union negotiations?
We can't really discuss the union negotiations yet. It's, we just haven't, it's not finalized.
So I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that we improve a three percent cost of living increase to all county employees and that we approve up to an increase on health care.
Okay, Brian made the motion, J R seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passing unanimously. Number thirteen, Under Department Information and Requests, Number Thirteen Commission's Discussion and Possible Action, There Are No Changes to Operation. We don't need a motion or anything.
Yes.
We have to approve the budget.
You have to approve the budget.
There's just no increase.
Without any increased operation.
Well, the way Liz orders food, you might change that.
Hey, no, it's very good. You go, girl.
We increased two of the lines, but we decreased another, so they offset each other. So total, there's no increase to the operational budget.
I need a motion for thirteen.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the current budget with no changes to the operations.
You second. Kathy made the motion, J R seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Clerk. Discussion Possible Action, There Is An Increase In Operations By Thirty-five Hundred Dollars. Hi, Molly.
Hello. How are you guys?
Good.
Okay, so in my budget, my elections went up a little bit due to some of the annual costs that came with E S N S, and then the ballot stock had an increase and postage has increased. I moved some of my line items around, decreased some, so it equaled only to about thirty-five hundred in the election line.
Postage is supposed to even go up higher. Crazy.
I like your curb pageant, Brian.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve the clerk's budget for an increase of thirty-five hundred dollars.
Okay, Brian made the motion, J R seconded. Any questions, concerns, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passing unanimously. Number fifteen, Treasurer, There Are No Changes To The Operations. Juicy.
Mine's stays the same.
Haven't seen any, like, increase in costs, huh?
No.
You got too much money last time, huh?
Yep.
Mine's the best.
Just, are you still short an employee?
Um.
You're not fully staffed.
Are you fully staffed now?
Yes.
No, you still have.
I have one opening spot.
Then you're not fully staffed.
I have four positions, but I have three, so I'm not fully staffed. I have one open position.
Okay, so you're not fully staffed. That was my question.
Yes, one open position.
Okay, but your budget includes it for that person, right? Got it.
Yes, yes.
Need a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the treasurer's budget. I'll second it.
With no changes.
Brian made the motion, J R seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Everybody, it's unanimous. We go with sixteen, County Manager. Discussion and Possible Action, There Is An Increase To Operations By Fifty-five Thousand Nine Hundred Dollars For Earth.
Um, so we removed the, um, the, oh my gosh, what is it? The doctor that is our health board doctor, what's, what's?
Oh, Doctor Ellis.
So we moved him to the health nurse budget, and then, um, we did add a grant writing line. So they kind of offset each other a little bit there, and we, um, increased the lobbyist line a little bit as well.
So the grant. Sorry. Go ahead. The grant writer, the cost for the grant writers, um, is that just a part, is that something we just use them when we need them, or is that, how does that work?
So they bill us off of the advance submitted. So for every three advance submitted, I think we're paying, um, seventy-five hundred. And when we start seeing a return on that, I think so I'll be able to report back to you guys and show that it's a, it was a beneficial move, but. It's not a bad price.
No, I mean, I, uh.
And, and this grant writer isn't taking, they are not writing themselves into the grant, because a lot of times that will get grants denied as well.
That's hard, though.
Yes. So, so we, we chose not to go down that road just because we have a tough enough time getting approved for a grant with our financial standing. So, so where does that fifty-five thousand nine hundred increase come from? The lobbyist, grant writer?
The grant writer and the lobbyist, but it's only a fifty-five thousand nine hundred increase because we moved the health, uh, doctor to the, yes.
So are we looking at any major furniture or anything this year?
I apologize.
Furniture? Are you looking at any major furniture this year?
Furniture?
Furniture.
Now my chair's comfortable.
It's three thousand dollars for furniture.
No, that's just minor equipment and furniture. It's not like any big furniture.
I've never, I've never, I don't know.
Well, that's what I'm asking. Are you planning on buying anything? That's what I was asking.
Well, just, that's, that's a computer if one, we have to have replace a computer or something.
No, I've never, uh, I've never adjusted any of them lines, so I don't. Yeah, you can knock that out there. I don't, it doesn't matter.
Most departments have it, but, um, if you.
So all of our adverti-, not all of our advertising, the advertising that comes out of your budget is.
I have a line item for that.
Right, is it extra things that we ask for, like, let's publish that resolution or something?
A newspaper.
Because the clerk does most of our advertising, right?
No, but I have, I have a line item in my budget for advertising, I'm not sure.
Well, I mean, that's what I'm asking. I mean, you have a line item, but it's like.
If she wants to know what you're using.
Fifteen thousand dollars.
I use that for all of the advertising, for all of the jobs.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I was asking. What comes out of it?
That's me.
That's her area. Okay, and that's, that's a good amount, you're okay?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Okay, any more questions on number sixteen? I need a motion. I'll make a motion to uh, increase the operations of the county manager to fifty-five thousand nine hundred dollars.
I'll second the motion.
For a total?
For a total of?
So you're.
You can just say approve.
You make the motion to approve the budget with
An increase.
a fifty-five thousand nine hundred dollar increase in operations.
Okay. Wait a second.
Right, okay. J R made the motion, Brian seconded.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Seventeen, Assessor. Discussion and Possible Action, There Is An Increase To Operations By Eight Thousand Three Hundred Dollars.
Hi, Laura.
Hey, how are you?
Morning, afternoon, morning.
So some things went up, some things went down. Uh, probably the biggest jump was, uh, service and supplies went up fifteen hundred. Telephone and fax went up from seventeen hundred to five thousand. Um, we have two iPads now that have to have the data that they are, will be using in the field, so they can access, uh, our new camera system and, uh, pictometry. And so those have to have data throughout the field. They also use them for, um, uh, GPS and everything, so that kind of made a bit of a jump. I did not pretty much, uh, I lowered computer services a little bit, raised my professional services, because we are going forward. We've got another person on board to do some consulting to get us into our new system, so, um, but I didn't add, just not many changes, pretty minor.
Are you, do you have three vacancies in your office?
Yes, I do.
Three? Any more questions? I want to entertain a motion on number seventeen.
I make a motion that we approve the assessor's budget with the three, uh, eight thousand three hundred dollar, um, operations increase.
Kathy made the motion, J R seconded. Any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passing unanimously. Finance. Discussion Possible Action, There Is An Increase To Operations Six Hundred Fifty Dollars.
So I increased a few lines, the printing, um, we're having to get, uh, most of our ten ninety-nines and W two forms from Tyler now. We used to get them off of Quill, but they don't carry them anymore, and Tyler is a lot more expensive. Um, and then the telephone and fax, uh, we're seeing an increase in most departments for that. And then the travel and training I increased, but then I decreased the professional services to try and offset some of those costs.
Any more questions?
Uh, just a quick one under professional services. You do the audit under, that comes under this?
No, the, um, audit and budget is budgeted separately.
Okay.
The professional services was for, um, Kettington and Christiansen, the auditors that have been helping Juicy and I, which we, I, I haven't been using them near as much, so I, I thought it was okay to de- decrease that a little bit. And then Tom Gransberry from the Department of Taxation that's been helping me, that's where
Okay.
that comes out of.
Thank you.
Under the, yeah, so we're discussing the entire budget right, right now, personnel, everything?
Mm-hmm.
What is, so under the fiscal officer, we have that, but then it's underlying to be the accountant. Is that split hats?
No.
Who's, who's?
That's payroll.
That's payroll, okay. No questions? I'll make a motion that we approve the finance department's budget with an increase of six hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll second it. Brian made the motion, J R seconded. Any more questions? Concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passing unanimously. Nineteen, Building and Planning, Discussion and Possible Action, There Are No Changes.
So I do need to, um, clarify a couple things. So the rec center has two positions that aren't being utilized right now, so we're gonna remove those two positions, but it's not reflected that way in your backup, because this is something that we just kind of decided before the meeting, so we're gonna ask for another, um, assistant to the building official in the building and planning budget. So we asked that we move one of those positions out of the rec center, put it into the building department.
So we have two vacancies in the rec center, so you're asking to take one and move it to an assistant under the building?
Yes. But it's not on, it's not reflected.
Not reflected that in here.
We can do that in the final budget.
So, yeah, I can show you all those numbers at the, uh, to me approve the tentative.
And then, so the assistant that we put under Anna Whipple, that, that employee's name, what would that employee's duties be as the assistant?
Um, I'm not sure, and I, I don't have any numbers.
I, I will answer to that. Um, so the reason that, that I would like to do this is because if we're gonna, if we're gonna continue with our building department, we need to do it right or not do it at all, and we're right in the middle, middle groove of that right now. Anna's plate is loaded with the maintenance of buildings that sometimes gets left behind, or the, the showing for the constituents of the county by not being able to make it in time to, to do other things that she has obligated. So, um, Anna's been going to a bunch of trainings. She's been down in Vegas and all over trying to get her building official certificates and, and come up to a standard of, of a true building official and have a true building department. I don't want that knowledge to, if Anna were to leave, I don't want that to all be dead knowledge. I would like somebody to be, you know, getting some institutional knowledge and learning on the job as we go, and, uh, and also fulfilling some of them other roles as far as the building maintenance and other things throughout the county. So this, this position would be twofold. They would, they would be doing a lot more of the, the laws and ends and the small checks that Anna could get away with, and so she can put her focus on bigger things.
Well, actually, we always used to have two. You started as the second, right?
We had two and a half.
Two and a half, okay. So, yeah, I can see where you're probably beside yourself.
And then what?
With two of you, okay. Well, with that, I will.
Hold on, one more question. And then what position are we losing at the rec center?
These are positions that were budgeted that were never, that have never been filled. So we've never, we've never filled these positions at the rec center.
I'll make a motion, we approve the building and planning, um, budget for sixty-three thousand five hundred, and the other position we'll take care of in the final fax review.
Tentative. The tentative budget, I'll have it in the tentative.
Okay.
I'll second.
Kathy made the motion, Kathy seconded. Any more comments, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passing unanimously. Twenty-one, Recorder. Discussion Possible Action.
That's my building maintenance.
Oh, building maintenance.
You guys should do this one for, for building planning.
An increase by two thousand dollars.
I upped the, upped it to two thousand, because there's three vehicles in my department, and the two are older and tires and things are going wrong, and I just need a little bit of cash.
It's the repair and maintenance line that was increased.
Okay, I will make a motion that we approve building maintenance versus building and planning, um, for their operation for five hundred and eleven thousand. Okay, I will make a motion that we approve building maintenance versus building and planning for their operation for five hundred and eleven thousand.
I'll second.
Kathy made the motion, Kathy seconded it, any more questions, concerns?
That's including the personnel, right?
All of them.
Okay, it's including the personnel, cause the five hundred and eleven's just operational, so I just wanted to make that clear, okay.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, recorder, discussion and possible action, there is no increase to op, there is an increase to operations twenty-five hundred dollars. Afternoon Leslie.
Afternoon everybody.
So are we still advertising for the relief in Austin?
Yes, we are, we are.
It's basically out until Phil.
He just stands still.
I got an application today, I was gonna give to you later, but I haven't had any, anything. And I've talked to Gail frequently about it, if she'd heard anything or whatever.
It's a tough one.
We haven't had a lot of, we remind them every six months or so that we're still looking, but we haven't had any.
It's an ongoing one, so we can, because there aren't any signs up in Austin at all.
The last one I posted was open until Phil.
I'm sorry?
The last advertisement I did was open until Phil, they should still have it.
Yeah, but I'm saying we don't have any signs up anywhere in Austin.
She should, she should still have it.
If you don't.
Unless she yanked it, thinking it closed.
We've talked, she knows it's still open, so if we need to repost, we'll repost signs, but.
It's just like the Janitor one, that one's open.
You got an application for that one too, I mean, hey.
It's been a very fruitful day.
Is that a question in Austin?
No, what'd she say?
I said that we do have a posting.
They do have.
They have, do have postings.
Okay, well, I was looking at the post office and there was nothing up there, so if they're, if they're all in the courthouse, that doesn't help sometimes, thank you.
I don't know, I don't know, don't know what to say. We're look, we're still looking though, we still have it open for someone who might be interested, that might be interested. I'm just increasing my postage line a little bit and we absorb the internet fees per department now. And so I just upped my telephone and fax line so that I could meet that monthly fee that I never budgeted for before, cause we didn't have it until now. And that's it, everything else is good.
We need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the recorder's budget with an increase of twenty-five hundred dollars for operations.
All in favor? Brian seconded it.
Yeah.
Kathy made the motion, JR seconded it, any more questions, concerns, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Come on up sheriff. There is an increase to the sheriff's operation by one hundred and forty-nine thousand two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars.
We gotta negotiate this guys.
I think you can use that, I'd wish you six times.
Most of this increase.
Geez, Robert, throw me right under the bus. Do you wanna read the capital outlay request as well, Bart?
Yeah, okay, capital outlay request, and this is why Ron's asking for more money. Repair and reinstall Tonabo radio repeater rollover amount eight thousand. B, Battle Mountain Water Tower Shelter Project Partial Rollover Add Ten Thousand Amount Forty Thousand. C, ASA Firewall Replacement Rollover Amount Ten Thousand. D, Less Than Lethal Pro- Program Project Partial Rollover Five Thousand Amount Eighteen Thousand. E, Radio Microwave Replacement Project Amount Sixty Thousand. F, Nine One One Communications Position Replacement Project Hundred and Ninety Three Thousand Dollars.
So I just wanna clarify, the increase to operations does not include these capital requests, those are separate.
Yeah, boy oh boy.
Oh, separate to the one forty minutes.
Yes, operations, just the operational, the capital outlays are separate.
So if, if you turn to our backup on page eight of our backup, it shows in red what the increases are. Can I just run through those?
Yeah, please.
So we, we've got some minor increases to the corner expense, gas and oil, that's fuel for patrol vehicles and so forth. Skip the maintenance and we'll go with that last. The telephone and fax, we've seen a marked increase in that, but a small increase in that for telephone and fax. And we were asked to insert a LPSI line into our budget, and the backups in there. That is, that covers for the, the LPSI committee for the county. And I can have the, the chairwoman here tomorrow, if you'd like, for more explanation.
Why are we putting LPSI in the sheriff's budget?
Originally was that, originally, fund out of there till the SERC grant was received, but then after staffing changes.
Where do we bring this up?
Oh, oh god, forever, cause I did it for probably five years.
I'm never recalling that last.
Yeah, it was, it was actually when you were in office.
So this has been funded through grants for, for a while, ways back, and then the grants were dropped? And then we had to repick up the funding, and when we repicked up the funding, we put it in the sheriff's line, because that's what we were told, is that they had it previously to the grants.
So that, so that's a line item that the sheriff's department distributes to LPSI.
That's what they use for their, for their paper, their computers, their stuff. And how he had it before, is he just, we just rolled it in his budget, we did not have a line item, I just, cause I was the one that did it. I, everything just came out of his budget.
I just don't ever recall.
No, and so SERC, we're waiting to get SERC grants, which will probably cover most of that, but it's, we're a little ways out for that.
Okay.
So just so we're clear, if we receive LPSI grants, we're, we're gonna replenish that?
Yes, that will offset that part, yes, the SERC grant.
So those LPSI grants coming in, then will that be a, will that be a, a fund that goes to the sheriff's department? Or does it actually come into LPSI?
Well, so before they had their own line item that we paid for stuff out of, and then we would reimburse that line item with their grants. So now it would, it would be this new line item in the sheriff's office is where the grant money would go back into, I'm assuming this is new to me, so.
SERC won't send it to the sheriff's office, though, the SERC's gonna send it to the county, so it'll have to be offset there.
And that doesn't, that doesn't red flag anything for auditors, anything, I mean it's?
No, the sheriff's office has received grants before.
Okay, good enough.
This was done years ago, Ryan, fifteen, eighteen years ago.
Yeah, that's the only thing, sure, I've never seen it as a line item on the sheriff's department.
Cause he just, he just gave it out of his budget.
I just wanted to clarify, if the sheriff was gonna oversee that now instead of the county manager, that's kinda where I was going with that.
And then the, the larger ticket item is the maintenance contracts, and the backup for that is on page sixteen of our budget.
So I had a question first before we get that far, what on corners gets torn up that much?
That is the cost of the autopsies.
Oh yeah, yeah.
And depending on how many deceased persons we have.
Yeah.
So that increase is based on the percentage that it was at the time that I worked there.
And we have seen a substantial increase.
No, yeah, I know that, I know.
So for the, and I show current years as well at the end of this, and on the next page. But this, this in red is showing a, an increase based on our security cameras that have been installed and security systems in the several buildings we have. And then at the bottom, we're now using cloud scheduling for our staff. Because when we went to the ESS system for the time card system for the county, we stopped leaving all the paper behind. So the paper backup, backup for the time cards is not there anymore. So this service, we had a separate service that was cheaper, but it didn't track. For leave requests and time off requests and all those things, this system does, so we, we had an increase for that.
So Robert, on this page where it says dog program fifteen thousand, that's the canine, our, our employee?
That's the county's dog.
Yeah, okay.
And then on the next page, top of the next page, top of seventeen, this is at the top, the Quest IP Phone System Maintenance Report. That historically was paid by the county and we've been asked to put it into our budget, that's for the IP phones in our buildings. And this is an amount we pay annually for, it's a maintenance contract, is what it is? This is a maintenance contract with Quest. And this, this price for our buildings is three year cost, so we, if you choose to do a single year, it costs more, but will be less than this. This is based on the numbers that I got from them, what we're currently paying and anticipated income. What you pay for these frigging.
Yes.
Okay, but some of these go over until, to number twenty-three, twenty-four.
Uh-uh.
No, he's talking about a different phone.
I'm just saying you can open all three of them up.
So.
And then the next line for fourteen thousand, the red's counting ninety-one, that's as a result of the recent upgrade to the IP phone system. And that's a software package that was required by the FCC. And what it does is identify the exact location of a nine-one-one call from the county. And that's a cost that we have to absorb into that. And it's a single cost, it's, that's for the entire county, not just us. And then the last two lines, we were asked to implement the cost for the internet services, for both the sheriff's office here in Battle Mountain and in Austin. And just pointing out that the cost of the Austin internet is also for the several other buildings in the county. And Lincoln and I did have this conversation about splitting it up, and of course, it's the commission's discretion. We're fine, we're just putting one price, cause the line comes into our office and just pay for it. But if you wanna split it out to the other offices that get it, you can do that.
So you're gonna pay for the Quest contract then? Is that?
That was my understanding.
Okay, I didn't know that.
If you'd like to pay for that, I'm fine with that.
No, no, we, we used to play, pay for it out of the computer line, but I didn't know that, that you were gonna do that, so.
It's county's pleasure, what they wanna do. I put it in there because we were splitting internet and everything, so I figured you'd wanna split everything.
We're paying roughly thirty-six thousand dollars a month to hold these things on. Right, two hundred sixty thousand, maybe even more.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
That's maintenance contract, services, and, yeah.
And there's such areas of specialty, I mean, it's not something you can just hire a guy and take care of the stuff and build one, cause they hold all the rights and all that kinda stuff.
The, this, in, in those contracts also includes our cloud services, where we do our cloud backups and things like that, so.
Okay, so then on the, so on the nine nine-one-one communications position replacement, called you now a hundred ninety-three thousand dollars, is that, is that for the hardware that we have to have in place, or what is that?
That, that is hardware replacement. So currently, we have two positions in our dispatch center over here that has computer hardware for the radio system. Those are roughly twenty years old. And so this would replace both of those positions with upgraded equipment, which would also incorporate the EMS system that were, that you've already budgeted for upgrading, it would also incorporate with that. Now, we, you could, if, if you chose to not replace those, but I would still need to go back and budget for partial replacement of equipment, because the computer systems they're using and software is outdated. What this, what this upgrade will do for the dispatch is, the current radios that we have for the patrol deputies, they are GPS capable. So one of the things that it would, would allow is be able to GPS the actual officer, if they're out somewhere. Currently, we can GPS the mobile computer in the car, if it's not connected, or they're out of the car, we, we don't have that information. Or they don't have an MDT. One of the big safety things that we're looking for with this is to allow them to, to GPS both the mobile radio and the portable radio, so that we can see where they're at.
So I bring this up in this one or the next two?
This one.
This one.
And what's the, what's, what's lethal program done?
So that, that's a program that you funded this year that we went to go and implement, however, the costs of it skyrocketing. And that, that includes devices for like beanbag rounds or CS rounds that, that use less lethal ammunition. And where we cannot use a, a active shotgun, so to speak, we put a different color stock on them, so they're not mixed up. And then they're installed in a different location in the vehicles.
And how, how would that differ from like what you guys, your tasers you use?
Taser is less than lethal, Brian.
It is as well, there are other tools. And which they include what's called forty millimeter, which is a larger capacity round that we could use for entering homes or vehicles where somebody may be barricaded, things like that.
Like a greater distance probably?
Yes, absolutely.
But it shoots different munitions. It shoots different munitions, like the beanbags, the OC canisters.
Now, on the less lethal ammunition, you have expiration dates on those, so you have to renew those, right?
Yes.
And you use the old ones for training.
Cause beanbag goes bad.
Yes.
Well.
It's crazy, but.
In her, you're, you're preaching to the choir, Commissioner.
Yeah.
It's.
But because they put an expiration on it, we can't use it in a live scenario.
And for anybody that asks if it's getting hit with a beanbag like that, it hurts really, really bad.
It's fun to watch him get hit with it.
Get hit with a beanbag.
And then just on E for the microwave replacement, that's the microwave link between Austin and Battle Mountain for the main radio systems. Last year, we discovered some damage to the one in Austin, to the actual dish in Austin. And they were able to repair it enough to keep it up and running, but it's obsolete and outdated, they have to replace both sides, can't replace one.
They didn't write this down anywhere, did they?
And then for the water tower shelter project.
It's in the packet.
This is over here at the Battle Mountain Water Tower, where we, we're going to put and replace the radio communications repeater that's there. Bert and I had several conversations about this as well. So what we ended up doing, because the buildings are so expensive, we were actually able to get a seat tainer to put over there. Bert helped out with the concrete slab that goes there. What we're able to do is get a seat tainer with two doors on it, one on each side. We're gonna split that in half, so the county can use half of it for entities that they allow up on the water tower, and they can control that. And then the public safety will be on the other side. And then the slight increase in this allows us to get a generator for backup power for that facility.
Which I can tell them that if they ask.
It's amazing what they're doing with those seat tainers, like they're utilizing them for, it's nice.
Between the price of those things.
Yeah, now they really shot up too.
And then for the personnel side, we did increase the overtime a little bit. We have a new holiday we gotta account for, so we increased that. And then we have a four percent salary increase on the undershirt.
The, on the overtime, is it, I mean, is it because we don't have enough deputies? I mean, if we were to fill another position, would eliminate overtime, or how did that all come up?
A lot of it's holiday.
Historically, because we haven't been fully staffed, we're nearly fully staffed now. We have one position in Austin that's open for a deputy and one in Battle Mountain, one in the jail. Historically, we've been able to offset personnel costs by utilizing, or the overtime costs, by using the personnel costs that we haven't filled. But now we're nearly full, so any of those overtime costs for unintended incidents that would.
We justify another position.
Yes.
And a lot of that too, included in the overtime, is when they work on a holiday and we pay them that, that overtime rate.
More questions? I got no one on the left?
No more questions.
No more questions, I'll entertain a motion. No more questions. I'll entertain a motion. Or a sheriff.
I'll make a motion that we, um, accept the sheriff's budget with the increase of operations of a hundred and forty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars.
The capital outlay request is a total of three-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand.
The capital of three-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand.
You good with that, JR?
Yes.
Okay. Captain made the motion, JR seconded. Any more questions? Off with the vote. Opposed? You got your money, Sheriff.
And thank you very much, Commissioner, for the support you've given us. We appreciate it.
Law and order every time.
Don't go anywhere.
I got two more, huh? No, I was getting antsy. I gotta put my broke glasses back on.
The Ron Under Hotel. Discussion possible action. There is an increase to the operation by ten thousand dollars. And then we have a capital outlay request, inmate phone service, in- inmate phone system contingency rollover, fifteen thousand. Kitchen equipment replacement rollover, fifteen thousand.
Ryan, I have a question. Um, in, um, your information, you said that the, the maximum that we've had, I think, in jail at one time was seventeen?
We've had seventeen, yes, if I'm.
So.
But that's not the maximum.
No, I, no, no, the maximum that you've had in, what is the maximum capacity?
Sixty-six, sixty-six, sixty-seven.
Okay, but the most you've had in, the maximum you had in.
We've had a maximum at one point in time of over thirty.
Yeah. Thirty?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's not what is said in your information.
Commissioner, the, uh, in the information, I, I give you the numbers of high and low per, uh, per year by year. So last year was, was a max of seventeen.
Okay, well, at least we're fine.
Oh, yeah, we're doing fine there.
We're not overcrowded.
No.
Well, I think with COVID too, I mean, we were trying, COVID was why they were.
Well, one of you guys is in long-term care now.
For sure.
Yeah, that really kicked us down.
So the increases in this particular budget, uh, was five thousand on the maintenance contracts. That comes from, um, RHP that wants to flush our entire heating system out because of the corrosion in the pipes and put in some treatment into it. They still haven't given me a cost for that yet, so I budgeted an in- one, uh, an increase for that. And then the second one is for prisoner transport was up five thousand as well. Uh, we've seen a dramatic increase, um, from, for, uh, warrants, arrest warrants coming out of the court for less than felonies. And what happens with those is if they're picked up out of state or even in state, we don't get reimbursed from those from the state if they're below a felony. And we've had those requested to be picked up, um, nationwide or eastern states, and the last two we got came from out of state. So we incur that cost. We do submit to the DA and to the court for restitution. We haven't seen any yet.
At least we, we're not providing them their, their food and lodging in the jail.
No, but it gets costly when you gotta go to Las Vegas, Arizona, Washington. You gotta send two deputies and it's an overnight trip. It's, it's expensive and it's going up. And there's not a lot of transport companies around like there used to be to, we would pay them.
Now they're starting to prosecute people and they, they want them back to the state. Because when I was working for you, they, they didn't want people. You stop them, they have a warrant.
Well, that was non-ex. Non-extraditable. Some of these now are extraditable and they want them back, so we gotta go get them.
Good. Get them out of our state.
You ready for a motion?
Okay, number twenty-three, we need a motion. We're done discussing.
I'll make a motion when we approve the, um, the operating budget for the Lander County Jail with the capital outlay requests of thirty thousand dollars and the increased operations by ten.
One second.
Patty made the motion, Kathy seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Number twenty-four, animal control, discussion possible action. There is an increase to operations by twenty thousand, four hundred dollars.
So I'd like to point out that for quite a few years, we've been able to have zero increase in this particular department. So now you're getting some. So just to go over, um, the increases, there's a slight increase in the, in the gas and oil, which is the fuel for the truck, anticipated fuel costs. If we could skip the feral cat and the spay and neuter program, and we'll come back to that one. But the telephone and fax is a slight increase, um, because the, um, historically, the animal control has had their, um, mobile computer data and their cellphone that they have shared coming out of the sheriff's, out of Department Twelve, and we want to take it out of their department since that's more appropriate. And then, um, there's a typo which is completely my fault on the minor equipment. We have in the backup, um, an additional net gun for animal capture for forty-five hundred under the minor equipment. So that would be added to.
Seven thousand then total?
To that, so it'd be seven thousand.
So the increase to operations is actually twenty-four thousand, nine hundred. Because I didn't catch that, um.
Which is my fault because I didn't put it on the front page. And then back to the, uh, feral cat and dog programs. So for years, we've had the feral cats, spay and neuter program, as well as the dog program. Historically, every year, we run out of certificates. And we're, we're pretty low on the, what the amount we pay. And we've seen a marketed increase in people asking for them, um, and then not using them because of the cost involved. And we included in our backup the extreme cost, especially for female cats and dogs. So we're asking for a pretty marketable increase in this because ultimately, it helps the county and the county citizens to be able to spay and neuter these animals, so that we don't have them running rampant in the county causing more problems than, than they already do.
So how much are the vouchers now?
They're fifty.
Because you're gonna increase vouchers.
Currently, they're between fifty and a hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Okay, how much is it to, for, for a surgery on a female dog?
On a female, on a female dog or cat can be up to four hundred dollars.
Two to four hundred?
Up to four hundred.
It's much cheaper for a male than a female, but, um, but, uh, depending on the vet, and we kind of, um, surveyed a bunch of vets.
And what are you gonna bump the voucher up to?
I don't want to tell you wrong, let me look in my backup.
I think they were fifty bucks.
They were, or we think we're going to a hundred and a quarter.
That was good ten years ago.
Yeah.
They don't have fifty and the female's seventy-five, huh?
So how do you plan on doing this if we get, um, let's just say we, we collect ten feral cats and we decide on a vet? Are we paying a hundred percent for a feral cat for those vets? Please?
No, we still, there's no way for us to be able to pay a hundred percent because we go around.
We're just gonna go up to a hundred dollars?
We're going to go up considerably from where we're paying now, and especially for like Austin where the biggest feral cat problem we have is right now. We're gonna try and work with the vet to have an event and then see if we can get the, the vet to reduce the cost. And if we have a special event and we have the, the funds, we may try and, and incentivize the vet and, uh, pay for.
So we might do a weekend of just catching cats or something like that.
On the cats, I believe, if you look on page fifty-three, I think we're gonna run that up to a hundred and fifty dollars each. And on the dogs, it was seventy-five.
Well, here's the vouchers take off.
Hundred and fifty. Yeah, so on both the dog and the cat, we're looking at going up to a hundred and fifty a voucher.
So essentially what we do, our vouchers are only good for so long, so that we can kind of track them. So right now, they're good for sixty days. We're gonna reduce that to thirty days. And we're gonna encourage people not to come get them until they have, um, an appointment already with a vet. Because we track them and as they, they expire, we're able to issue another one on top of it, uh, or behind it, so that we can still track that and, and continue to move on.
And you, you monitor the number of vouchers. We don't have one family coming in getting ten vouchers.
No, it's restricted.
Three per person per year?
Yes.
Well, you figure a cat is born nine months later before it's breeding and just keeps repeating.
I made a motion, we increase animal control budget in the amount of twenty-four thousand, nine hundred.
Twenty thousand, four hundred?
Twenty thousand, twenty-four thousand.
Oh, you're gonna, you're gonna go to twenty-four?
Yeah, you have to approve their budget.
Budget first.
And, and operations. And capital, uh.
Oh, we're making sure we're getting the payroll in there as well.
So there's three.
What's different this time? This has seemed different than what we've been in the past.
It changes every time.
It's not, it's not.
The procedure and how we're doing it.
No, usually you just approve the budget as a whole with the increased operations.
Yeah, I think in the past, the language you guys have used is approving the budget as presented.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Um, whereas you guys are kind of singling them out. I have my eye on this time. That's why we're asking for the clarification.
So I would just, uh, approve animal control's overall budget that hasn't increased by twenty-four thousand.
It includes an increased operations.
Right.
Or as presented.
Or as presented.
Okay, Brian made the motion, JR seconded. Any more questions, concerns? Okay, let's look. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass unanimously.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Brian. You did a good job. I can't hear you, mister.
You didn't make the promise to a certain judge sitting here.
Well, you told me I couldn't.
No, you couldn't do it then.
Now is the time.
You couldn't do it then.
You can do it now.
Thank you for your permission, Ted.
Thank you. Thanks for the reminder.
What number are you?
I don't even know.
Yeah, me neither. Twenty-three?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. Okay, our general justice court discussion and possible action, there is a decrease to operations by two thousand dollars. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So this is the same with Billy Gendoffels for the Austin Justice Court. We had to add the standby and the extra overtime and callback and holiday work for the new mandates. And then there's also a salary increase for the justices of the peace as well.
Any questions?
Let me just clarify that part where she said the same as Austin. Um, Austin is doing it by Zoom. Their clerks will go in, but he is not. Our general justice court, uh, myself or my senior judge, um, or another person will actually physically be in court with the defendants. So we're not doing it by Zoom. We will physically be in the courtroom every time.
I know, it's not the same amount. I just meant for the same reason.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Clarify that.
No questions? Need a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, Indiana Justice Court's, um, budget, and it looks like with the decrease of operations in two, for two thousand and the increase as presented.
Yeah.
Set up.
Thank you.
Kathy made the motion, Patty seconded. No more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll go back.
Twenty-seven.
Okay, Battle Mountain Volunteer Fire Department, discussion and possible action. There's an increase to operations by sixty-three thousand, one hundred dollars. Well, how you doing there, Sheriff?
How you doing, sir?
Rick is not able to be here, so I'll try to answer as many questions as I can.
I don't have any questions, huh?
Do you, no questions? Thanks for the money.
The bulk of the, uh, increase was for repair and maintenance?
Uh, most, most of it, I think, and I, this is my first time looking at this. Uh, yeah, the repair and maintenance and, uh, why the increase in, in that, uh, is because of the trucks. We've got a, uh, maintenance company now coming in to certify our trucks, which is supposed to be done every year, that hasn't been done. So these guys are coming in and are gonna go through all of our pumps, all of our hoses, ladders, and certify those. So there is a upfront cost on that. Once we get it going on it, that cost will go way down. Okay, on that.
Is that the same for the stuff at the airport as well?
Well, airports are different.
And I do believe one other thing that Rick had made mention to me was them iPads they were putting in the, in the trucks to give them locations of where things are going. I think there was some of them.
And I think we've, uh, uh, I can't remember the names of that, but yes, you're absolutely correct. There will be iPads in each trucks or most of them. What that'll do is that'll bring up a map of Lander County. It'll tell us where the hydrants are, where the location of the fire is, this type of stuff. So we are gonna get that. A lot of that, we have to input ourselves because, uh, I don't think we have an up-to-date county map on where everything's at. So there is the expense on that. We do have, uh, equipment repair at the airport, same scenario. That would be for, uh, uh, the trucks that we're getting in there, which we do need hoses. We have the old FMC truck from Austin. We're gonna position that out at the airport along with the other truck, so that'll be hoses, uh, equipments, that type of stuff is what we need for there. Service and supplies, of course, we have that because, once again, your service and supplies, your, your needs. We, we did, uh, purchase computers. We're, we're doing a lot of training in the fire hall. It's all gonna be, most of it on computers, so we did get five new computers in there, uh, thanks to Laura. And Robert's setting them all up so they can train there. Uh, we have training officers that's got them. Telephone and fax is going up. Uh, we increased that. Travel and training, we increased that, uh, from five thousand to twenty, so there's fifteen thousand. We do have training officers. We want to send these new guys. We're getting to, some of it'll be out-of-town training, Fallon, Elko, wherever, so they can get the, the up-to-date training and certified training. This is all certified training. There are all gonna be firefighters ones, which is five hundred and forty hours of training. We're putting a time limit on that, uh, to get them to do all of that, so we're kind of looking to get more of a, we're trying to get our fannies out of the liable stage, what we're doing. Yeah, so we're really pushing the training in with the equipment you've got or that we have gotten, uh, the new platform truck. You know, that's a two million dollar truck we got for a couple hundred thousand. You're gonna love that, and that, that's gonna help. But we do have to get equipment for it, you know, so. That's, that's mainly the increase or why we're asking for a little more at this time. It's not, I don't, it's a one-shot deal. Pretty much, once we get our hoses up, uh, we get our nozzles, we get our ladders all certified and everything, then just the check and from that on. But right now, we're gonna have to replace a lot of stuff.
Any more questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to improve Battle Mountain Volunteer Fire Department's total budget with a total increase of sixty-three thousand, one hundred dollars.
Brian made the motion, Kathy seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Okay, I'd like to make a statement. If, uh, I'd like to publicly thank Bert. Bert jumped in with, uh, Rick. When Rick, Rick first come on board, he met up with Bert, and this is why a lot of this stuff is happening. Bert has jumped on board and, and really helped us out, especially on the fire station, where he took Aaron down there and he went over, we was gonna just knock a wall out, put some sheet rock up, and they straightened us out on that, so. Bert's been a big asset. Thank you.
If you have any trouble with Bert or Kat, just tell Liz. She'll get them both straightened.
No problem. Thank you, Liz.
Mister Chair, could we, uh?
Mister Chair, could we, uh, could we skip to forty-two? Lois has been waiting all day.
Do what now?
Skip to forty-two. So Lois, or Kyoga.
She's been waiting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, number forty-two, agriculture, agriculture extension discussion and possible action. There's an increase by eighteen thousand five hundred and ninety dollars.
It's in your second binder.
Your second.
Your second.
Binder.
Fund five.
Second binder.
Which number is it looking?
Fund five. It's, uh, the ag extension, zero zero five dash zero zero zero.
How far down? Middle and?
It's towards the beginning.
It's right here. It's not very far down. It's number five.
Goes two, three, four, five.
It's right here, somewhere here.
Right in here. We'll find it. Stay a minute. There it is. Got it.
Find it again? Give me the number one more time.
Five, fund five.
What?
Zero zero five.
Zero zero five, okay.
Lakin, have we had any carryover on this?
What?
Did we have any carryover when we didn't have Lois employed? It's some extra money?
Um, it probably helped increase their fund balance, but the budgets don't carry over. They start over new every year.
Yeah, the budgets do, but I'm saying they still had a balance with the.
They still, their fund balance is still there, yes. That's how budgets work. So you have your fund balance, which is the amount, money you have to operate on, and that's how you create your budget off of that fund balance. And if you bring in more than you spend, that's how your fund balance increases. If you spend more than you bring in, then it decreases.
Okay, so for the money that we've collected for the couple of years that we didn't have the position, what happened to that?
Um, the fund balance probably increased. I don't have those numbers on me.
Okay, but it's still there?
Yes. Uh, they still have money in the county.
Okay, that, that's what I'm asking.
The, the number that I looked at, and I could be wrong, was somewhere between three and four hundred thousand is what was there.
Okay, thank you. So the additional funds that you're asking for is for your new employee?
Uh, no, not, well, he does, his, um, salary does come out of that. A hundred percent of my in, salary next time around is all ARPA funds. So that was good news. Um, so we, we don't have any percent in that area, but truly the programming numbers, we really wanna focus on 4H. And so, for example, right now, I have a livestock scale order for, you know, somewhere between twelve and fourteen thousand dollars. Um, which is, uh, the other thing we're looking at in the fall is, um, bringing back the Lander County Fair. And so we really wanna be able to put on a fair this time. We won't be able to, uh, have buyers there for our livestock this time around, 'cause we won't be ready. But we're really looking at that for the next year around, so we can actually take care of the folks in Lander County for, um, all four of our livestock clubs. So we wanna increase the educational materials that, that, you know, we need to purchase. Um, the, oh, and then, um, the community garden was the other big one. So we're still doing research and we're trying to figure out to, uh, a legitimate plan to come before you again and say, you know, this is what we can do with extension to truly have, you know, maybe utilize one of the greenhouses that are already purchased for, um, seedlings and for education at the school for the kids. And yet still be able to have a community garden. Um, at least we'll be able to have a proposal to you. So those are the, the big things that we're working on right now for the budget.
I just looked at our audit, Patsy, the, uh, fund balance at the end of FY twenty-one is three hundred and ninety-three thousand.
Three hundred and ninety-three thousand?
Three hundred and ninety-three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the property tax, um, number that Lois has is seventy-three thousand. Um, that's the number she had to use when she did her budget, 'cause we didn't have the preliminary projections or anything like that. So it's actually a little bit more, um, well, that's good. Ninety-one thousand roughly is what they should get in, in property tax. Yeah, so it's a little bit more than that.
So the additional that she needs is the eighteen-five over the property tax or not?
No, I just wanted to let you know the revenue should come in higher than what she has on her.
So actually, what we're approving today, if we approve this, isn't all the amount that we really owe. 'Cause more will come in on the property tax, right?
This comes under their budget.
Yeah.
This is their, her actual budget.
That's just, revenues are just projections and you don't approve them really anyways. I mean, they're just.
We just told them the money.
Okay, because the, um, the, um, the amount that you had is exactly, the eighteen-five ninety is exactly what you had down for your second employee. And that's why I, over there, that's why I asked what that was for, but it's for all the additional things, so, okay.
Yeah, they just happen to be the same amount, but it's just the overall budget.
Is the 4H, the employee for the 4H, is that a full-time or part-time position?
No, it's a full-time.
Oh, wow, nice, very nice.
With benefits and everything, which I was really excited about. So the trade for UNR was to say we didn't need an additional office staff. You're looking at the office staff, so, uh, I, I can cover whatever's needed there and so can Andrew, so we could make that. And my goal was to make it more sustainable. You know, if we had somebody that was committed, I'm hoping. You know, to keep those programs going and then additionally to really reach out to the southern part of our state. So we gotta get down there. There's a whole bunch of homeschool kids. I know the numbers are lower in the school, but there's kids down there that could benefit from 4H.
Nice.
Aren't we in a, an agreement or contract with, with UNR that we will only fund a certain percentage of the position? I just wanna make sure that this is in line with that.
It should be. It, it's, it's basically we, we recover and place money in a fund for them. That's the only people that can use it.
That there was certain percentages.
It is, but we, we should be in line with it because of the amount of money they have in the fund.
Okay.
Any more questions? We need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agriculture, um, extensions budget with their, um, increase of the operations by eighteen thousand five hundred and ninety dollars.
I'll second the motion.
Kathy made the motion. Patty seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Ted, Ted made the call.
Yeah, thanks for your hard work.
Thank you very much.
Sure, me too, and thank you guys. Thanks for everything.
Thank you.
How many kids do we have in 4H?
Well, right now, I think we have nine. There might be ten as of today, but we didn't have any programs for them to enroll in. Um, but on April fourteenth, we're having an open house at the Civic Center and we're really excited about that. The school allowed us to pass out flyers to all the kids. And we're reaching out to communities. Um, we're gonna have all of our new leaders there, um, so hopefully our big push is, uh, next month, so.
Good luck.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So we're taking a break.
Where are we at now, um?
This conference will now be recorded.
Twenty-eight.
Unmuted.
Twenty-eight. Okay, Battle Mountain Ambulance, discussion and possible action, there is a decrease to operations by forty thousand dollars. How'd that happen, Burke?
Sean Burke did the budget for this and he took out the volunteer stipend.
What's that?
He took out the volunteer stipend amount, 'cause we don't pay.
Yeah, so there, so there was a.
There was a stipend amount that was approved, but not by this commission. For forty thousand, um, by previous management, and so that would be something that we'd have to come back to and they, they chose to not come back and put it in front of the commission, so they just removed it from their budget. That's the simple answer.
Well, I'm, I'm a little confused here.
Okay, it was an amount that we had been paying for a stipend for what the volunteers, and the commission had never approved it. Is that what you're saying?
We don't pay it.
No.
We've never paid it. It's always been a budgeted in there, but I don't know if, if back in the day, they used to pay Battle Mountain Ambulance a stipend pin like we do Austin?
No, we never have done that. We've always paid the hospital.
This was an agreed, this, so this deal was agreed on by Keith and the hospital to pay this additional amount. Is this, is, is just how this worked, but it never came back before the commission, so, and I said, no, this is a budget item that needs to be brought back before the commission and put into the contract, because we operate off a contract with the hospital. They thought it was easier just to remove it from their budget.
Well, we're getting it straightened out then. Burke, we're getting it straightened out now?
Okay, so our contract, our contract says we pay for maintenance, repair, and utilities of the eighty-five-five. Is that what, is what our, our contract with the hospital is eighty-five-five? Is that it?
No.
It's more.
It's a seven, no, it's a seventy-two thousand, or that's a portion of it. The other portion is budgeted in Austin.
Yes, and, and so the contract of the hospital is based off of once a break even, then we get return funds and it's, it's a much more complicated contract than just the budget that's presented.
Okay.
When's that contract up or?
It's, it is up. Um, we're on a month-to-month basis right now until we can get some final terms. That kind of falls on myself and, and Ted. Um, we did get some numbers from the hospital that we aren't really good at deciphering, so we are re, reaching out to, um, Miss Cathy Ancho, Old Cathy Ancho. Can I say that respectfully?
No, that's what we call her.
Okay, um, to get some, to decipher the numbers better for us. And then, and then we gotta come back and try to make a, a contract that, that's fair for all parties.
Get down, JR.
So you want us to approve the, um, the one that we have in front of us, though?
Correct. This was presented by, um, Sean Burke of, of the ambulance service that works with the hospital. Um, they just removed the forty thousand dollars that Keith had agreed to because.
It was unnecessary.
It was, it was a separate, it was a separate thing outside of the contract, and I felt that if we're gonna be doing that kind of stuff, it should come before this board and be a part of the contract.
Thank you.
It was done against my legal advice. Tell me that.
So, the ambulances are, are county.
Correct.
We, we own, we own the ambulances, right?
All the equipment.
Okay, so that's why it would be maintenance, repair and maintenance. Why utilities?
Uh, we do have the Austin, uh, quarters over there that we pay for.
Yeah, but this is Battle Mountain.
And I'm not sure.
The Austin quarters?
We still, we still have some utilities that we're responsible for, for Battle Mountain.
Contraditionally, right?
Well, that is, that is a good question, Ms. Patsy. I do not have the answer for you on that.
Let me see if I can find a budget report.
You know what? We could, we could put this off until tomorrow and you can check, because we, we'll be here tomorrow anyway.
Yes, no, no, I, I, uh, I will look into that. I, I apologize. I don't have an answer for that.
Water and sewer. Uh, water and sewer is what we pay for out of there.
You wanna table this and we'll come back tomorrow?
Well, I think Lakin answered the question. She said is all the payment or is it water and sewer?
This is our county and it's ours, so, okay, I'm, I'm fine with that.
We're good now?
Yeah, it's just water and sewer, yeah.
Any more questions on Battle Mountain Ambulance, number twenty-eight, a decrease of operations by forty thousand?
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the budget for the Battle Mountain Ambulance with the decrease in up to operations of forty thousand dollars.
Okay. Kathy made the motion. JR seconded it. Any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nobody's opposed. Passed unanimously. There we go. Now we're going to the district court, number twenty-nine. Jim's not here.
Yeah, we gotta table this.
Table it for tomorrow.
Table it for tomorrow?
Please.
And we're gonna pass on number thirty. Ted's gonna be here tomorrow anyway, so, we'll talk. Number thirty, District Attorney, there is an increase to operations by fifty-one thousand dollars. Liz?
Nine thousand, nine thousand.
Nine thousand.
That was the one that was amended.
Mine says fifty more.
Yes, at, at the beginning of the meeting, we amended that one to the nine thousand.
Yeah, you amended it, Mister Chair.
Well, I didn't write it down. Thank you for remembering for a change.
I do remember.
It's just an increase for our case management system. The contract amount went up and an increase for the telephone and fax line.
It's five and four, yeah.
So you increased the budget, Liz.
I did there. You're right.
We, we are putting in a, it's called a CARPO, the new case management system. We are the only district attorney's office in the state of Nevada that doesn't have one. And we're gonna catch up and everyone has CARPO and that's what we're going with.
How about that? Any more questions?
It's been news.
Number thirty, on a district attorney, there's an increase of nine thousand dollars, not fifty-one. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the district attorney's budget with the increase of operations by nine thousand dollars.
Kathy made the motion. JR seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Number thirty-one, juvenile, discussion possible action, there is an increase to operations by ten thousand five hundred and six dollars.
We need to table this one too, please.
Public defender, we're gonna wait till tomorrow?
No.
No, it's not to be changed, because it's a contract and we have, it's a series of contracts.
Number thirty-four, are there any questions? There's no, no changes to the contract or the budget, so we need a motion. I'll make a motion to the, uh, what are you, public defenders, uh, bodyguards as it stands. Okay.
Yeah, just to approve their budget as is, as we said.
As is.
As presented, as presented.
Okay, as presented.
And if we do that up to all of them.
I'll second.
Okay, JR made the motion. Kathy seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Other general expenses, discussion possible action, there is a decrease to operations by a hundred and four thousand seven hundred and twenty-one dollars.
So we were able to decrease the computer line, um, as the sheriff's office has, has spent their grant that they received from Laura years back. That goes down as they spend it, and then, um, we had to increase the insurance. We're seeing huge increases on that, so that's our liability insurance.
Any questions? You need a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the, um, operating budget for, gee, what do we call it, other general expenses as presented.
I'll second.
Patty made the motion. Kathy seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Under governmental expenses, discussion and possible action, there is an increase to operations, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, five hundred and twenty-five. Questions?
So this is where most of our general fund grants are, um, is in this department. So this is where most of our general fund grants are, um, is in this department.
Any more questions, any questions? Need a motion. I'll make a motion that we, uh, increase. So under governmental expenses by two hundred and ninety thousand five hundred and twenty-five. Making on that, we did the outdoor school grant, was, but I thought it was only forty-eight hundred, but on here it says five thousand.
It's actually, I was just looking at that, it should be four thousand five hundred and eighty, that's what we approved.
Right, exactly.
Sorry. So, yeah, so how however you approve the grants, that's how those numbers will change, which you approved all of them in the general fund, so. It will go down, sorry, that was my mistake.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously, number thirty-seven, Roden Bridge South, discussion possible action, there's an increase to operations by fifty-seven thousand dollars. Back on your fitness, Donnie.
Inflation. Um, the weed control, let's start with that, 'cause that was fresh in my mind, um. One of the ki- weed killers that we used to use down there, you cannot get no more in a certain form, so it has to be sprayed now. And you have to have a certain license to spray this weed killer, so that that was the up, the the extra thirteen thousand on the weed control.
Do we, do you guys have any, do we have any material on your book for, I don't have anything for Donnie.
Book two, volume two?
All I have is revenue.
Go to the next tab, Brian?
Next tab.
Oh, my bad. I'm getting tired.
I hear ya.
It's that time. And basically the rest from us, it's just basically because of inflation, you know? Everything's been going up and up.
Now, what were you saying, Donnie, I'm sorry?
It's, uh, it's the inflation on everything else, um, the repair and maintenance, like, say a cattle guard, you used to be able to buy a cattle guard for. Six, seven thousand dollars, now they're ten to thirteen to sixteen thousand dollars. Then the materials, uh, it's like for sand and whatever, for our roads, whatever we need. Yes, and I'm, uh, he upped his gas and oil down down in Austin also, obviously.
Any questions, more questions? Concerns? Brian? Brian's looking for something.
I'm making sure, man.
You okay?
Huh?
Are you okay?
He just wants to make sure.
He's looking for something.
We're good?
Yep.
Okay, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Austin, um, Road and, um, Roden Bridge South as presented.
With an increase?
That's as presented, with the fifty-seven, that's.
Yeah, that's what we did.
You approved the budget as presented.
Presented. I'll second.
No more questions? Okay, Kathy made the motion, I'm gonna second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, passed unanimously, thirty-eight, Roden Bridge North, discussion poss- discussion possible action, there is an increase to the operation, twenty-four thousand dollars, take it away, Don.
Um, it was basically the same thing on this increase here, is, uh, cattle guards and some culverts.
So, Donnie, you didn't increase the gas and oil, but you're okay on where you are?
When when we did this, it looked like we was gonna be able to make it through the year on on this budget and.
Should be okay.
I sure hope so, should be, if, uh, if it don't go up any higher.
Always worried about gas and oil as an increase.
Yeah.
We still have.
That that was unpredictable.
Was it eleven?
Right.
I still have fifty-three percent.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, yeah, we still have quite a bit in that, so.
And what I don't have is, I have the the administrative, uh, salary schedule. I have two of the south, I don't have one for the north.
Could've been a mistake when we were making the eleven binders we had to make. Um, I can give you mine. You have one for the north, but not for south?
I don't, I I have one for south, but not for north.
The next one down is Red Bridge.
I know, I've got duplicates.
In both tabs?
They're saying, yeah, both south, they're in both.
Here, you can have mine.
So the primary one. Or actually, I have it for Austin, but not for Battle Mountain.
I appreciate that. So this one is for Battle Mountain?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good, thank you. We need a motion for number thirty-eight, the increase of twenty-four thousand dollars.
I'd make a motion to approve the, um, Roden Bridge North as presented.
Kathy made the motion, Patsy seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, passed unanimously, Public Health Nurse.
Thank you.
Thanks, Donnie.
Discussion possible action, there's an increase to operations by a hundred and eighty-eight thousand five hundred dollars.
So sixty thousand of this is what was supplemented out of my budget? And a hundred and twenty is what we're paying for the, our doctor, so one's for Dr. Ross as a health official, and one is for, um. Doctor Will Court.
So I guess my question is, since we're, we're looking at actually having more visits to the Austin clinic. By this clinic, do we need to up something with travel, gas and oil?
Maybe.
It's gonna cost.
We may, but I would, I would like to, if if we get there, I can probably work that out of the, out of my budget, the county manager's budget, until we implement something to bring back before you guys were, it's kind of a more formal.
Okay.
If that works.
That's fine.
Any more questions? Okay, we need a motion. I'll make a motion that we. Increase the Public Health Nurse's operations by a hundred and eighty-eight thousand five hundred.
Oh, sorry, I forgot to add, we did add two physicians to this as well. I didn't have a note on here, sorry.
What physicians?
Um, they were.
MAs.
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 Yes, that is in.
Medical assistant.
Medical assistants, that is for po- potential expansion. Yes, I spoke to you guys about that at a previous commission meeting.
So that's in addition to the hundred and eighty-eight thousand you're saying?
Yeah, the hundred and eighty-eight's only for operations.
Oh, that's right, okay.
So JR, you need to add in your motion to approve as presented.
This is one of the few that actually we receive a return on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this, and this is what we're titling medical assistant, right, the two positions?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I suppose we, uh.
Yeah, just.
Do an increase.
Just just to prove the, just to prove the budget as.
As presented.
As is presented.
Yeah, the budget, just the budget, that's all you have to worry about.
Oh, okay, the budget. Need a second? Okay, JR made the motion. Brian seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're on number forty, Social Services, discussion possible action, there are no changes.
Hello.
Hi.
How are you doing, girl?
No changes, so everything's going well, Tonya?
Yes.
We always like to hear that.
So under Social Sl- Services, we don't have, I'm trying to, uh, well, no, wait, uh, as far as we don't have, when they have, like. So the, does, what does indigent, um, like burials and stuff come from, like, when you have to have stand bars, does that come through indigent, or does that go through social ser- the social services?
The the social services line.
It comes through social services, doesn't it?
Very confusing. Yeah, it's this one, the general assistance.
Well, I'm sorry, it's what?
Yeah. The general assistance line right there at the top, the twelve five.
General assistance.
Okay, all right, that's all I just wanted.
No comeback line.
No, I know, I saw it on that page.
Oh, okay.
I was just remembering what that stuff was paid out of, so I'm good.
Any more questions?
No.
Okay, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the budget as presented by Social Services.
I'll second.
Kathy made the motion, Kathy seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, forty-one. State medical indemnity, indemnity, uh, and the increase of twenty thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars.
This just is an increase, like an NRS percentage every year. Yeah, we have to increase it a certain percentage every year, I don't know that percentage on there.
What is it, the the amount is determined by statute or?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Or mandated anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Unfunded mandates.
All right.
We get a motion? Make the motion that we approve the state medical industry budget as presented. I'll second it. Brian made the motion, JR seconded, any more questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Ted?
On these remaining numbers where there are no changes, can we group those together?
No, but you can go through and pass by just approving the budget.
As presented.
Okay.
You have to read it.
No, that's fine, I just was trying to figure out a way, I don't want Patsy driving in the dark, that's. Okay, um, we are Agent Services, discussion possible action, there is an increase to operation by six thousand three hundred dollars.
This is for, um, the raw food line. And we are making a change on the way that Tonya's senior center budget is done, we used to have it split out by. Uh, Department forty-five and forty-seven, but we're combining them so that we don't have to do the sixty-forty split anymore. And then there, where, this is another one that it's not in your payroll sheets. But we're asking to remove one of those rec center positions and add a part-time, another part-time driver to the senior center. But that would go from a full-time down to a part-time.
Part-time driver for Battle Mountain or Austin?
Both.
Both?
We would utilize them where we needed them.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
We would use them where we needed them.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the aging services budget with, um, as presented.
Second. Kathy made the motion, JR seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Battle Mountain landfill, discussion possible action, there is an increase to operations by one thousand dollars.
Utilities.
I know, I thought you were gonna give us something over time.
No. Uh, just an increase for your utilities, 'cause I think you're almost over.
On what though, I don't remember.
Your utilities. Your utility line, that's what the thousand one hundred and two says for.
That's for the utilities, an increase on the utilities at the landfill. Um, I'm getting some paperwork.
Hey, you're over budget, look at that. You're in the hole.
Oh, yeah, we're over. That was why we increased it. I couldn't remember, I apologize for this one. I was going through all my paperwork and I couldn't find it. I was going through all my paperwork and I couldn't find it.
So what is our capital replacement for, or is it just in case? Were you, or had you identified something?
Uh, pardon me?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure what that's for, Donnie.
I, I believe that was an old budget item that you'd just, that we would add to every year. I'm not, I'm not one hundred percent sure on this, but they would just add to it every year so, for a machine replacement in the future. I believe that's how that used to work.
Can't we handle it, you request it when you need it?
Pardon me?
If you'd, if you haven't identified anything. Then I just do not have it in there.
Oh, so we could just use it out of the capital, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying when you need something, you know, like you needed a new, what, loader or backhoe or something, you bring it to us and we.
Unless you're asking, asking for something specific. That's what I should ask you.
Just asking.
I think I'll never use it, so.
We can remove it if you need.
Yeah, we can remove it.
Yeah, we'll move the sixty thousand, because it, because we are, you're not asking for anything, correct?
No, no, not this year.
So have a decrease, uh.
One eighty, one eighty six, six hundred?
A decrease of sixty?
A fifty nine, because you have an increase of a thousand.
So a decrease of fifty nine thousand, right?
Yeah. So I'll make the motion that we approve the Battle Mountain landfill, um, with the.
Decrease.
The de- the decrease of fifty nine thousand.
One second. Captain made the motion, Brian seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Austin landfill, um, there's no changes.
Make the motion to approve Austin landfill budget as presented.
One second.
Brian made the motion, Captain seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Austin airport, discussion possible action, there is an increase to operations by sixty five hundred dollars. And there's a capital outlay, a request, barrier for runway grant access rollover fifteen thousand. Any questions? Bert, you got any comments on this? Let's get a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Austin airport budget as presented, um, that's includes the increase of sixty five hundred. And also, um, the rollover, which is for the barrier for fifteen thousand.
One second.
Captain made the motion, would you second that?
Yes, I do.
Captain seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Okay, number forty seven. Discussion, possible action, there's an increase to operations by five hundred dollars for Battle Mountain Airport.
If you keep flipping, Battle Mountain ones, uh, it doesn't have a separate tab, but. We just increase the insurance liability again.
It doesn't have a separate tab, it's all within the, the airports are all within the same tab.
Thank you. There it is, thanks.
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we accept the Battle Mountain airport's, uh, budget as presented.
I'll second.
Good seconded, JR, Patsy. Captain made the motion, Patsy seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Number forty eight, LITA, under economic development, discussion possible action, there's no changes. You get a motion?
I'll make the motion that we accept the LITA budget as presented.
Captain made the motion, JR seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Mount Louis Communications.
Regional transportation.
Regional transportation, uh, there's no cha- no changes.
I'll make the motion that we expect, uh, accept the regional transportation budget as presented.
So what, I mean, on that one, is there, there's, there's no expense budget, just revenues?
Yeah, they, um, we are mandated to give them a portion of the gas tax, but, um, unless. The RTC board has something they want to do, then we don't budget anything.
I did, I made the motion.
One second. Brian seconded, okay, Captain made it, Brian seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, Austin capital acquisitions, there's no changes. Accept the Au- Austin capital acquisitions as presented. JR made the motion, Brian seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Austinitown, discussion possible action, there is an increase to operations, eleven thousand one hundred and sixty dollars.
It's actually a little less than that since, um, we decreased the Austin medical clinic grant. Because we didn't approve them, but for the full twenty five six, so. The total budget that you're approving is eighty five thousand one hundred and ten instead of the ninety eight.
Eighty five thousand what?
One hundred and ten.
Make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the, um, Austinitown, um, budget. With the changes of eighty thou- eighty five thousand one hundred and ten, right?
No, eighty five, is it eighty five thousand or eighty five hundred?
I just have one question on that and I'm wondering about the utilities.
I, I think there's some confusion here.
That's the total budget, so it's actually.
Accepting the total budget as eighty five thousand one hundred and ten.
It's actually a decrease, since you didn't approve the full Austin medical clinic grant that they asked for, it's actually a decrease.
What's the difference, I like?
So it's a decrease of two thousand one hundred and forty.
Two thousand one hundred and forty, maybe we should add that on the utilities. I mean, everything's gone up. And then we'll keep it the same.
They're not asking for it.
They still have fifty seven point, fifty seven percent of their budget for utilities.
They still have fifty seven percent of their budget left.
Okay.
Does your motion stand?
Yeah, I don't know, I, somebody said second.
You need a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Captain made the motion, JR seconded, all in favor?
So the motion would put the twenty one forty back to the budget?
No, no, I think that the motion was to accept the budget as presented with the decreases so that full budget is eighty one thousand.
One hundred and ten.
Eighty five, one hundred and ten, correct.
Number fifty two, Mount Louis Communications, discussion possible action, there's an increase to operations, two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, um, I increased that a little bit because it has went up a little bit in the past, and so I just added a little bit, just in case.
I'll make a motion to approve the Mount Louis Communications budget as presented.
Brian made the motion, JR seconded. Any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. Number fifty three, Battle Mountain Town, discussion possible action, there's an increase in operations of fifty eight thousand two hundred dollars.
So this one's another one, um, since we didn't approve the full grant for the raceway. Um, that will go down. There's still an increase, but. It's only forty five thousand nine hundred, the increase.
So the increase is forty nine five?
Forty five nine.
So I'll make a motion that we accept the Battle Mountain, Battle Mountain Town's budget as presented.
Need a second?
One second.
Captain made the motion, JR seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. Uh, golf course, discussion possible action, there's no.
Capital acquisitions.
Capital acquisitions, there's no changes, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the capital acquisitions as presented.
One second.
Captain made the motion, JR seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. The golf course, discussion possible action, there's no changes, but we have a capital outlay request. A, golf course, six foot fencing in the amount of one hundred and thirty six thousand five hundred dollars. Just make the ponds safe.
Well, hopefully this will.
I hope so.
The fence, the back, the back stretch of the golf course, um, keep the kids out, uh.
I know.
We don't have anything, any, any barrier back there at all?
There's a, um, barbed wire fence, people crawl through it, go over it.
Yeah, this is overdue.
Well, it's a little bit more than that, JR. The kids were out there on the ice jumping up and down there, a little freaky.
We tried that construction fence that year and every day was out there putting it back up, it just won't stay up.
Just as long as we're trying our best, that's, that's all we can be asked to do, but it just scares me.
That's not gonna hold up in court?
We'll get soon, I, I'll go in the record and say we will get soon.
I make the motion that we accept the golf courses, um, budget as presented. That was, that's in there because it's as presented.
Okay. Captain made the motion, Brian seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Parks, there's no changes, except capital outlay request. Pavilion at Elf West Park, it's a rollover in the amount of a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Solar lighting installed, four shield rollo- partial rollover, added fourteen thousand six hundred and thirty eight dollars, excuse me. In the amount of twenty two thousand. Uh, C, replaced dugout backstops, fencing, Battle Mountain adult fields rollover in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. D, tennis courts, partial rollover, added four, forty thousand in the amount of one hundred thousand. E, fairground improvements, rollover and reduced in the amount of fifty thousand.
Are we complete with C? Because when I drove by there, it looked like they were done.
They're almost done.
I thought.
Just for the other field.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, it's, it's renamed on the, on the spreadsheet, uh, to be in fields, I just didn't rename it on the.
We have to finish all our fields.
So it's not just for the adult fields, this rollover they're asking for, it's for the Battle Mountain fields in general.
Those are the fields out here.
Yeah, we got those two, and then the, we got these two.
And that field and then the senior league field. So that is for all of us?
Yes.
So are we still gonna have the rollover from the tennis courts if we try and do that now and under this budget?
So the, this is for the Battle Mountain tennis court, the Austin tennis court will be done in this budget, that's why you guys haven't seen it, so we'll have it done before July.
Okay, but not the Battle Mountain one?
No, this is for the Battle Mountain one.
Okay, thank you.
So what's the, uh, for the fairgrounds, the rollover but reduced, is that because some of the work's already been done?
You said half of it. Work happened, and it was up to a thousand in the past. Um, and so since we have the pens up now, we've widened the arena and added two arenas so they can run both, both mo-. Simultaneously at the high school rodeo, um, we've reduced that amount to finish up the rest of it.
Any more questions? Do we need a motion?
I'll make a motion, will we approve the parks budget as presented?
Second. Captain made the motion, JR seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously, number fifty seven.
Um, just a minute, Mr. Chair, I do have a question on the fairground improvements. If, um, if we're looking to have an actual fair this year, what kind of improvements can we do and can we have it done by fairtime?
I think it's probably already.
Yeah, we need to get with Lois and see exactly what they're gonna have as far as for the fair and what we can do to kind of make it work, but I think our, I think our. Rodeo's gonna set up pretty, nice for it right now. Um, I do think there's gonna be some, some communication coming on, maybe putting some pins back there again. For four H, there used to be pins back in the back, if you guys remember that we tore out when we, when we widened that, that ground. So now that four H is starting back up, um, you guys got some, sorry. Um, so now that that's starting back up, hopefully we will get something in, in place there so these kids have. A place to keep their animals that can't have them in town.
Great, thank you.
Commentary about the rodeo grounds looking pretty good.
What'd you say, Donnie?
I said there were some lights that still need to be replaced down there too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, fifty seven, the pools recreation center, uh, there's a decrease by five hundred dollars, good job, Sean.
Um, so we decreased the eight thousand out of the events that's going to the chamber for the Fourth of July and Christmas tree lighting. Um, we added another seventy five hundred in repair and maintenance, that's the paper I just gave you. Um, this is actually a cost that I've always spent for the last three years, it's just it came out of different projects and Lakin. The fiscal officer needs to be budgeted out of repair and maintenance, if we're, it's more of a clerical error than anything, so.
Any more questions?
And then again, those two, uh, those two positions will be removed, they're still on there right now, but we'll make that change.
And just elaborate on the events, we are moving forward with wrestling camp again, we have a baseball and softball camp. Uh, there will be a basketball camp and, uh, there will be a swim, swim camp, uh, in May. But the other camps will be in July. Cheer camp and football camp, sorry, yep.
They don't have to pay for it.
Not, Landon County kids won't pay for it, but kids that come from, because, uh, USA Wrestling from Spring Creek. Uh, they want to come join a wrestling camp here in Battle Mountain, but their kids will have to pay, will have to figure that out.
That was the guy I gave you the number.
Yep, I contacted him, so USA Wrestling wants to come to Battle Mountain too.
Get in touch with the Bufferoos and.
Yep.
Do you remember, care how the swimmer that was junior Olympics did?
She, she made it to the next level.
She, she.
To the top ten.
Yeah, she made it to finals, she, the bad went to finals, so, yeah, very good.
Not bad for having a pool just for a couple of years, huh?
Yeah, exactly.
So now are those, all of those programs coming back in front of us again to approve, or do we already approve them?
When you approve this budget, it's gonna be in the event line item, so it's, you're pretty much approving it, if you want me to bring it back, we can. But by approving this budget with that in it, that's where the money's coming from.
That's why we added the event line, so that.
Oh, I see.
So.
You know.
Unless you want me to.
No, I just wanted to know if that's.
Okay.
I think what we would like is for you to come back with an update when those are going on though, that would be appreciated.
Once I have more dates and stuff, I will get flyers out.
That would be appreciated.
Right now, they're alternative and they've all, we know that they're gonna happen during the summer, we just don't have exact dates and times, so.
How many camps do you have, Sean?
Yeah, at least, so we have baseball and softball, which Reed's doing, and the county's just, we just paid that. Um, and there's gonna be a hundred kids there, um, we have a swim camp coming up in May. Football and cheerleading will be in July, uh, wrestling will be in July and basketball will be in July.
How about soccer?
I haven't tried a soccer camp yet.
Don't say anymore.
Well, I'll work on that too. I, that's, I don't have a volleyball camp confirmed like I do the wrestling, so I don't want to misspeak and then...
And then cheer.
So all, the six I just said are confirmed to happen this summer. So if I get a volleyball camp, we'll have a seventh, but as of right now, the sixth are dedicated for the summer.
You know that Mr. Herrera was the quarterback of quarterbacks for Battle Mountain High School.
Okay, nice move on.
Maybe you can get him to come and show you a few tricks.
You were a quarterback? I never would have thought that.
I can't, I, I can't believe either.
I'm sorry, Ted, but...
I just learned that the other night too. I was shocked, but, um...
Not only that, but the coaches were so concerned about Mr. Herrera at high school that they picked him up after he got done work and made him work out so that he didn't mess up.
But anyway, yes, approved, but I will bring, Patsy, I will bring it back with updates after we get through and numbers and how many kids and everything, so.
Yeah, I'd like to know about the numbers.
Yep.
I, I, I don't know if I'm gonna be here during a wrestling camp, so Richie may have to stay with your house.
Whatever works.
Okay, where are we at? Did we, we approved this?
Now we're on fifty-eight.
No, I don't think we approved it yet.
Fifty-eight?
No.
Okay. Civic Center, fifty-seven. Now we're on fifty-eight.
You still need to approve them?
You gotta approve fifty-seven. Nobody, nobody's made an issue.
Oh, right, fifty-seven, okay.
Make a motion for fifty-two recreation center budget as presented.
Brian made the motion. JR seconded. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passed unanimously. Okay, the Civic Center, Mr. Rita.
Good job, Kathy. Yeah, good job.
Uh, there's no changes, but we have a capital outlay request for a video camera system rollover in the amount of thirty-six thousand.
Okay, we had that last year, and Bert, remember when we talked about that? You said to kind of hold off on that because we kind of wanted to get the county all under the same security.
We're still trying to do that.
And that would be fine with me if we did that, so that we're all the same, you know? I just needed, you know, a few more cameras, but I mean, what I have, we're good inside. I just need a few more out, but I would like to, where we're all the same.
I want, when I was on the school board, I wanted all, all these cameras interfaced to dispatch. And then that way, if there's an issue, they're there.
Well, I have my cameras and believe me, the sheriff's office has used them a time or two because they're, they're all recorded what goes on of what I have, and it's really helped, you know, and when I'm in my office, I watch every room. I can tell anything that's going on, which I love, you know, and I have a few outside I can take and pull up at the same time, especially when we have our big events and all. Like when I was at the old park, I mean, boy, I wanted security at the old swimming pool too, because what I seen was, you know, but, so now that they have it all going, but, um...
Been here a few years.
We did add, um, overtime to the Civic Center's budget, because I didn't have any, and so, and they've used some this year.
Rita, you've done a really nice job, though.
Thank you, thank you. I, I keep trying to improve, so.
When you have my neighbor come back and tell you it looks nice, it's nice.
You're talking about George? Yeah, I, I, I...
I wasn't gonna mention it.
Not only was it George, he went and got Kathy and brought her back just to see what we have done, so I thought that was pretty special, so, okay.
Make us a motion, Kathy.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Civic Center's budget as presented.
I'll second it. Kathy made the motion. JR seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Hi, Mr. Chair. Since we're taking care of...
No, I was just making sure you had your...
Since we've taken care of everybody, um, how about we take a look at number seventy-nine and see if we'd like to take reaction on that?
To go to the next day?
You know what, Patsy, um...
I agree. I think, I'm tired.
I, I know, I'm tired too. We, if we did, uh,
Yes.
Fifty-nine, and then we could, tomorrow, we can just go right through sixty to seventy pretty quick, and then seventy-three to seventy-eight, because there's no changes. We can move pretty quickly tomorrow. Is that okay, Ted?
I think Patsy had a great idea.
Well, Patsy needs to drive home, and I told her, I want to get her out of here at four o'clock.
Yeah, she wants to go to seventy-nine now.
I will entertain a motion.
No, seventy-nine.
I agree, we go to seventy-nine.
Go to seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine. You guys are more interested in getting out here than me, okay. Discussion possible action to continue the budget workshop on March twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two, or if completed, take public comment and then adjourn the March twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two meeting and cancel the meeting. Scheduled for March twenty-second. We will be here tomorrow at ten o'clock, Kathy.
Yes, so I will make a motion. I'm gonna continue the budget workshop on March twenty-second.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Do you have to do public comment?
Lakin? Lakin?
What?
Good job.
Yeah, thank you. Public comment?
Public comment?
Yeah, excuse me. Public comments for non-agendaized items only. Bearing none, will adjourn.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
They don't have any public comments.
I do.
Well, Mr. Herrera, come right up.
He was talking about when he was a quarterback.
Yeah.